Maybe by Tuesday, we'll have new software installed and I will have tested it. I didn't really want Tuesday to be the test. I wanted today to be the test. But it doesn't make, we do have, it is being livestreamed. And now we are ready when you are.
This meeting is being livestreamed?
Yes.
Wonderful, because I was asked that by some folks that would ask that.
We indicated that you wanted, we won't be ready to do it for all of the like, boards of commission, but certainly for any meeting at the council that you want livestreamed, all you gotta do is say the word.
Wonderful.
Hopefully, it will, again, this will be a test of Vimeo yet again, and hopefully the sound doesn't have a repeat issue.
Okay, well, let's call this meeting into order.
If you'll save the time.
9:15.
And we'll do a roll call?
We need to do a roll call, we just acknowledge that we have a quorum and everybody's present.
That's also sufficient.
Okay, let's just acknowledge that we have a quorum and everybody's present.
Yep.
Thank you. So, the next item on the agenda, do we have assistance comments at every one of our meetings?
Not typically, but we certainly can.
Okay, well, I'm not, I just wanna follow the agenda, I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of it in my hand.
No, you're fine.
So, unless anybody has, oh, excuse me, I apologize. Well, let's just go ahead and do this, are there any citizens' comments we'd like to make? Okay, hearing none, let's, okay, the presentations, the budget presentations?
Yes.
Scott, you go ahead, would you go ahead and take care of that?
Yes.
Do your folks, thank you.
All right. So you do have an agenda of just the presentations that will be given, and you also should have a book, if you don't, or if you'd like a book, we have six copies.
You have all of these?
Yeah.
Okay.
It has all those in there and everything that was sent out. I'm gonna stand.
It might be good if you let me have one, that way I can follow that, especially when I'm flipping pages. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Is that distinct from the 200 page?
No. Basically, this is just everything that was sent out via email.
Okay.
It's just been printed and put into a book.
Okay, appreciate that.
So a couple of things, I'm holding in my hand a tiny helicopter. The reason I'm holding this in my hand is because for David and Phil and Sheena, you may remember, do you remember the gentleman's name? Two points, one star.
No.
I know you worked with him many times and he facilitated many things for us.
Yeah, he's been, his name's Mike Conde, he's written several books, two, no, but at least, at least two, probably three or four. He's been president of TCA, president of TML, he was on ICMA board, he's facilitated nationally, internationally, at the state level, state agencies, local agencies, et cetera, he's got patience, a good human being, but goofy as all get out, am I right?
Yeah, him and I talked a lot.
He's a little bit of a character, but very, very knowledgeable. So he helped us facilitate mission, vision, and values several times, he talked about policy, he talked about being at the policy level, and he used his helicopter and several others like it, he gave us toys if we wanted him, to remind us, I usually have this sitting on my PC, to remind us of what it's like to be at the policy level. Because the policy level is at, these things don't fly at 30,000 feet, right? They fly much lower. And that's what he talked about that, he talked about how helicopters, you didn't use a plane on purpose. Because as council people, you are local citizens, and you have constituents, and you're going to, from time to time, you're gonna lower that puppy down to almost ground level, and you're gonna take a look around, but the idea is that we never leave the cockpit, right? That you're, as a policymaker, you're always kind of overseeing and overwatching. So I think this is a good visual reminder, I kinda indicated this in an email, but this was a challenge. I appreciate Councilman Murders kind of bringing this to the, to the topic of conversation with the budget specifically, that the budget is a policy document. In the past, the way we've been doing it, if Bruce and Houston and Bob have kind of watched some of our prior budget workshops and what we did in the past years, the way things evolved after I got here is the city administrator and city staff would work together to create a draft budget. And that would go through a lot of process. So it would start with, here's where we think we are on the revenue side, we try to estimate those, we were in, I would, and then we'd go to the department heads and we'd have them estimate what their expenditures would be for the year, and then we'd have a meeting with each one of them, have them justify those, I'd make some tweaks, and ultimately I'd present what I believe to be, or what should be, a balanced budget, something that lives within our means, and a lot of times is conservative. You conservatively estimate the revenues, so I would knowingly underestimate revenues and conservatively estimate our expenditures, meaning we inflate some of those expenditures just to make sure we had a room in the budget. And I'd present this to you all, and then we would have the budget workshops and there would be tweaks and changes made as necessary, but not a lot of changes typically. And I think it was David kind of brought to my attention that, you know, you talk about this being a policy document, but as council people, we don't really get the opportunity to set that policy at this level. By the time we get the budget, it's cooked, it's already done, the heavy lifting's done, which we appreciate, and I don't want to bore you around. But I really liked the opportunity to have council have a policy meeting. So I've kind of challenged myself to think about, well, what does that look like? And this is my first attempt to doing something like this, so be gentle, but this is what kind of has come as a result, is what we received. There's not, purposely not a lot of numbers. We're not afraid to talk numbers, we're very, very comfortable with numbers, we're staff, but my thought in looking at this was to keep it at that 30,000 level, you know, that higher level, keep the policy, we really need to take a step back and think about, what services are we offering, what are we offering to citizens? And then we can get into the how, a little bit, right? But really, we start with what, what is it that you do, what is it that the library does, what is it? So that's what we're gonna do today. These have been shortened drastically for what you got, right? You have a 200-plus page document, there's probably no more than eight slides in any given service area, and I wanted to keep them brief, because what I'd like to do is maximize time for you all to ask questions of the department heads, so we can get at some of the policy level stuff. And then if there's time today, or subjectively, you can give me information, we can, from this meeting, we can start to say, okay, this is what we'd like to see at the next budget workshop. We wanna see numbers in this area, we wanna look at, we were intrigued by this service area, these changes, this area we think we're good with, happy with how things are happening, but this area we'd like to look at, what does that look like? And we'd like to see what that would cost, et cetera. So, is that enough direction for you all for now? And Brianna, do you understand, so we're gonna kind of, hey, council has already received everything that you prepared, both times. So we're gonna go kind of quickly through the slides, so if they can ask you questions about what you do.
Got it.
Yes.
And so if we left here today and said, this all looks good to us, would this be the end of the budget meeting?
No.
Okay, well, I mean, I heard what you just said, but there are some things I like details with, and so you didn't say what, some steps you've already planned to do as far as looking at the budget, other than inputs we might make.
Yeah, so I'm trying not to pre-plan the budget in my process, we've done a few things and we've presented them to you all, and so the council's already received a few budget updates, the highlights, where our revenues are, where some of the major trends are on the budget, we did that early on. But I really want this to be an organic process, beginning with today, as far as formulation of next year's budget. And purposely, I haven't tried to do a whole lot of lifting prior to, now, they have already, the departments have already looked at their individual budgets, but all that could be redone, or undone, by whatever action you all take, both today and in the future, because I really want this to be an organic process with the council, where you all give us direction on how the changes you wanna see implemented, how you wanna see them implemented, and we can try to help, you understand, well, what are the budget areas?
I think, I just wanna appreciate what you're laying out, just give you a little history, my involvement with the city, it's kind of gone full circle. In the beginning, council was involved in every line item on every item, and myself, as a public works director, had to justify every line item to the council to get an improved budget. So it was a rather tedious process, several workshops, several things like that, before we come to it, give and take, back and forth. Then it went to a departmentalized one and said, and I like that, because as long as I maintain my department budget, then council don't get down in the weeds. And I don't think council needs to get down in the weeds, that's what we have you for. But it is valuable for a council member to know what those line items are, in case they wanna ask a question and challenge a particular line item. So, kind of, I understand what you want, we're working through the department thing, but also council has the access to review or discuss line items, and that would be, again, as we work through the process.
But I'm really glad you hit on that, because there's something else I forgot to indicate to you, Houston and Bob specifically. In teams, so one of the things we've done in the past to kind of marry both those worlds, is we're still doing line item budgets, we still have those meetings that happens at the department and the ministry level, we go through and they have to justify those just like, but it stays here and then it gets presented to you. But because I know council wants to see that, and because we wanna be transparent, council has access to all the working documents for the budget.
Sure.
So as we, the line item budgets, you all have access to in teams. Now, you don't have access to them today, yet, I will make them available, I can give you the drafts. Again, I wanted to not, this is kind of formally kicking off the budget.
Sure.
But going forward, just so you all are aware, that is an area that you'll have access to, and as you have specific questions, what I encourage you to do is, like you do frequently, Bob, is look at the information, the specific questions you have given to me, to the extent the rest of the council may have the same question, then I can share that data as you and I go through it with them. But we don't necessarily have to bring it back to a workshop in a meeting, where everybody's listening and I'm answering the questions one by one, you and I can meet offline, I can show you, okay, this is what this is, this is what that is, and then we can summarize that into some kind of document that I give to the council. So that way they can read it at their pleasure.
Yeah, it's very important to me that every council member has an opportunity to, for lack of a better phrase, challenge, question, any type of line items, but then in the end, we all come together for a budget.
Question, can I follow in your comment there?
Yes, sir.
And it was hell working with him on these public works director on the budget, but I understand what you're saying, and the larger the city gets, the less detail that the council can get to understand that. My ninth budget now, and we've discovered over time that a lot of council people, if they didn't understand the actual cost of doing business, just to say, I need this much for this, they'd say, you know, just challenged by crazy, and so it was very useful to them to say, okay, I see, you need these, you know, and so it was kind of like, okay, I get it, and so the next time around, it wasn't, didn't need to be quite that detailed.
Sure.
We also found a lot of requests for things that, when challenged, especially from hell, that they didn't necessarily have to be done immediately, they probably could do a few more years if we did something. So I'd say, at some level, having council understand the specifics is educational and useful.
Yeah, and I think that, hopefully, that's the level of detail we get in today is kind of those big items, like some of the, again, I call them service level adjustments, SLAs, that these are things that, PD's not here, so we'll hear from him later, he has ideas about staffing changes, and in my mind, some of those are, those are pretty big operational budget changes that we need to be really thoughtful about when to do those, because you're gonna have that expense forever after you engage in it.
Well, I'll just wrap real quick, and I wanna make one more comment. You're the responsible party for all, of everything, but to the council, but I appreciate the opportunity to hear from your departments and your staff on how they see things, okay? So appreciate that.
That's intended today, I'm gonna try to stay out of the conversation.
Appreciate that.
I'll have that back and forth. Again, this is the first time for all of us, so just, I would just ask for a very second.
I know, I see it's not working. It's been on this whole time.
It just went out.
I don't know. Scott.
So what?
I need to check.
There's no air to eat.
Yeah. Okay.
And I sense that with my name.
Okay, it's been working this whole time.
No, no.
All right.
I'm good.
Even better.
I don't need it.
Are we good?
Yes.
Okay, so now I have about 30 seconds to get through my eighth slide.
Yeah, yeah, you have all the time.
So I'm Brianna Soto, Community Development Director, and we're gonna be going over the community development budget. As you can see on your first slide, that's not working, I'll just use this. Nope. Okay.
Hold on, you're down to just one slide, it's okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
I do have a couple of questions.
Why are you here? Just kidding.
Hey, Scott.
Okay, there we go.
It's happened. I do have a question based upon our conversation today, a lot of these administrative costs for the different departments don't actually reflect what the salary might be for particular people, because you're, you're splitting the costs, and it doesn't really reflect that in here.
Yeah, so I'll get into that in the administrative budget, probably towards the end of the meeting, and honestly, my presentation is, which would be our administration and C Secretaries budgets, we can focus on that.
All right, and so on this first slide, you can just see all the actuals for the past five years, and one thing I do wanna pull out is on that full-time employee line down at the bottom in the yellow, it says 2222, I think that's pretty wrong, I know code enforcement was under me, but to be quite honest, I don't remember when they left community development, so I think around 2020 or 2021, that actually went over to community services, which was over by Parks and Rec. And then last year, we got a permitting assistant that was a full-time employee, and that's when they came on. So for the longest time, it was actually just 1111, one person in this department. All right, so just to give you an overview of what community development looks like, it's divided into two main components, in the red box, you'll find our in-house staff, which is myself and Megan. Megan handles all the permitting and customer service, her responsibilities encompass inputting applications, invoicing, correspondence with plan review team, and be available to answer any questions or concerns the public may have. She also helps me in my day-to-day scheduling things, talking to people for me if I'm not around, so she helps me also. I handle all the other aspects of community development, which includes coordination, communication, and review of both the current and future development projects. I oversee the planning and zoning commission, the historic landmark commission, the zoning board of adjustments, and for these boards, I create the agendas, I provide the backup materials, provide clarification on items, and present the materials to those boards. And then I also do any zoning, therapower planning, and master planning. The second component of this department includes contracted services. As you can see, there's four that I have under my department. First is Safeville, they do all the commercial plan review and inspection. SPI, which is Schomburg and Polk, that's an engineering firm, and they do all of our development plan review. Bureau Veritas is the residential plan review and inspections, and then Workshop, which is that W5, that's our historic preservation officer, and she does all of our historic preservation material. All right. All right, so what do you get for your money from community development? Some things that y'all get, and y'all know these, is planning services, land use planning and zoning, long-grain community planning, design review, building services, building permits and inspections, plan review and code compliance of those permits, historic preservations, all projects affecting historic properties, review of projects affecting historic properties, and development review and permitting. So we also have the third-party and contracted services coordination, and the board and commission coordination. As you can see from the charts provided on the screen, in the past few years, it's just rising, that's what we expect with growth, I don't think that's gonna slow down anytime soon, we just have more development coming on, we have more residential coming on, and you can see on that bottom rectangle, that's just communication over the past four weeks of the emails that come in and out. So you know, I've got 940 emails over the past four weeks, and with 251 responses, and then the box on the right-hand side is the tasks. So that includes development tasks and also just planning tasks, so it could be plaques that are coming in, or it could also be like our drainage that we're planning that we're doing. So they're just all broken down into categories, this will show kind of the different services that we provide in community development. All right. All right, so my department is, like I said, primarily two different areas, so there's two main points in the expenditures. The first one is contracted services, which takes up about 44% of my budget. This is usually a pass-through cost, so which means that whatever services they provide as the engineer or the plan review service gets passed through onto the person who's the applicant. So we either invoice that back to them, or we collect that upfront. The only one that we don't do that with is the attorney, because usually that's something that we're asking them questions about, and then sometimes for historic preservation, because it's not always CAVs that we're sending to workshop, sometimes it's questions about historic preservation and how to handle those things. So, but for the most part, that is a pass-through service. And then the second part is personnel service, which is Megan and myself, and that takes up about 48% of my budget, and it includes all of those things that I just listed on the prior slide. All right, so current service level. So the community development department is currently operating effectively, we're well-positioned to manage the majority of the tasks that come our way consistently, delivering the work that is both efficient and detail-oriented. What that means is we're performing, I think, the way we should be right now. We don't have a long lag time when people try and reach out and communicate with us, we try and answer as questions as effectively as possible, we coordinate with all those plan review people, so I think that we're operating just as we need to. And so that's just kind of, so we're fully functional and efficient, and we're not asking for any additional budget, I know where we're at, and I know what I can handle, and I know what Megan can't handle, and we're good with what we're doing, and then we're sustained performance for now. I can't say that for the future, but for now, we're good.
I'd say that probably the biggest thing is adding Megan, I mean, that's been, with all the additional development, that was a really needed step, and that's, I think, having met that, if you weren't here, it'd be a totally different scenario, right?
Definitely.
But now that you have that additional help, that's been.
Before Megan came on, I mean, not that, I love working for the city, and I never, I try not to ever complain about that, but I was probably putting in 60 hours a week because I was doing email permitting at night, really. So development, planning during the day, and permitting was going out at night, so it just is what it is, though. But Megan's been to Godsend, so I appreciate her.
Just curious, just a question, on average, how long does it take to process a permit from start to finish?
It just depends on the, that's.
Say a new house.
A new house, so first the application comes in, we have to invoice them, which, input the application, invoice them, that turnaround is usually within a day, they pay that, we send it off to plan review, plan review has up to 10 business days to review that permit. Usually, they're pretty efficient in that, they do their plan review, it gets sent back to us, we do all the final samples approval, send out the building permit, and then they can start their building and inspection process. So ultimately, if everything was taken care of, and as we send it out, and there's no comments to be made, then I would say about a two-week process.
Two weeks, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, and so, I switched y'all, I didn't switch me. Okay, so service level enhancement, so like I said, we are pretty good where we're at, like I don't think, I haven't had many or any complaints in the past year, but I guess if you, if we did have a bigger budget, these are a few things that we could do, is like enhance technical capabilities, which just means maybe we could provide more online services, maybe a Q and A that can be done online, right now, everybody has to call in or send an email, just some of those kind of things, a stronger support for boards and commissions. I would love to say that all the materials I present to all the boards is perfect, but that's just not the case, sometimes I do need more time, and I think that if we had maybe a bigger budget, then maybe those materials could be a little bit stronger. And then proactive community engagement, a lot of time, we're just doing community engagement as we need to, because the projects we're doing, but there's a lot more community engagement that could be done in the community to try and get feedback from them on how the services are going, or something like that.
Sure.
So, all right, and then, future projects, so the last one is future projects, I don't really have CIP, community development doesn't do like a lot of CIP, so I'm just gonna say future projects. The biggest one that we have coming up, and I think we've all been on board, or at least heard about this, is the historic design guidelines review and revamp, to try and go through those to see what is, I'm sorry, I'm losing my train of thought, oh, contributing and not contributing, and what are those, what does those guidelines look like? And so that's the only future project that I see coming up, that is gonna take money and time, mostly from workshop, which is our historic preservation, what that cost looks like, we don't know, because we're trying to get through the UDO, but that is a future project that will take up some time and effort. And that's, that's all I have, so, yes, sir.
Two questions, you know, we've gone both ways on contracting and in-house for some of these services that you're contracting. Is there a, is there a point that some of these services would be better done in-house and would cost us the same or less than contracting them out? And the second part of that is, you're telling me that many of these costs that are reflected in here are really paid back to us because you pass the cost on? So these, they're cost, but they're not, they don't reflect essentially money spent that's not regained?
That's correct, yeah, so to answer your first question, it would take a lot, so for plan review, there's a lot of different components to that, so we send them to these third-party plan reviewers, they're all schooled in electrical compliance, plumbing compliance, mechanical, building structural, all of these things, to have somebody in-house that knew all of those as well as they do, that would cost a pretty penny, and right now, it's really not costing the city anything, because it's passed through onto the applicant that's doing those. So, and the same thing with the engineer, it's just a very high-level expertise that we could have a city engineer or someone that we hire, but right now, since it's mostly passed through, it doesn't affect, and they have that level of expertise that we just can't provide, and actually, the same thing with Workshop, the historic preservation and her knowledge of all of those things is, is way more than what we have in-house. Could we bring somebody in? Yeah, but I don't think we would get, I don't know if there's enough work to bring somebody in-house for the historic preservation side of things, to pay them a full-time salary when we can just contract those out.
Can I, can I spin on that real quick, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the fees that we, you talked about the contractor, the planning users, does our fee schedule cover all of those fees and an administrative component?
That's correct. Yeah, so right now, so for building and commercial, residential, commercial building, those are already baked into the budget, because we already have what those fees are gonna cost from the plan review, so we have those baked in with an additional, usually around a 10% revenue on top of that. The engineering side of it, we get charged those invoices, and then we bill those back to the engineering, or the developer, whichever who's supposed to be paying those, and then we add a 10% administrative charge on top of that.
I just wanted to make sure, because where I'm at, for example, when somebody comes in and it involves an engineering review, there's a statement on their application that says they're responsible for any additional engineering costs.
Yeah, we make them sign an affidavit, actually, yeah, that says that they're responsible to pay those invoices plus the 10% administrative charge.
I just wanted to ask that to make sure we do cover the cost.
We do.
I wanna give you a gold star, you're the first department in my memory that's come and said, I don't need any additional funding, if you want to give me some, I can spend it effectively. Good on you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, just don't take Megan away, no, I'm just kidding. Any other questions? Yes?
Yes, sir.
Sir.
So, you mentioned that right now you feel like you have adequate staffing for the amount that's coming through. My understanding is that a state law was passed a few years ago, that if we don't get reviews done in 45 days, the applicant gets to go have someone else review it for them, and we have to stand by that approval. If Alsatian Oaks continues and Flat Creek starts going full force, do you think you will still be able to get things done in that 45-day period?
I wanna address that really quick, I appreciate that, and I do, and I have to follow the same timeframes where I'm at, but it also, as long as you're, those timeframes are basically, if you ignore them, so if you continually respond with conditions and things like that, not always, but a lot of times, that resets the clock, because they haven't met, because you're not required to proceed until you have a legitimate, a complete application.
As long as you can give a specific.
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct, so I just wanted, I just wanted to add to that.
We don't see that issue right now, and I don't, as long as we're doing contracted services, those people have to meet those requirements, and they do this for, like, Bureau Veritas and Safeville do this for a lot of cities, especially in our surrounding area, and that's why they kind of came on board, so they already know they have to meet those timeframes, same thing with the engineer, they know what their time constraints are, so as long as we're contracting those out, I don't see that being an issue in the future.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
I just wanted to check, because your department is absolutely one of the few that really does need to get bigger before the growth happens, not.
Yeah, and like I said, if we were, the only, I think the next step, if we needed to add staffing, is just when there's so many homes that, because right now, it's at this, where we know the new residential's coming on, so we have all these new residential applications, but once they get built, they, it's like a time that lapses where they don't really do much else, like, you know, there's not a lot of accessory structures, not a lot of pools going in, there's not a lot of fence changes, there's not a lot, but then, after like a certain time lapses, then these things start coming back up, when they're doing like sheds and additional garages and pools. When they're doing like sheds and additional garages and pools and there's repairs to the house that need to be made and things like that. So it's gonna peak back up. And when we're have another, I don't know, two thousand or, yeah, almost two thousand, sixteen hundred new homes, then we may need additional help at that point because those are a lot of, it has to go through that same process, but it's little things here and there. So there could be ten applications a day, twenty applications, and that may be too much for us to handle, but we don't know. We'll have to wait to see what happens in the future.
That's something, and that's the importance of reevaluating what we're trying to do today. Is this service kind of.
Alright, I got it.
This is why it's kind of important to look at your services from time to time. It's kinda like looking at your car insurance. We, we take a granted, we buy our, our, our insurance or a home, but we really should be looking at it every two or three years to see if we still have, is it beating our needs? Do we buy anything else that needs to be covered? Is it a good rate? Same thing happens within our, our service areas. Sometimes we add, and we see this in government, they really, um, positions get added and then they never go away. And, yeah, no one likes to, to cut a position, but, um, you can find good homes for people. And if you have to, if, if it isn't justified anymore in that position, well, maybe there's additional due responsibilities that could be given. Or maybe they can be moved somewhere else in the organization. It's not always, we're gonna lay you off and, and not have a position. There are lots of creative ways to keep good people, but also not have, you know, an expanded service area that you don't need. And I think that's one of the values that hopefully have come from today is y'all can think about that kind of stuff. Like, do we have enough people to get enough people? Or what have you in, in each of the service areas?
That's where my questions are on the residential side. The homes that are already built that people wanna do stuff. That I, I've had a few people, oh yeah, I put in my permit to do this, that, or the other, modern. But they don't have the permit. The person doing the work doesn't have the permit. The utilities were never marked, like my neighbor. His contractor, oh yeah, we put in the permit. Utilities weren't marked and they ended up severing the communication line down our street.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah. And I do see, but there, that's just a lapse in, I think, uh, compliance. Cause, cause, you know, me and Megan are in our building and we have to stay there. But I think it's just a lack of like eyes on the ground. I know that's getting better, though. So hopefully that will, the, things like that will be addressed because we're having more people in compliance, um, Terry's being trained. And they seem to be doing a really great job right now, so.
But that's important to reach over and say, where you're tapping into this.
Yeah.
Cause you don't, you guys are mainly in the building, but you need to say, who, who does your boots on the ground?
Yeah.
That way, we can pass it on because we have citizens come to.
Yeah, definitely.
That's something important to annotate, you know, that, okay, this, even though we're, we're responsible for permits.
Yeah.
The eyes on.
Oh, yeah.
Of course, type of thing. So, cause that was one of my questions is like, okay, your permits. You are responsible.
Yeah.
Making sure the permitting process.
The process, yeah.
And so that's part of the process, making sure all that's done. So who communicates with the homeowner or whoever puts in for the permit to let them know, do not start anything until you receive the, hey, here you go?
Um, we do communicate that.
We do.
Now, do they follow that? That's a, that's a different story, but we do, yeah. But the permitting department does let them know, you can't start any work until you have your approved permit, which I have to sign. Like, there's not somebody else that signs those. So if you don't have a signature on those from me that says your permit is approved, then they should not be starting and they should know that.
Well, but they, cause they submit it online. They not always talk with somebody.
Yeah, and, but it still goes, the, just cause they submit it online and they pay for it online, it should be a signed permit.
There should be if there's not a statement on the permit that it cannot be worked.
Yeah.
If I may, what I think you're uncovering though is, is that there is an opportunity.
True.
Yes.
And that is to communicate, and it's something I don't think is in our procedure today, I don't think. So our permits are entered, are they in I work?
That's correct, mm-hmm.
When they're entered in I work, is there a way to flag them so that as those permits are issued, it notifies the co-compliance team that a permit has been issued?
Or being worked or something?
I know, uh, co-compliance does have ability to access our system.
They have access, but are they getting proactively notified? I, I don't think they are. And my point is, there's probably an opportunity for us to change our processes.
Yeah.
Competition have, where when we issue a permit, it proactively notifies them. And I think there's a way to automate that, that's what I'm, why I'm pointing to I work. It's not necessarily additional staff time. But if we can work with I work to see if there's a way to proactively notify when it, when it gets issued, it doesn't only go to, it goes like on that action, it gets issued or whatever. It automatically goes to the co-compliance team. And then we need to have a training with co-compliance that, hey, when you get per- updates on permits, that's your cue to go by and look at that address, make sure the permit's properly posted.
Right.
Make sure work is commencing in time.
Yeah.
That's, so there's opportunity for.
Yeah, that's why I was looking at personnel and everything, because everybody, you know, hears a permit, that's you, you own the process.
Yeah.
But in this process, Brianna, do, is it, it's the contractor's responsibility, whether it be the homeowner who's acting as a contractor or a contractor.
That's correct.
To post that permit visibly, so when Cora goes by, she goes, oh, there it is, right?
Yeah.
Or there it's not. And then if it's not, we stop work, right? But that's not happening.
Yeah, so they, we don't have it within, so most cities do do that where, and we, I'm not sure why we don't have that within our ordinances. And that's something we can look at, where the po- permit has to be posted.
Okay.
Yeah, and so that's where there's like a.
That's not in our ordinance.
Mm-mm, no, so.
I know we're getting.
We, we look at different things. Make a note, please.
Yeah, I will, I will look, make my note. Yeah, so that's something to look at because it would be a lot easier. But it's just not something, it's not part of our process right now.
I've made two notes, we do want to move on to your.
Yeah, I'll ask a couple of questions.
A couple for my.
Let's go real quick.
Yes, uh-huh.
We'll, we'll get there, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Number two, one of the two are personnel services and contracted services, those are the big money.
Yes.
And, and I would just guess, the personnel services, that went, your, your five-year average, one forty-three, your actual twenty-four was one thirty, we jumped to one fifty-five, but we added Meg, right?
That's correct.
Okay, got that. And then contracted services, twenty-four was two hundred and thirty-six thousand, round numbers.
Yeah.
Five-year average, one thirty-five, and then we went back down to one forty-two. I'm just curious, I'm just making sure you're not selling yourselves short.
No, and the thing is, it, a lot of it's pass-through, so, but we just can't, we can't really know exactly what's gonna happen with development in the future. Um, so this past year, we had a lot of plaques that came through. We had, I mean, large-scale plaques that required a lot of engineering services. And so that's why that number's so high. It doesn't mean that we didn't get compensated on the backend for those, but, yeah, it, it kinda seems like, oh, you're only asking for this much because we really don't know what's gonna happen with development. They may in twenty, when that, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, when we thought Alsatian Oaks was gonna be starting, they didn't start yet. And so we weren't getting a lot of those engineering fees that we thought. And then, so we had put it really high, when it turns out we didn't get all those coming through, so.
So, yeah, this year, I mean, twenty-five, it, you're sixty grand down.
Yeah.
Twenty-four, I'm just making sure.
Yeah, like I said, it's a pass-through cost, so it may on the other side come out like where it looks negative, but we should be recouping those funds if it goes over.
Okay, thank you.
Phil, did you have anything? Okay, I just wanna end with one thing, Brianna, thank you for what you do. Uh, I just wanna address the fact that, I, I just wanna make sure with all our contracted services that our citizens are getting things in a primary manner. And I just wanna really quick go back to one of Bob's things. The city used to have a certified building inspector, fire inspector, plumber inspector, on staff, engineer on staff, uh, code enforcement. Basically, the same person did all of that. And when they retired, the city diversified out for more contract services. So I understand that. You can't, it's hard to find somebody as a full-time staff to justify with those type of credentials.
Yeah.
I applaud you in using the contractor services. I just, my whole thing is just make sure that the people have the, have the quality of service that they deserve and pay for.
Definitely.
Thank you.
That's what we tried for, yeah.
Forgot, the guidelines, Rachel, see, we need to rework the power requirements. Do you feel comfortable in the budget you have that we can do that?
Um, I don't believe so, but we just don't know that number yet because we would have to get with Selena. So I don't know what that number looks like right now. But I don't think that within our contracted services, that's going to be enough if we're going to be doing the reworking of the historic design guidelines.
No, probably, honestly, that should be, we're talking about the historic guideline review. In my mind, that is a separate scoped project. And what it also needs to kind of determine, here's what we want. And HLCE and how we go through that process. Y'all are gonna need to determine what you wanna review, set expectations on whether you're gonna have public meetings, et cetera. Cause all that plays into that, what it's gonna cost actually.
I, I think, I think that'll all come up in discussions when we talk about how we presented before, how we review our ordinances as a whole and start assigning those tasks out.
Okay.
Okay, Bob, let's, let's wrap this up.
You brought something perfect to mind here. Historically, I don't care for contracted services if we can do it. However, just about every case, we're one deep in everything that's important. If we lose our one person that knows everything, we're in big trouble. If we use a contracted services, they've always got somebody that can do it.
Oh, yeah.
And so.
That's my point.
It's a, you know, a trade-off there, you do pass-through cost, you know, perfect.
Yes.
Working with cities that have engineers on staff or attorneys on staff, guess what, you still end up having engineer contracts, you still end up having attorneys. So it doesn't necessarily save you costs and, and that's just been my experience, but anyway.
No, I, and I, but I appreciate it. Thank you, Brianna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh-huh.
Alright, I'd like to introduce Michael Haley, uh, for those of you who haven't met him yet. He is our airport manager. We are still, you know, shifting duties to, to Michael. He's been here a little, not.
Nine months?
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, not a year, uh, but more than six months, nine months. So he's gonna talk a little bit about the airport. Uh, we are gonna get into our enterprise funds. Again, just going back historically, uh, the council hasn't done a lot to affect those budgets because generally, they are discrete budgets that are revenue-driven, paid more by rate payers, or in this case, fuel and hangar rentals. And, uh, the, the airport in some respects has been out of sight, out of mind, except when it isn't. So like when the airport zoning came up and some of the other issues. But, um, Michael, it's a really important service you provide. And if you wanna dive into that, time is.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor, Council, City Staff, Members of the Public. My name is Mike Haley and it's my honor to present on behalf of the airport. Uh, I do so with a servant attitude. The airport, you know, we're talking policy budget, but the other side of that coin is personnel. So thank you to Brianna, Pete, and myself. We do what it takes to make the airport run regardless of what might be discussed in a budget meeting a year prior. We do what it takes to make it happen. Thanks to Scott for this opportunity. It really should be that department heads should be, uh, communicating with, uh, the council via Scott, but know their budgets, be watching their budgets month to month. Some line items may need a line transfer. For example, with the airport, we have to buy extra mowing blades for, uh, equipment repair line item. We may need to take that from a line item that's running under budget, such as building maintenance. Some years, we may have to do, uh, you know, major, uh, improvements to the building, such as an air conditioning or something like that. But truly, the manager or subject matter expert should be watching the budget and looking for those opportunities to do a line item transfer. So by you setting the policy and giving me a budget amount, that's, I take that back, I go back to work and I work within that policy statement.
Can I pause you real quick? I just wanna update Council. So something that Michael just mentioned is important that you, you be aware of. In the past, when I got here, uh, they, and I don't know if it was in the process being corrected when I first got here, because I just can't remember, but, uh, there had been a, uh, a practice where if I didn't have enough money in this item, well, I'd go use it, I'd go spend money out of this item and it would get coded to that item erroneously. And what that does, if you do that year over year, you don't know what things cost. You don't know what you're spending on small equipment or on repair. Because, well, I ran out of the repair budget, so now then I went and used this contracting budget because I still had money and I hadn't used that yet. So when we, when I got here, one of the things that we did was exactly what Michael's describing. We met with these department heads and we really kinda put them responsible for, for those budgets and, and trained them and helped them understand why it was important for them to know what each of those line items was costing. So I, I will say that the last five years of history that you have is pretty accurate on the line item level. Those items are, are reflect, accurately reflect. And that's the reason why you'll see some changes in those numbers. Because where it wasn't being used, we either did away with it or greatly reduced the amount that was allocated there. And then we increased the allocation where the money was actually being spent. And that was more for clarity for you all and importantly, clarity for me to understand what things cost as far as cost of business.
Well, Scott and Michael, really quick, I just wanna tell you, before you get more into it, I'm a department budget guy. Uh, I don't feel like the need to get down in the weeds on, on line items, especially when it's normal operations. Now, if it's a capital item, that's different. But that's your job, make it work within your department budget. And if there's not budgeted, you need a department budget amendment, come to us. Maybe brief us on line items, but it's really not, that's, that's yours.
And I saw it, and I saw it.
And I appreciate you saying that.
Okay, and, and I don't mind, uh, getting into detail in, in line items, items when it's necessary. Uh, you know, are we doing the, the best for the city in terms of buying the right equipment? Or are we just, uh, you know, uh, shopping on Amazon or whatever it may be?
I just, I just wanna qualify, in the beginning, when we set the whole budget, yeah, line items are important to look at, but once the department budget is set, you manage it.
Sure, sure, and I appreciate that. I'm, I'm just speaking, that I think Scott's given us all an opportunity to get us closer to.
That's my opinion.
Getting us closer to, uh, standing before you and being held accountable, but also having lots of good things to talk about as well. It doesn't have to be an adversarial approach.
Oh, I did that a lot when I was here. I, I, I needed a little bit more over in this line item. I would move it from that line item to this line item, so, you know.
Well.
That's a department issue.
You know, we're all, uh, city administration, staff level, council. You know, we're working at our level at this point and we all come with some subject matter expertise.
Yes, sir.
I tend to do things, you know, this is how I presented in the previous councils in the state of Colorado. And that's where I came from, by the way, was the state of.
Okay.
I do have a pilot's license, hence the airport. And I also have a drone license.
That's your.
Okay.
But please don't drone over.
Okay, so the slide you see before you is our five-year historical budget. One of the things that I recognized after being here eight months and looking at the historical budget is that the airport, uh, is basically at a plateau. It, it, the, the year-to-year budget is about the same. The differences you see are a couple of years where there was not depreciation taken. So, uh, where you see a, a low budget number, there's probably two hundred and fifty thousand in depreciation that hasn't been recorded in that budget year. So through the last four years, it's pretty, pretty stagnant, right? And that's not necessarily a bad thing. I think that's the airport being all it can be under its current circumstances. Council, uh, uh, passed an ordinance that limited the runway length to five thousand and one feet, and it's seventy-five feet wide. That forever will keep us as a Class Two-B airport. That forever will keep us as a class two B airport. And the reason that's important is uh, the aircraft that we can service have a limitation of less than a hundred and twenty knots uh, approach speed and less than forty thousand pounds if they have two tires per landing gear uh, setup. Otherwise, it's twenty thousand pounds.
Can I ask you a question really quick?
Sure.
On the runway dimensions. The runway originally was a hundred and fifty foot by five thousand one. And then there was a grant done and they narrowed it to seventy-five to forty-six hundred. So it is now at five thousand one?
It's five thousand one.
Okay.
Uh, and as I'm speaking to you, when I got here, uh.
It was five thousand one by one fifty that cut it.
Yeah, now it's down to seventy-five.
Yeah, and they cut it to forty-six hundred. So now it's back to fifty-one hundred, five thousand.
Five thousand and one feet long, seventy-five feet.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that.
And I'm coming to you, uh, having taken a lot of recommendations from the airport layout plan.
Yes.
So you're gonna see later on in the slide projects that are based on this. This is started probably twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Some of the information in here now is gonna be outdated, and I'll share that with you on a, on a coming slide. But the good news is, we don't have to change a thing. And I get a gold star because I lowered my budget a couple dollars. Yeah, well, you know, uh, so, uh, we don't need to make any changes to the airport budget. It is a self-sufficient enterprise fund. Revenues have to equal expenses. And we do so, right now, I'm here before you, with a pretty good reserve fund balance or beginning balance to our uh, uh, airport fund, seven hundred and sixteen thousand. Um, so the airport, the budget being presented is we're gonna stay the same. And, uh, uh, I expect that, uh, we've pretty much maximized the airport's, uh, viability as it is right now. To take it to another, another level would require significant investment. And I don't think the, the city nor the airport is, is in a position to wanna do that.
You're talking about specifically like charter operations that are on this slide?
The charter operations?
Right. When you say it requires significant investment.
Well, no, I'm, I'm saying, uh, in, in total for the airport, if we wanted to build a transient hangar, for example, and it was a city-paid hangar, not developed by an outside developer, that's a lot of money to, you know, I think that what, one point eight million was our USDA hangar cost? You know, where does the airport find one point eight million to build another hangar? Uh, uh, like the, the USDA hangars, and that was done, I call it USDA, it was funded by a loan from the USDA, and that's why it has that designation. But any significant improvement to the airport, the return on investment may not be, uh, the juice may not be worth the squeeze.
Do you wanna go to the next slide that has that list? That's the list of the projects that come from your.
Yeah, thi- this is the long-term planning, uh, and again, it's taken from the, the, uh, uh, airport layout plan. A couple of these projects are already in, one's completed, the AWAS, one is in, in progress right now. Oh, okay. The one that's in progress is the, uh.
AWAS?
No, the AWAS is complete. It's the hydrological study.
Yeah.
And that's to determine if we have drainage and stormwater issues across the airport. That.
Is that a grant match?
Yes, that's a, that's an F. Uh, ours is ten percent. So it's a ninety-ten.
So that's redoing any hydrological drainage study?
It's, it's a study, it's a study to determine what the drainage issues or stormwater issues are across the airport. How that came about, previously, we would have individual developers building their own hangar, so they would do a land lease. They'd build their own eighty-by-sixty hangar.
So.
I'm, I'm so sorry.
So, so my question is, because I'm going back in time. You're talking about the drainage. I'm just curious. I mean, you're talking about the drains on the entire four hundred-plus acre track. Uh, there's a tremendous fall from one corner to the other, and it all drains one way. And anyway, there'd been past ones. So I, I'm just curious on what level does this relate to past drainage studies for that particular product?
Well, this is specific just to the terminal ramp area. It's not across the field. It doesn't incorporate the non-aeronautical use parts of the airport, the farmers.
Okay.
Uh, agricultural land. Uh, it's, it's for the ramp. And, and how it came about, if I can finish that point.
Yes, sir.
Developers were building individual hangars, like a sixty-by-eighty. And they, the, the developer or builder would come out and say, okay, this is my little plot and wouldn't be concerned about any drainage issues or any, uh, uh, impairment to other hangars. It would just be the contractor saying, yes, I can build this and I'll put a, uh, I'll elevate the, the plot. And what happened is we had one hangar get flooded out because of another hangar being slightly higher. Uh, and so our thought was before any more development takes place, we can have across-the-board study to tell us what, what the, uh, uh, the drainage issues are on the airport so that it's not impacting one just because somebody built and didn't do a study to determine how it would impact the others.
Well, two, two other things to make, uh, points to make on this drainage study specifically. Number one, this is a tech dot funded project.
It is.
Uh, number two, there is not an answer, direct answer to your question, Mayor, and I know Bob, you had the same question. Uh, this is not a repeat of a former drainage issue that we're, that staffs have, that we have a file of for this specific area. So this is a new study for, for what is essentially a new area at the airport. Uh, and number three, it is required for Tech Dot to fund the eventual drainage improvements. This is the first step in order to get that project done. The first thing they wanna see is a study to justify those improvements. Then we can go and apply for whatever the cost of that project will look like, and it'll be in, you know, it could be a million plus.
Right.
But again, it would be under some type of grant program with Tech Dot.
Just so you're clear on my question. My question is, even at ten percent, the city paying funds towards something that was believed to have already been done?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I don't, there, there have been drainage studies done that are citywide. So there've been citywide drainage.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But this is specific to the airport.
Okay.
And, and if we talk about what type of drainage study would be required for a tech stop project, unless, you know, unless there's some report that we aren't aware of, which is possible, it would have to be a study that meets the requirements that Tech Dot needs
Sure.
in order to justify that project. And to our knowledge, nothing like that's been done at the airport for this specific project.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And.
One second, sir. Uh, he, he knows, these two got my email, that this is at least the third drainage study done on the area where the hangars and stuff are. And, uh, even Tech Dot funded and built and designed a hangar out there with the doors that, that are. Did a study, and yet when it rained, it flooded. And, uh, and so, uh, I'm in favor of doing this, especially the way you tie it together with the future. But when it's done, I hope we take a copy and give to the county or something because
Yeah, so we don't lose it?
The city has done a very poor job of keeping records of engineering studies done in the past. They really, really have.
I agree.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, uh, I'm looking forward to them telling us what we need to do, because that sets up the projects for the future. Rather than have an engineering study done and then not doing anything, I think we need to, to take note of what's identified as a deficiency and, and look to see, can the city or the airport fund some of these, uh, recommendations to help with drainage and stormwater. Uh, obviously, the airport hasn't, the airport has grown. There's new hangars. I don't know if there was a study done prior to twenty twenty-one with the three executive hangars that are closest. And that's one of the flooding issues that happened was, was, uh, on those three hangars. But.
If you'll move to the next, unless you're, is there more you wanna talk about?
These projects.
Bob is saying there have been prior studies, just like the one where, where cities doing now. And staff is saying they do not know of any previous study done related to this.
Correct.
So I guess you're gonna talk to Bob later and, and find out, Bob, what year are you talking about the study occurring?
What year do you wanna know?
Or is, is it still out there?
Well, and there's a different, yeah, we'll, we'll talk. There's, there's a difference between what a drainage study being done in the construct that's connected to construction of the hangar.
Sure.
Versus a drainage study is being done to alleviate drainage issues in a broader area, which is what we're looking at now.
Because right now, we're looking at the whole ramp, everything, hardtop.
Right, but if there, if one of those has been done, it would not surprise, I mean, honestly, I, I've worked for cities in the past where Tech Dot had done iterative, uh, funded iterative, uh, design and repeated it as, you know, an iterative design that was done fifteen, twenty years ago. It'd already been done, and they went and funded, they, with Tech Dot money, funded it again for the same city, same project. And I, there really wasn't a justification other than the fact that, well, it was, it was now old, ten, fifteen years old.
The whole area, everything, not just a few.
Terminal area, the runway area, and actually upstream, it came from other people's property onto the airport and went off the end.
And what year was it done?
I would, I would.
Between oh-seven and twenty.
Okay, that answers my question.
One thing, you notice there are some underground drainage pipes out there. There's a very, very large cut from the, uh, from the south end with a huge ditch that goes out. There's a ditch in front of.
The terminal building.
All that came as a result of drainage studies. And so, and when Tech Dot completely rebuilt the, uh, south ramp down there and put drainage under there, they had drainage studies for all that area, every bit of it.
I would go back and begin with when the city got a grant. Literally, they narrowed the runway, and that was done in the nineties, when they narrowed the runway down. Uh, because that was all, that was when the ramp was built.
Right, right.
The bigger ramp. So I would go back to those. And I'm with Bob that, that there were drainage issues take addressed during those projects. Uh, I'm not, I'm not against what we need to do, because we need to have the baseline moving forward. But I'd, I'd be interested to see if some of that was in some of them past.
Well, if it's for no other reason, then the engineer that's been assigned to this project should have access to that information. So we'll, we'll, we'll do some.
I'm just trying to point you in an area to look.
And one thing to put on there, um, at, cause it's still being funding's trying still, Arnie's still working it, is the STEM project for the STEM building.
Mm-hmm.
Arnie's still working that left and right, trying to find funding to put this, our aviation STEM building out there. So that shouldn't be off of our radar either, because it's not a dead. But just, I wanted to put that out there.
Sure.
Cause that'll, that'll bring a lot of stuff to the airport, too.
Arnie reminds me of that every time I see him.
Well, he brings it up in the meetings.
You'll see that there's some runway lights. Uh, that's the transition to LED. Incontestant bulbs and stuff are becoming obsolete. For airport to go and buy globes and the bulbs, we really need to transition to LED, so runway is on there. And that's, that's consistent with the layout plan that was done by KSA.
Yes, sir. The kit, the layout plan was, the plan you referencing was done when?
Well, it's initiated in twenty twenty.
Okay.
Was completed twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Um, so.
Thank you.
I'm trying to move this forward here.
Yes, sir.
Unless you, you, you need any questions specific?
Anybody else have anything?
Uh, what's your best guess when we're gonna start having electronic vehicles, uh, aircraft?
They have them now.
Where it's gonna be, uh, cause you, you put down here about the EBTOL.
Yeah, I was gonna get to that. That's why I was trying to move this budget slide forward to that, so.
While you're looking, I'll raise one question. Uh, you, you have on here, I'm almost sorry they classified us as original airport really am. I think we could be really good at what we are. When we start trying to please everybody that's mindful to come in here, it's, could be a real problem. But, uh, there are some items best handled by a fixed-based operator. Okay, right now, we're the fixed-based operator, if you will. Law allows us to be the only fuel salesperson. But for some other company to come out here and offer the things that like billionaire aviation in San Antonio does, you know, they sweep, bring you food, they get you a car, and they service the airplane. Generally, those people are best done with a commercial operation, but they can't be viable unless they get the fuel sales and part of the hangar rent. Because they can't make it otherwise. And so, whenever you look at this in the future, because I sure won't be here, uh, need to think about what the overall impact is on, on the airport. When we had the fixed-based operator in the past, the airport went to hell because they didn't wanna spend their money on fixing the airport. Only after it took it back, as it blossomed into something that it is now.
Right.
So, you know, you need to really dig in depth about what's this due to the airport and its income when you let a fixed-based operator go out there.
And I certainly think the city can be very proud of the airport. As I mentioned earlier, the personnel make it happen. We're doing the things that a fixed-based operator, a commercial fixed-based operator would do, uh, and we're, you know, we're doing it with a smile. And we're, uh, keeping the revenues, uh, coming to the, uh, airport for the city. Um, I mentioned earlier, uh, you know, the, the KSA study in twenty twenty, twenty twenty did not anticipate eVTOL aircraft, elect, uh, you know, electric vertical takeoff and landing. Um, and it's coming. And, uh, I read this morning, and that's part of my responsibilities to keep up on trends and, and things happening around airports. Archer Aviation, there's two, uh, providers right now with air taxis. Joby, J-O-B-Y, and Archer Aviation. I read this morning that Archer Aviation has a result of Texas law that's been enacted, specifically three of them, that they're looking to reincorporate out of Delaware and in Texas and bring their operations to Texas. Having been a drone operator, uh, for the last nearly ten years, I trust my drone. I know the technology is there. If my drone could support me, I'd grab a hold of it and let it take me where, uh, where it would. So I know the technology is there and I trust it. Um, and from a perspective of, uh, where is the airport gonna be in five, ten years? Well, twenty twenty-eight, the air taxis are gonna be used in the Olympics in Los Angeles. They were supposed to be done in Paris, but they ran behind on certification. But in, eh, expect to see it in twenty twenty-eight at the Olympics. Now, what that does uh, for, uh, um, uh, airports across the country, the Castroville Airport is part of the national airport layout. It's significant from the federal government's eyes in that it's a good transportation location, particularly in a state that requires air travel for a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of activities. Alaska's another state that does that. So, uh, we could see interest from eVTOL aircraft. That doesn't require lengthening the runway. It doesn't require widening the runway. It would be putting charging systems and landing, uh, locations at the airport. Uh, I mentioned that just because I'm keeping a, uh, track of it, and I see that Archer has some interest in Texas. San Antonio area, Austin, uh, just like Tesla and all the other tech companies that are looking at Texas. Well, tech aviation companies are also looking. And, you know, you look at Castroville compared to Honda. Honda's still a thirty-minute drive west of here, right? But Castroville, if you took Castroville Airport, Stinson, Kelly, Bernie, Curville, you know, it creates a pretty, uh, uh, and, and the airports on the east side of San Antonio, it creates a pretty good transportation hub around the city of San Antonio and the metro area that Castroville could be seen as one of those locations for that air taxi service. Probably twenty, thirty. Huh?
They're autonomous.
Yeah, yeah. Now, they may start off, uh, uh, with a pilot just because the general flying public probably feels comfortable knowing that there's somebody sitting up front. As I told you, I would be willing to sit in it because I know the technology's there. I did power line inspections where I'd sent the drone out on a pre-prepared flight plan, and it would go out and read temperatures off of, uh, uh, transformers and power lines and come back. And, uh, you know, no issues as long as I stayed within the wind requirements for the drone. It, it did its thing. So, um, the airport doesn't, the airport, if the revenues equal the expenditures, the airport's good. We're not, uh, subject to city taxes or, you know, sales tax that may come in or property taxes decreasing. Our budget is funded strictly from the hangar rent, the fuel sales, and, uh, a few miscellaneous revenue streams, uh, ramp tie-downs and, and things like that. Um, but I'm confident that the airport, uh, can manage with its existing budget. And if we see projects that we wanna fund that are ninety-five, five, ninety-ten, or fifty-fifty, that would be a decision that we would make collaboratively if, as to whether we wanna invest that in the airport or not.
Any question, follow-up questions to the airport? We need to move on.
One, one more. Uh, he's got one. Of course, you got the farmland lease, you got the water lease to the city, and those are other significant things. But one of the reasons that we get and have gotten for years, the grants that we do is to keep general aviation viable and, and as attractive for people to get into as possible. If you get into the mindset of, let's get all that we can get out of this sucker. They got an airplane, they can afford everything, you're gonna kill it. And, uh, you'll kill off people that are, that end up becoming airline pilots and everything else. So you, you need to think about this as not get all you can get out of, out of our facility there. It needs to be, needs to be done in a manner that continues to support, uh, private aviation.
And I would agree. I, I, you know, I think, I think the, the, the theme should be maintain the airport so it can provide the service level that it's providing. And, you know, don't, don't, uh, have a grandiose idea and, and, and go off uh, uh, outside the, what the airport can support in the budget cycle and what the city, the sponsor can support, uh, for, uh, projects and so forth. And, you know, there are projects that FAA, uh, uh, you know, uh, provides to us that, that, uh, you know, that we should consider based on the age of the runway, the age of the ramp.
The AWAS is a great example of that.
Yeah.
Let's, David, David?
Uh, I was gonna ask, do, are there facilities at the airport that you foresee requiring significant maintenance or replacement in the next five to ten years?
Yes.
Hangers or?
Uh, well, hangar maintenance is something we, uh, you know, we, we could end up with a couple of doors off the hinges kind of thing or roof collapse or something like that. I mean, some of the hangars there are, are, are getting older day by day, and there's maintenance costs that come with them. Right now, we're doing LED light upgrades inside the hangars when we can and when the budget supports it. Um, but yes, I, I can foresee that there will be a time when we may need to not look forward at a new hangar, but look backward and say, okay, this is what we currently have. Uh, has it depreciated to the point where a return on investment would have us redo that hangar or even expand that hangar?
Your oldest, their oldest hangar was upgraded shortly before Michael Kane. That was the one that, uh, the.
Almond hangar?
Yeah, what is it? What's the flight group? Anyway.
Dream Flights.
Dream Flights. I was gonna say.
No, Jetstream Aeronautics.
Well, direct, uh, the one that Dream Flights moved, moved into, they fixed up. That was gonna be, that was a hangar that was really in need of, uh, some TLC. And then the almond hangar was another one that we evicted the tenant out of, right? That actually happened, and then, uh, they went in while the tenant was gone and made some improvements and then re. That actually happened and then, uh, they went in while the tenant was gone and made some improvements and then re-leased it. Is that accurate?
Yes.
We evicted it, but we just told him, yeah, it's another hangar. So we hired him with another hangar that he paid for.
And it is currently leased. And the improvements to that were wooden blocks put into the frame to make it, uh.
But that is a pretty old hangar.
Yeah, it is.
We're keeping it. It's basically, you know, uh, chicken wire and duct, duct tape to a certain extent on that hangar. Um, and, uh, you know, the council, the, the airport will have to decide when it comes time, when there's really a need to, okay, this thing needs to be demolished and rebuilt. The almond hangar.
Yeah.
The one that's referred.
Almond? At, at, at the end of the, uh, hail sheds?
Yeah, yeah.
Straight across. It's a standalone box hangar.
Single aircraft.
Yep, yep, that's it.
You're gonna have to replace the fuel tank one of these days for the longer.
Sure, sure.
Been there over 22 years and they, they do go bad.
Yeah, and, and that, that would be something I would expect that Texas aviation grant would, would, would fund because it may even be partially covered by the ramp grant. And our fuel supplier, uh, uh, they inspect the tanks. They, they could send us a, a new tank, replacement tank, uh, um, as part of our contract with them. I'm not saying it's free. I'm just saying that we have that line of communication with the fuel supplier to do that.
All right, I'm getting a head nod.
Mike, Michael, thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate everything you, you talked about.
And it's a pleasure speaking with you. If you have more questions, I can always present again. Thank you.
Look forward to, to working more with you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, we're gonna move on. I believe we have the library.
Yes.
Beth, Harley. Hi, Beth.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Scott, can you put the AC on just for 15 minutes?
It, it's on. I think it's on at 70 right now.
Oh, man.
Okay. We're running a little behind, Johnny. Okay? Okay.
Kelly, the door open so I can hear it.
I, I can't lose, I, I can lose one, but not two because if we lose two, we have to stop. Sure. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, left too early to give those to Chrissy to bring to work, so.
Oh, that's fantastic. Thank you.
My goodness.
We're making.
Just leave the library?
Yeah, that's what my husband said, so.
Great, love it.
He'd finish drinking it and I'd put it in the bag.
Advancing.
And, and council, as the representative of the, uh.
I've got it right here.
Do you want me to hit advance?
Introducing Beth Harley.
Hello.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Hi. Where are we at?
You're ready. Well, won't I feel real?
This is a springboard.
Okay.
Former library building.
Beth, how does it still come in for council when the two previous departments bragged about how they're not asking for any additional money?
Um, yeah, we'll get back to that one. I'm not sure, you know, so I came on in the beginning of August and when I stepped into the position, there was a lot of stuff going on that I needed to spend probably my first six months cleaning up.
That's an understatement.
So, so, um, I am, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do with this because I.
You're fine.
Okay, thanks. Let's move on. All right. So our, I'm all for that. Our core, uh, major services and some of them were, uh, not put on here, but our children's programs, we're now on Wednesdays, we do a toddler story time and we're averaging about 25 to 32 children each Wednesday, so that is very much increasing. When Chrissy first started, her statistics were showing 12 to 15. So we are growing there. Um, ACOG, Alamo Area Council of Governments, I hooked up with them, partnered with them to do three, um, senior programs for, uh, one of them was a matter of balance, all about safety in your home, uh, grab bars, all kinds of things. And it was done, uh, virtually, so it didn't cost us anything. I had 12, uh, seniors graduate and get certificates and they loved it. So then they came back for tech exercise, which that is going on now. And that's a nutritional program for seniors and also, uh, helping seniors deal with depression and not getting out. So, um, that is running right now. And I have a bingo size class that's going through ACOG that, uh, they play bingo, they exercise and they go over what they've learned. All of those programs are going well. Um, our, in our library loan system, um, we are now not only receiving books from other libraries to fulfill what we don't have in the branch for free, we are also loaning some of our books out. So that shows me that a lot of our material is now a little bit more relevant than what it used to be. Um, we have a writers group that meets twice a month, very successful. There's about 12 to 15, uh, very, uh, talented writers that use, uh, that time to brainstorm and read their stuff. Um, the, yep, yep, yep.
Library loan.
Yeah.
How many can we loan out on average per year or per month?
I have a statistic. Well, I would say right now we are lending out probably about 25 books a month, which we never have done that before.
And how many do we borrow?
Oh, uh, probably about 60, 70.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the only reason I, I mention that is because one of the things, you know, as you all know, nationally, you know, grants are under threat. Library Services is one of the divisions in the federal government that's looking, they're looking at cutting entirely. Uh, the museums and archives, which is where the states get their budget money that then gets distributed to libraries. Uh, interliter, library loans, um, is a big part of that. And that's what enables people to go and borrow stuff. Uh, there's a cost that doing all that trading that they do. Um, so I just want to make you aware of that. We do about 70 a month.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And the interlibrary loan, uh, we get the books for our book group people, which, you know, that's about 30 people, uh, so that they don't, one, have to purchase a book, wait forever for a book. The other thing with the interlibrary loan system, we had to pay for it this year and it was like $2,400 and that's because we were not accredited. We are accredited and if that, uh, grant is available for next year, I will be on top of it. So, um, just keeping an eye on that. Um.
So we got our accreditation back?
Oh, yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. Our 35-page accreditation. Yep.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you.
Sure. Um, let's see, uh, our summer camps, we just did the cutoff yesterday. We are at 42 children. So last year we had 12. So that just shows you that we're moving in the right direction. Uh, and, uh, we've got enough staff now to cover it and I think it's gonna be a blast. So. Uh, the family history and local history, it was in our program room and I moved it out onto the service floor so that when that room's being used, people aren't waiting to go in and see it. So now we have a section out on the floor for people to read and not worry about going in there. Our e-read platforms are Libby and Boundless. Libby Statistics, I just pulled it up the other day. It's, it's like in the month of April, we had like 92 books and about 60 audios that are being checked out now through the online platforms. We've had them, but nobody ever taught anybody how to do it. So I learned how to do Libby and I did some classes and now people are coming in to figure out how to use it and it's working great. Um, other services that are not on here that I'd like to talk about is we are the only place that does faxing, copying, uh, scanning, shredding. Um, so, uh, and that is a huge portion of our day with the staff. They are constantly doing that type of work. Um, people love it and will continue to do it. Um, free place, yes, it is a free place for everybody to come. I do have quite a few. I'm not gonna say quite a few. I would say about four or five people that hang out in the library all day, whether they are homeless or they can't pay for their, uh, air conditioning or, you know, whatever it is. Uh, they hang out with us. We don't mind. We put computer, uh, computers. Well, they can use the computers, but we put puzzles out, we interact with them and they just need a place to be. So we're doing that. Um, let's see, computer classes, we continue to do one-on-one computer classes. If anybody comes in and needs some time, they can book it with not me, but one of my more deck savvy staff members because computers are not my, I don't like them, but anyway. Um, let's see, information board, our, uh, bulletin board inside is filled with pamphlets from just about any place and every place you can think of. We update them periodically and keep them fresh so people know. Um, I think, oh, uh, I just became a notary, so I'm notarizing for the library. The Friends of the Library paid for that. So if anybody, uh, wants to donate for that, they just stick it in the boxes. So, um, I think that's it on that screen. Does anybody have any questions about that? No? Okay. Our personnel right now is me, one full-time and four part-time. And I have one summer helper, but I just hired another one because I lost an employee. So, um, I just need to make sure I have enough hands-on for the summer. So, um, our summer hours have, are going, going to be extended in June. Instead of opening up at 9:30, we're gonna open up at nine. Uh, we have quite a few people that are at our door already. So, um, we might as well open up at nine. On Thursdays, we were staying open till 6:30. We're gonna stay open till seven. We've had some people ask us if we can continue to stay open a little bit later because of the traffic. They can't get back home to pick up whatever they want to pick up. Um, and then Saturdays, we were closing at 1:30 and we're gonna stay open to three to, again, be a cooling station for those who don't do the pool or if the pool's open or whatever. Um, they have a place to come and stay cool for a while. Uh, our technology was a huge mess when I came in. Our computers were not deep freezing. People's information was not staying on it. And I would say, what, first four months, I was on the phone with VC3 every day. We constantly were putting out of order. Um, I have four working right now, give or take. Uh, I have asked the staff, um, periodically to go over and make sure they are deep freezing, um, so that nobody's information is on there and they all know when it's their turn to do that. Um, the Friends of the Library just purchased, um, six computers for us. I think it's seven. I think it's seven computers. They gave us a generous, uh, amount.
Yeah, I said six on there.
Yeah, it's seven. Um, six, uh, $7,600 they have given to me, um, to pay for whatever we can with that for our technology and I'm extremely grateful for that. Um, we definitely have some space limitations. Um, we are busting out at the seam. Uh, you know, it was heart, it broke my heart to say no yesterday to families that want to bring their kids to camp. But we don't, we just do not have the room. And, um, rather than us all acting like we don't know what we're doing and scrambling, I want to keep it to, uh, an amount that we can maintain. So, um.
How many, 35? How many do you have?
42.
42?
Yeah, 42. Yeah, yeah. We took all of our furniture out of the children's library and put carpet squares for the kids. So now they, it's pretty big in there. So we're, we're continuing to try to find space for, uh, for things. So, um, hopefully, you know, we're, we're just gonna continue to do that deep clutter and hopefully make a little bit more room. Um, the target, the Jamex coin operated printer, I would love to put, uh, purchase one next year. Whether or not I can get a grant, I'm not sure. And what that is, is that is a copier with a coin operated machine. And what that does is it will free up time for the staff, probably cut back a little bit on staff hours. But it also allows the patron to print right from their computer to that and they pay for it. Sometimes we, well, we, we retrieve the prints on our copier behind the desk and let's just say they printed out six and six different things and four of them they didn't like. They go back over, they reprint it. We've got this pile of papers and let's just say only seven out of 10 were great. We're eating that cost. So it, it puts that responsibility on them, but of course we are more than willing to help them. You know, we have a lot of people that just need that help and we can help them, but it just would, it's, it's, again, we're, we're eating the cost of all the prints that don't.
Do you have an idea of the ballpark, ballpark cost?
No, I don't. I, I really don't. As a matter of fact, I asked the staff the other day if they keep track of how many copies and I think.
I mean, the Jamex. Do you have, you have an idea what that would cost to go?
I have the paperwork. I didn't bring it with me.
Right, right.
So, yeah, I do have.
I know one of the things that Beth has been very, very, very good about is looking for grants.
Yeah.
And, you know, the fact that we weren't accredited really, really hurt us for this budget year. As she's already stated, that won't be the case next year. Um, so we'll be eligible for some of those grants. Now, will they be available? What are they? Et cetera. That's, that's a whole separate issue. I can't overstate, uh, the Friends of the Library's support. They have, I, I, I'm blown away with what all they've done as far as.
Yeah.
Paying for the sign and paying for the computers and paying for the new billboard and do.
Yeah.
Just seems like every time you have a request, they have stepped up and helped. I don't know.
For the big things, yes. For the big things, they have been great. Yeah.
Um, anyway, so we, we will seek to get funding, uh, first from other sources and, and this will be something that I expect may not be in the budget depending on the timing and especially if it's gonna be something that might be grant eligible. But at some point in the future, we may hear about it again because it's something that Beth is gonna pursue.
Um, and then the other one is a self-service checkout and many libraries have, uh, have one of these in their libraries. And I know we're a small library. However, there's a couple of great perks to this. One, kids love to check out their own books. They love the beep. They love to do the motion, all that stuff. But the big, uh, thing with a self-service checkout station is that, um, some people want to check out things that are a little bit personal and we can tell they kind of just put them up at the counter and then they go off. And it, it just allows privacy, um, and for people who don't want to wait in line. They can come in, find their book, check it out, be done. And it could be right near the, uh, service desk. And again, both of these, I will look for grants and I did want to just add that, um, and I just sent it to Scott and Leroy that I did just receive a grant for 1350 from the state of Texas, even though we weren't accredited. I did a little begging and we got 1350 for our summer programs this summer. So.
Wonderful.
Yeah, yeah. I was like, whoo. So, um, I'm ready for the next screen.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, if we go 10% down, um, yes, that would probably, uh, be a hit on our, uh, part-time employees. Um, and the reason why I haven't gone with another full-time employee is because I haven't been there long enough and I haven't had staff members that have shown me that they want to be there full-time. Um, when I see that, then maybe we'll move in that direction if that's what we feel is the right way to go. Um.
I'm still working on Chrissy for you.
Yeah, she's, that's not gonna happen, I don't think. But reduction and elimination. Oh, did you change on me?
Maybe. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to. Go ahead.
There you go. Reduction of employees, um, our programs, I will continue to have to say no, which is really hard. Um, the, uh, so the continued facility issues, the facility issues we have right now, not the big ones like parking and expansion, are the smaller ones that I feel need to be done, which is our program room, the paint is really pulling off of the walls and I see a lot of dirt and stuff behind it. Um, I think some interior and exterior work would be great to give the, uh, library a little bit of a facelift. Um, it, there are some walls that are crumbling, so.
They have a similar issue in one of their rooms. It looked kind of like the windows.
Yeah.
Me where the paint's peeled down. There was an obvious leak at some point in the path and caused some damage.
Yeah, and we had a bookshelf there, but I needed this space. And when I took the bookshelf, wow, I was like, and we use that room all the time. So it would be, uh, a good thing to do that. But, um, and then, you know, I don't know about our summer camps. So in the previous years, we had been charging $25 a family, I believe, or it may have even been per child to, um, participate in our camps. And that was against our accreditation. So we are no longer charging and I don't think we should charge for any children to come to the library and use our services. So we are not gonna charge them. Um, again, toddler story time, it, we may have to cut back. Um, we're at that point where one more person squeezed in there. So you think about 30 kids in a very small room, plus the moms, and then we have a whole line of strollers out in the library. So, um, um, and the staff is. And the staff is parking on the side now to open up spaces for anybody that comes to the library. Our interlibrary loan system, again, that's on, it just depends on if the state of Texas and TSLAC, which is the state, Texas State Library and Archives, we get a lot of our grants through them as well, and a lot of our trainings. So our older books, right now, I'm very fortunate that I can, the ones that are tearing and are out of shape, I am looking at the statistics to see if we want to replace it or not. Yeah, we'll just have to see what happens with the, with the grants coming up. I would love to have a eighty-eight compliant door where somebody, you know, who has disabilities can press the button and get in and not have to mess with those heavy doors, so. Long-term planning, more parking, that is like everywhere in this city, I'm learning. So we need more parking, we need expansion, the doors would be amazing, keyless entry. We have more doors that, with X amount of keys, that we don't know which goes to which. And we have a side door where we all park and nobody, none of us have a key to get in that way. So I think a keyless thing would be great, a better security system. I don't believe we have a security system outside. So like, if somebody were to fall in the parking lot or anything, we would not know. Or if anything was to be taken, or, not that I think anybody's gonna take anything, but I cannot see anything outside the building. And the heart in me hates to see if a senior falls in the parking lot and they're there and nobody knows it, so. But I do think we need, I think we need to have a security system. And new building, you know, when I was hired, I said I was here to see the library through to whatever we're supposed to do. I'm open to new building, I'm open to staying where we're at and expanding and growing that way. The library advisory board and I are just starting to tap into this now that all that other stuff is finally taken care of. So just go in the way we can go, meet the community needs.
So when we think about at this level, and we talked about before, the service, library services are one of those services that is a subsidized, largely subsidized operation that is, is a, I don't know, it depends on the community, right? But I, I've been very blessed being in communities where it's a backbone of the community. I remember growing up in Fort Worth and going to Storytime with my mom and having, sometimes they'd have an author come and read, and it was always very, I still have memories of that even though I was a very young kid when that happened. I just think they're really important, but at the end of the day, this is one of those policy areas where council really needs to think long and hard about what do we want to do with our library? The opportunities for expansion and improvement are somewhat endless. When you start to look at libraries and what they are, you know, how they're growing, one of the things that you don't see up there is a makerspace, for instance. I don't know if you know about makerspaces, but there are libraries that are getting into the makerspace area where they provide, more or less, it's like an entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial or an artistic area where people can come and make things. Sometimes it's for a business purpose, sometimes it's just because it's a hobby or what have you, and it's like a little Home Depot or a little craft shop, if you will, inside of a library. So libraries are not.
We're not.
About books anymore, I mean, really and truly. And, and the opportunities to grow and to provide different services in a very real sense are kind of endless. I mean, you could have a full kitchen in there, and you could have kitchen classes, and you could have, there's just all kinds of things that libraries now provide. The question is, what is appropriate for Castroville? And especially as we grow, how can you leverage some of this growth? I've mentioned this before, but our, when we talk about debt issuance, the way that we've leveraged the agreements and our tax rates right now, so this is gonna be really important when we get into the budget and start talking about what we're gonna set the tax rate, et cetera. The way we've leveraged it, we've been gradually adding to our INS rate so that as these new houses come on, onboard, a hundred percent of that money comes to the city. That's different from the rest of the property tax, their O and M tax, we have to give most of that back to the developer. When they made the agreement, the agreement didn't really contemplate the INS rate, it treated that as separate, and it's kind of out of sight, out of mind, which is to our benefit as a city. So we've been doing a lot of that, and the reason I bring that up is, again, there is an opportunity, we'll get into this later, about debt issues, to leverage that growth to the benefit of the people who live here. And we really need to think long and hard about, well, what does that mean? What services would you, how would you do that? If you were to take advantage of it, where would you spend those, those monies? And certainly, the library is one of those, you know, parks is gonna be another area, streets, certainly improvement in streets. There are these areas that are largely subsidized, money only comes from one place, not from the users, it's really from your taxpayers. And, and so, you know, what do the taxpayers desire? The other thing to be aware of is the survey, so hopefully, you're encouraging folks to take the.
We have it up.
City survey, because that'll also help you all make some of those difficult decisions on, on what is the priority to the community? What would they like to see? So at this point, questions?
Well, I want to make a couple of comments, but just give me just a second, about something you said earlier, because I, I brought the same information, I was gonna ask this too. Federal government putting a freeze on a lot of the federal funding for libraries. And, you know, specifically, and it goes on in this article, that, you know, libraries funded by city governments receive a smaller portion of their budget from state libraries. However, in a rural area, they rely heavily on the federal ones because the smaller communities have more of a difficult time affording those programs.
Yes.
So I'm not against those, I really do support a lot of the things y'all do, but it will eventually come down to the funding issues and.
Sure.
And how, how the priorities are decided amongst the city. Fully support y'all greatly, but I would tell everybody, you included, everyone there, keep chasing those dollars.
Yeah.
As much as you can.
I do, I just wanted to add it, I do have five nonprofit organizations that have reached out to me to do programs that we're gonna talk about in the fall, and they are all free. They are through the Alamo area, and that's what I'm seeking, as long as they're relevant to what the community wants and what can fit in the library, and they're all virtual, and the TV is now working thanks to my son and all the good things that go with it. So as long as we can do them for free, they're relevant, we can fit the people, we're gonna go that route.
And I applaud you on that, and I just, on a personal note, the more you're able to chase and get things, the easier it is for us to help.
Right, I agree. And one other thing I did want to add was, I did have a statistic on our library visits. When I came in in August, we were seeing about six hundred a month, and we are now close to twelve hundred a month. So we've almost doubled.
Yes, Beth, Sheena, did you have something?
Yes, a couple of things to add to the other services that you guys do. You guys help out when they come out for the kiosks to pay the utility bill.
Yeah, we try not to mess with it too much.
I know, but that's who they're supposed to reach into, so that's another service.
Yep.
That, that your, your people have to deal with. Also, are you guys gonna be doing what you've been doing the past many years during the summer, is provide the meals first?
This year, we are not going to, and the reason why is it's only from ten to twelve this year, and we all, whoever was gonna do that had to go through a strenuous training, and all the meals were being thrown out because they couldn't take it home, they had to eat it right there. And I, I just felt like there's got to be better places to distribute that food. I hated to see it get thrown out, so this year, we're not gonna do it.
That's something that I think is, is an opportunity for us to look at, to the extent there's a need for that in our community, to look at partnerships with MBISD, see if that's something, they generally will do a summer meal program. Our, our school districts will, I don't know about MBISD, but school districts a lot of times will. So that's something that we probably need to pursue and just have that conversation. And then the other option is not to utilize that grant, but to try and see if there isn't local support. Could we get with our local businesses, our local Walmart, our local groups and, and see about some type of meal distribution where we can set our own rules.
Okay.
And be allowed to give it.
Yeah, we, we do periodically, we do, instead of, if you have a fine for five dollars and under, instead of paying that, we do a food drive, and we're gonna do it for a back-to-school drive. We're gonna forgive fines in the month of August, and, no, July. And then in August, I've been invited to go to the back-to-school bash, and I'll bring them all. And then the staff and I have pulled our money together, and we're gonna get two back.
Okay, and then regarding the new building, have you visited the Hondo Library?
Oh, yeah.
And have you asked them on?
They got some really, really good grants, they got that family room grant. We couldn't tap into it because we weren't accredited.
Right, but now that we are.
If it's available.
Right.
I will go, oh, absolutely, yeah, I will be on it, like, yeah, Elsie and I kind of talk quite a bit. She's been very instrumental in helping me get my feet.
Because I'm, I'm one of the people during the UDO that said, alright, if we move the public works area, I'd love to have a library built there.
Yeah, okay.
It'd be big enough, beautiful enough accommodation.
Yeah.
Alright, that's all.
Yeah, if that grant is out there.
Does anybody else have a specific question? We'd like to. Well, if, does anybody have one, because we'd like to kind of move forward. Sir, did you have something?
Yes.
Please.
I've, I've been a proponent for more than ten years to expand the library to the west, because you could do that up to where the sidewalk is or the thing, and the library could stay in operation. When I priced this ten years ago, it was about two hundred thousand dollars. Because the roof slope and all the rest of that is just the same, we'd have to add some more AC probably, and that would give probably a twenty percent plus increase in the size of the library. And I know we briefly discussed that, and I would like for us to consider that and see if that might be possible, because it wouldn't disrupt the entire library, but it would give us significantly more space. I, a piece of paper I showed you, I'm very big on getting the maximum return per citizen for investment.
Yes.
And I irritated some people on the, it's about the swimming pool and how much money we pay to heat that for a handful of people to use. The library, the park, a different situation, the park is used tremendously and we need to fund it, but I would like us to seriously consider as we go through this whether it would be practical to, to expand the library to the west side and help with some of these other things, because it does in fact touch the community greatly. I think if it's legal, if we could get some community sponsors maybe to match something from the city, hello, Scott?
Yeah, I'm listening.
That might, might be more affordable, if they could have their name on a portion of, of an expansion, so to speak.
Yeah, that's a, I'll just say, that's usually not a staff issue, that's something you can talk to your constituents about. If you get a donor that's willing to do that, that'd be great. Donors can donate money and expand buildings, there's no legal issue. Yeah, the name is a policy issue by the city.
Leave us an endowment, let us go.
Usually, a naming rights are, are a policy that the city sets, and you can set them based on a percentage of forgiving, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, the, the other thing is, maybe work a deal with the hardware store that we could use a portion of their parking lot for, for the city staff and maybe some others over there.
We're expanding, that, like, that area is gonna be, we're expanding, I'll make it a huge lumberyard.
Yeah.
Take it out of your mind, the honey guy has to move too.
Okay.
I would like to see. They'll the library here.
I would like to see the kiosk relocated somewhere else.
I don't know.
Maybe the salvage yard, and that we could have that area to use for additional parking on that side. And put the, I saw something in here about wanting another kiosk, maybe you find a, maybe a better location, we'll get into that later.
How dare you, but go ahead.
What's that?
I said, how dare you, but go ahead.
Okay.
I thought it was a terrible idea, I still do.
Yeah.
I'd like for us to consider the possibility of building expansion stuff.
Okay.
That kiosk is how you got your driver.
That, thank, thank you very much for everything you presented, thanks for what you're doing.
Right.
We're gonna take about a five-minute rest of your break.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I want to, can I do, before you announce the break, real quick, I just want to point this out, when you look at the budget for, for libraries, their, their budget, their annual budget's about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars a year. It is the smallest budget you have in the entire general fund.
Sure.
I just want to give kudos to Beth, I know you've only been here since August, but really and truly, when you look at what the service they provide in a bang-for-buck, you would never know by looking at what they do and how much they, they put on that that's the smallest budget in, in the general fund.
I appreciate that.
Extraordinary job, so.
Let, let's take, let's take about a seven-minute break, okay? Thank you. We need to try to get back. You want to, it's ten fifty-eight. Let's take about a seven-minute break so we can try our best to get back on time.
What time?
Did I say ten fifty-eight or did I say seven fifty-eight?
I think you said.
You said take a fifty-eight minute break.
Well, it's close.
Didn't it?
That's ten fifty-nine. Isn't it?
No, it's noon.
No, 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 it's eleven.
Oh, there's the.
I, I, I have a hard time sometimes too, or that's the way it looks to me. It reads that to me. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yeah. Sitting where I am, see the hour again.
Yes, sir. I'm with you.
And, yeah, now see, look, this is wild. No, serious, Bruce, come, come. You sit here, you can see it, you sit where he is, when you're sitting here.
Yes, it's.
It disappears.
It's like it's still. The little hand is gone.
Yeah.
You sit there, it's gone.
I mean, it's weird.
It is.
Right here?
It's sat right there.
Sit down.
It's gone.
It disappears.
Well, that's, that's strange.
That's strange.
Brianna, you need to figure that one out.
There's a reflection off the TV over there.
When I'm sitting where I am, you don't see the hour. Sitting in either of these two chairs, you see the hour. I think that's, that's almost a community. Oh, sit, sit right in, right here.
Yeah, I can still see it, it's bright in the background.
Yeah, but it's just, it really fades out. It's okay, I heard that little dig about you have younger eyes, I heard that.
I don't know if I've got a slight, my, my right ear has been a little bit full of, of young trees lately.
Oh, really?
But I had the horrifying realization that I could hear my sins sliding past each other in this ear and not in this ear right now.
Oh.
And I'm hoping that's not just hearing damage, but I have spent a lot of time in buildings where they were running steel and welding.
Jesus. Hope that, yeah, hope that's not, hope it's. Okay. You know what you need to do, you know Charlie Beiderger, didn't he relate to your wife somehow?
Uh, she's a native, probably.
So he, uh, he's retired from his general practice, where he's a ears, nose and throat person, but I was having something in my ear, it just bothered me, and it took me three months to go to a ears, nose, nose inspector. So we were drinking one night, and he said, shit. So he went over to Walmart and bought a, what, twenty, thirty dollar thing that his doctor's left in your ear, but it blew through his ear, so he was able to see, magnifying it, and he left it in my ear, he told me to get it, and gave you a prescription, did that, he saw a right prescription, it's got some. And it was, it was a fungus in my ear, and this prescription took care of it in two days, and it's been going on for like months. So. I'm missing your ear, that is so good. Man, I was gonna say, if you, if you have that. You can probably, like, this vegan man, the whole little orange, white, black, that's like, period.
See that right now?
You're such an older.
See, see that, but like, come on, you can do it.
He's got sanders now.
It's mounted.
Oh, my God.
How many have you called this evening? Two? Yeah. Well, mango decided.
He's so easy to read, all the time.
Yeah.
I'm so dumb.
He and I are the only, this is our expert, and everybody else is like, first, this is never. And I thought it was a sushi shop, I paused it up around here, I honestly, I still, I still.
But I don't feel like my child, my little brother's eight years old.
Well, I have.
Like, I feel like I have.
As far as.
Yeah.
So they're.
You're just gonna be a little more aggressive.
They're gonna try it, they're gonna. Is it, there's like a little outfit? They're Catholic.
I think, I kind of mean, you can always. I can always, it's not even my experience, my experience, it's just like a player.
I didn't buy papers. I got notes on that. John, you, what'd you do first?
That's what I'm saying, cause I have like notes. Mine in yellow, and that, those are not a lot. I guess it wouldn't matter, but. That's there, I just.
Well, at least they're gonna eat you in your presentation. At least they're gonna eat you in your presentation.
Yeah, no, we're. Let me cut this.
Bruce, well, I'll ask. What's your preference? John, if he gets more service areas? We can do this one at a time. We can either have him go through all four, and then reserve questions about all four of the layers. Or we can.
And what I would suggest is I can set a timer.
Okay, grab your bite, let's get back to going.
I already wanna do it, but, but try to.
Going on time.
For your presentation, ten minutes.
I've been told this is a working, this is a working meeting, so. Yes.
Fifteen minutes.
Kind of a working lunch type thing.
Okay.
Get your bite? Get your bite, Key? Okay. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay.
But I have notes on these, that's what.
Notes on which ones?
All these, that's why I did. Notes. Yeah, I know. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, yeah. I'll, if you want me to control this, I can. You're a good friend.
Our, our Leroy community.
I brought my own.
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, that's good.
That's the equivalent to Georgia.
The special mix.
No, no, I didn't do the special mix, no.
I know Scott tells us that there's absolutely no steak log you have to drink, that's healthy. Think about that. We can, we can drink. We can have beer here?
Am I keep moving you guys down? I feel like I keep moving you. We ready?
Ready. Whenever they're ready.
Uh, Scott? Are you ready to get going again?
Yeah, I'm gonna, yes. So John Gomez is gonna present the four areas. I just talked to our mayor about how those can be presented. We're gonna try to keep it to fifteen minutes. John's gonna start to kinda keep his presentation on the slides at about five or so. So we need ten minutes for questions and then we're gonna move to the next service area. That way we'll try to stay. With that, John Gomez.
Thank you, Scott. I wonder what I got here. Um, Mayor, City Council, uh, we're gonna start with the electrical, yeah, the electrical, uh, section. And of course, the first one is our, uh, historical budget expenditures and throughout, throughout the year. Um, I don't know if I wanted, we, you mentioned that we were gonna talk about that at another meeting, so we'll, we'll go ahead and skip that one.
Oh, what is that?
Our budget.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, our scope of services we provide, we provide twenty-four service, twenty-four seven emergency services response to power outages. Providing reliable, safe electric power to Castro residents, businesses, and we also locate repair issues, uh, through outages when needed. Replacing aging structures, uh, the damaged infrastructures well. We build and repair electric transmissions, just distribution lines overhead and undergrounds. We install poles, transfers, transformers, ins- insulators, switches and equipment. You can see that on our, on this, on this chart here, our customers have stayed basically the same. Um, a lot of our service area, our C C N service area for electric is not expanded. Some, most of it is in the growth is gonna be in the C P S service area for, for electric on the C C N. Um, here you'll see the A M I meters that are installed. We are also missing some, some, um, A M I meters that have been ordered. But not have, not have come in just yet. Also providing senior discounts for electric usage. And critical care for those who depend on electricity on the medical side as well, things that we do. Next slide. Planning for progress. Uh, the delay in the delivery of the A M I, A M I meters, like I just mentioned. Is one of the, one of the gaps that we do have is setting us out, setting us back where we still have to manually go out and read those meters. Which is unfortunate because we had, we were hoping to have that done already at this time. So that we wouldn't have to have, still have a guy, our, our folks going out there meeting those readers instead of.
So all of the electric meters have to be read by hand?
Not all of them. We have, uh, a few that are still lacking.
Okay, just a few, okay.
Yeah, I got that somewhere here. Two hundred and six remaining.
Is that what you have left then?
About twenty percent?
Yeah, that's about less, less than twenty percent.
Okay. I didn't know how many customers, I should have looked.
If they're in our area.
I apologize.
And then the water, while I'm talking about it, we have eleven water that are, that are remaining and eighty-five gas remaining meters.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if y'all heard it real quick, but the. Uh, the area, most of the area that's expanding is not in our service territory.
Right.
Four seventy-one, that, that heights of Castro, that'll be in our area. They will get A M I meters. Any, any place that is within our C C N. Will get the A M I meters. One of the challenges we have, the reason they aren't there, is the delivery times, uh, y'all may recall this. Soon as you, after you signed the agreement with Amaresco, we had supply chain shortages across the nation. Well, some of those have been resolved, some of them haven't. And one of the areas, we were getting, uh, water meters fairly quickly, but the. Electric meters are taking literally two years to get. Now, the electric meters are each, I was about to say, each, each meter is custom, if you wanna think about this, they're, they're calibrated to our system. In other words, once they, we, we have about a hundred meters, we can't even, we can't use, they're wrong size, but no other system can use them either. Because they're calibrated for our system. They can be reworked, they can, there's an element of it that can be, they basically have to be taken apart, there's an element that has to be removed. And replaced with whether, whatever would, would correspond to that new electric system. Um, but that's one reason why it, it takes a while, cause they're, they're literally made for our system. Um, so anyway, sorry.
The point I think is extremely important here, mainly we look at SCADA. You're looking at a sole source provider, where they don't provide, you're in bad shape. Okay, so when we look at SCADA again, sole source provider.
Okay, well, and we can, we could have a hybrid system within our, our, but you're right. Uh, we have, we could have a hybrid system with our A M I, but then that kinda defeats, now you're gonna have some customers that are on one system, some that are another. And just so you know, staff has looked at that. We've, we've met with a group that. We could put, we could start a separate system, and I think we're, we're even to the point where we might do like some free account setup, uh, to see. What that look, how difficult that is, what a big challenge, you know, what challenges it presents for staff and for, for the customers, et cetera, but. We're, we're trying to look at other solutions.
And that's correct. They, they can put another adapter to this, the sensor, sensor, or census meters that we have. That'll translate that information, so it's not really sole source. Uh, folks have already approached me, that if they need help, we can, we can help you with.
Right.
Alright, okay, moving along on their tracking. Um, yo, another one is a big, is the, the lead, lead time. In receiving transformers and, and switch, switch gears. That has been an issue for us, especially when, when we were doing some of the. Um, Riverside, Riverside project, that was one of the issues where we had to preorder to be ahead of the game before we started that project. And that's still going on, going on today as far as the delay. Tracking progress, um, we'd go through I Works on that management system. And tracking energy losses, energy losses, which, which includes our rates or affects our rates. Staying regulatory compliant and for our customers and the billing issue, any, any billing and the usage data. Um, a good point to mention is that when we're, what, tracking our progress is our safety. One of the, the good things that we have is we've been real safe. We have had no, no real true, uh, safety issues. That we've had to report. Um, so that's good, and I'm, I'm proud of the guys in doing that part. Uh, actively promoting social media to engage with our customers about all the utilities, not just this one, and to conserve energy where possible. We also have about thirty homes with solar, in which is also a cost savings for, for our customers. Service level adjustments by reduc- by reducing ten percent, it'd be most likely, we, we think it'll be most likely result in a reduction of staff. Which would impact our customer service response time to emergencies and fewer resources available for routine preventative maintenance. Also the limitations, I'm sorry, also the limitations that are, what I mentioned, that our C C N is only so far, and everybody else. This is like, C P S can get that rather than us. Enhancing our service levels for greater impact, improve quality of service, uh, by, by new, new equipment and materials. Ability to update our aging infrastructure, enhance training program for new hires, plus continue education for current staff. Invest in new technologies to monitor and optimize the electrical grid. Enable faster out, faster outage restoration and improve reliability. Proactively inspect and maintain aging infrastructure to address potential vulnerabilities. Improve the communication with the customers, still high on our, on our list. Oh, and one other thing, sorry, Leroy, uh, one other thing I wanna mention is we are, we are seeking a poll attendance, a poll attachment. Survey, cause right now we don't think we're capturing all the attachments on our polls. We think there's others that are, might have been connected. Where we, we're either not told or, or we're not informed through us, and I think we're gonna pursue someone to do an audit for us. And then propose another increase or whatever that looks like. Are we on, on the, on the ballpark or not on the ballpark? As far as billing purposes.
You're saying has the survey you wanna do or you wanna do it?
We wanna do. Yeah, we, we've gotten proposals, they're fairly good, so I think we're gonna pursue that.
Just out of curiosity, I, I know I want a whole question, but on that note, your staff can't drive around and look at the polls and see who's attached to it?
They can, yeah, yeah, they can, but what, we don't know who's, who's, all of those who's belong to.
Okay.
There's a lot, a lot of folks have come in and without us knowing, so we don't know all of the lines.
Okay, let's start right off that.
I think that that is a service that L C R provides, right?
Yeah, that's where, one of the ones we got.
Yeah, so I, I know that East Medina, or Medina Electric, um, that, uh, and L C R, both, and C P S probably does. They, but those two, those, those two groups, they provide that service.
Mm-hmm, so does L C R, you said L C R A?
Yeah.
Schneider and, and some other groups.
Is it because you have multiple cable, excuse me, cable companies or phone providers in the city?
That's right.
Instead of the old days.
Just one, we had one, yeah, now we have more than just one.
They pay us or you?
Yes, they're supposed to. That's, that's the whole thing, is we wanna make sure that either they are.
We're looking at a source of revenue.
Right, correct. Uh, long-term planning, especially with well number three, we have to bring in a nutrition in, uh, who will help build, control switch. And, uh, which will bring the, the voltage conversion and make it compatible. Right now, it's not compatible. Um, we also, that's one of the areas that we need a, a lift station, not a lift station, a generator to, to help with that, that, uh, well three. We also wanna prepare and, and for a permanent generator that, that needs a switchgear, uh, automatic switchgear transfer. So for power, whenever we lose power for that area. Um, a positive note will be to bring it up to code. Right now, if electrician comes in, it's not up to code as we speak. A lot of our lift stations and, and wells are not up to code, where electricians, electricians come in and they're going, wow. We need, this needs to be upgraded. We'll work on it, we'll fix it, but we recommend you, you do some work on it. Uh, Country Village is another one where we did, we need to do like we did at River, River, uh, River Bluff. It needs to re- rehab. It's a, it's not as bad as, in shape as River Bluff was. But it also one that we had problems with in the past, and eventually would need to be put on our electric to have, have it looped.
You're talking updated pump panels and alternative sources of power at these locations?
Right, transformers, correct.
Okay.
Tom, where's well number three?
It is the one, um, by the, I guess the softball field.
Yes.
My area, yeah.
That's a, that's a real strong well.
It's your biggest swell here in the middle of town.
Any, no? Okay, how'd I do on time on that one?
You ready for questions?
What about the, uh, bucket truck for the electric guys?
Yeah, that'll be on our, that'll be on our, uh.
Okay, cause I know that's on life support. We had improved it in previous years, but it got, had to be put on hold, so.
Right, hang on, well, I, I probably jumped the gun. We're, we're gonna just cover them all and then put the questions to you. Scott, was that the plan?
Yeah, you're, no, 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 no. We're, we're gonna try and cover each section with questions in a, in twelve minutes. I said fifteen, but it's twelve per thing.
I'm sorry, Key, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That, that was it. The bucket question was my biggest thing. Oh, and how many people right now are working in the electrical department? Is it adequate?
Five.
We have five?
Right.
Okay.
Can, yeah, do you wanna, well, you wanna talk about who we have, so, cause we got Tom, who's preparing for retirement. He, uh, another gentleman that we hired that's. Ostensibly Tom's replacement, but honestly, we're, we're still evaluating whether, whether he's a good, he's the right fit as, as we would.
He's still in his.
Six month probation.
Okay.
Uh, that'd be Javi, right?
Oh, yes, uh, Anthony.
Anthony, sorry, Anthony. Then who are our other?
Then we have Kaven, we have Jeremiah, Jackson.
Yeah.
What, just curious, do you know what the upside could be there on the missing poles that were not getting drummed back?
Do I know? I'm sorry.
Or, or people attached to your poles?
Do we know how many?
You know, no, you know what the upside could be in dollars?
Oh, no, I do not, I do not.
A lot depends on what attachment you could see collect, and then based on how many there are, and it could be. Thousands of dollars.
Yeah, it easily, it, it more than likely would be at a minimum thousands of dollars and it could be tens of thousands.
Yes. Just like any other utility function in the city, you get it, you're entitled to a franchise fee. It's got that, it usually run away, what have you.
They don't, they don't actually pay us per pole attached to it, it's like a franchise.
No, it's a per pole. There's a per pole fee and, you know, rise broadband. So rise broadband is one of those examples where they've been, you know, you, we think of them as being underground, but they actually have to go aerial a lot of times to supply their customer. They've been attaching to poles left and right. They do let us know when they're doing it, but we need.
That's in addition to a franchise fee.
Yes, the pole attachment fee, correct, yeah.
It's an additional fee.
Correct.
And those funds are just paid annually?
Annually. Annually.
It's just a source of revenue. Um, Phil, did you have something else?
Oh, Leroy says quarterly.
Okay.
I, I do have some questions. So I was looking over the, the C I P. And it has between forty and eighty thousand dollars a year coming out of fund balance. For infrastructure assessment and repairs. And it has on average about sixty thousand a year coming out of fund balance for tree trimming. Um, and removal done by the electric department. If those are things we're doing every year. And they're really, I, tho- those are very main, operations and maintenance sort of things. Do, I, I think those should possibly be moved into the electrical budget, because as you're pointing out, if we. If we're relying on fund balance and the utility fund balance is getting low. Um, we run the risk of not having the money to do those things if we're just hoping it'll be left over.
Well, it's a contract that does the tree trimming.
Right, but, but I'll, but I'll answer the question real quick on, on that. It is almost an annual type thing because. Uh, you, it may be cross prohibited to do everybody, everywhere, so it's a staged approach. Uh, uh, years ago, and John, you can address this too, uh, when I first started, they used thirty-five foot poles. Then the city didn't wanna trim trees, so we went to forty foot poles. If the city didn't wanna trim trees, then we went to forty-five foot poles. And it reaches a point that your line loss attributed to the trees is ten to twenty percent of your total line loss. There's electricity every time, every time those tree limbs touch that line, it's burning up. It's costing the city. So it's a trade-off on how you wanna do that. But yeah, it's a, it's an annual maintenance thing in my opinion. So it's a trade-off on how you want to do that. But yeah, it's a, it's an annual maintenance thing in my opinion.
Well, I'm, I mean, it even says in the CIP description, in process, annual maintenance. And so I'm just bringing this up as.
That's an excellent point.
We've got something labeled as maintenance in our capital budget instead of our operations and maintenance.
Right, you're saying move it.
From the policy standpoint, that's an excellent like observation. We had scraped that out initially when we created the CIP. You didn't have one, and so we, I took all of the capital items, and this was more about transparency to see what capital expenditures, what were being capitalized technically and call, you know, capital expenditures and putting them all in one place. But uh especially now that we're, we're talking about a CIP that's largely unfunded and you're from a budgetary standpoint. At a minimum, maybe what we should be doing is showing those both places. They should be showing up in the budget as a capital expenditure. And then in the CIP, to the extent that we adopt a CIP and, and fund it uh in the CIP as well, is just a, an acknowledgement that the general or the annual budget covers these capital expenditures.
Well, and especially as we start having people living in areas that are not paying our electrical rates. They're going to be, if we don't move it into the electrical budget, they're going to be subsidizing the cost of the people who live over here, which I don't think is fair.
What else, yes, sir?
Uh and then my other question in this, again, in the CIP, there's country village improvements, which you did touch on. There's also West Castroville electrical improvements for like two point six million. Do you know, does anyone in the room know what that is off the top of their head? Because again, I'm, I'm interested to make sure that we're not borrowing from the future by deferring maintenance, like you've said we would have to do if we
Yes.
don't budget properly.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a stab at that. You're gonna tell us what it is, but I'm gonna take a stab.
Yeah.
Uh twenty years ago, we rebuilt a lot of the electric line, but a lot of it we didn't.
Right.
I'm gonna take a stab at that's.
And there's still, there's still some that we're working on from a study that we did twenty twelve.
Right.
That, that list that they provided us is not complete.
It's a, it's a continuation of upgrading lines. You still have some poles out here that are forty, fifty years old.
Right.
That are past a useful life.
That's correct. That's, that's part of that, right.
Which item did you read?
It is West Castroville Electric Improvements. It's five E in the CIP project.
And is there a separate one for Country Village?
Yes, so Country Village is one point nine million.
Closer to what?
And then the West Castroville is two point six.
Yeah, so just those pole and line replacements that really need to happen that haven't.
So I'd just like to underline that the, the electrical CIP has four point six million in unfunded repairs and replacements.
I understand, sir. Anything else, sir?
That's all.
Okay, Mr. Lee?
Uh I didn't come prepared to discuss the CIP, that's for sure, because I have a lot of questions on that too, but. And I think maybe you were here, John. We paid a contractor to come in here, survey our entire electrical system. Identify every pole that needed to be changed, gave us a maintenance continuation of maintenance plan every year, what to check, and a programmed replacement for stuff based upon the condition it was in. But what I'm hearing is we need to do another study to, to see what it is we need to do. And so I'm going, we've been there, we've done that.
Right, that's the one of, twenty twelve.
Say we're gonna go survey to see if we, we've done all that. And they gave us a training program.
Yeah, I understand those, yeah.
I didn't say survey, it's just listed that we have.
I'm looking at, I, I, my, my question's based upon this. I'm just saying, we have, like everything in this city, you made an assessment based, and, and they saw they worked on that for a couple of years. I know they were doing it, I know you're up doing, you're doing polls. Also, I'm.
Can I, can I pause you real quick and just answer the first concern you mentioned? Because the, the electrical system studies that are done are done, it's like getting, you do them fi- every five years. So electric distribution systems, water distribution systems, sewer distribution systems will typically do those studies on a, every five-year basis where they get reviewed. So it's not a one and done and do it. Now, there are certain aspects, like to the extent that you've identified CIP projects that were not funded and haven't been completed. Obviously, those are going to be added back to that study. Now, the, the cost of the study shouldn't be, you know, the same amount every single time, because you've already done some of that like work. But there is a need to revisit because things do age, things that weren't, that, conditions change, right? So there, I just wanted to.
I'm perfectly aware of that, and the question was asked at the time. What you've done for us, does that allow us to go do these assessments? They gave a big training package, everything else. Here's the way you tell what's done, here's how all these are, here's, you know, here's a whole program assessment so we don't have to come back every five years to look at the exact same things we already looked at. New stuff, I, I can understand that. Uh the next, I passed an article to all these folks up here about survey done in San Antonio to all the citizens. The number one things on that was public safety, infrastructure, code compliance. It wa- it wasn't other things, but the state of Texas requires us to always be able to provide critical utility infrastructure, even if we have a complete power outage. You mentioned generators. The state requires us to have that, but we don't. And so uh I, I'm always a proponent on having spares in hand for the things that break. Because we've gone months before waiting to get a motor rebuilt for something important because we didn't have a spare. And so we started stocking spares and, and you guys are, there's nothing more critical than you and water. Well, that's all of you, actually. You've got a lot of hats on, but that's the core of making the city work, and it's got to be well-funded and, and well-executed.
That's right.
You probably, and you know, maybe we ought to tag all those things on the polls, have the contractors, when they put that stuff on the polls. You put some kind of identification device up there so we know what's what. Uh you've heard enough of me.
Okay.
I'll leave your name in.
Thank, thank you, John. Let's go, let's go to gas.
Okay, so we're on gas, right? And um as many of you know, and if you don't know, we took over the gas department internally where we are sta- we are currently having a contractor do the, the outside work for us. They're TRC. And then we have another gentleman, Simon Fania, is helping with the regulation, regulatory compliance issues. Um we have a lot of, a lot of pipe to replace. It's still, it's still the old, old pipe that needs to be replaced. And that's through a, a program called the DEMP program that I'll get into a little bit here later. Here on the Sculpal Services, safe, safer, reliable natural gas to supply the homes, businesses and institutions. Conduct regular inspections and testing for gas leaks and pressure, pressure stability. Maintain repair pipelines, valves, regulators and the metering, metering systems. Providing twenty-four hour emergency services for gas leaks and disruptions. Ensure regulatory compliance is, is real critical. We're preparing right now for an audit that's coming up in the next week or so. And we have uh our, our outsourced folks here visiting with uh our, our employee that we hired. We hired somebody with a lot of experience from West Texas Gas, and uh he's helping them, he's helping him move along to get to know our system. Same thing on the, on the uh meters. We're still lacking some meters on, on the gas side uh to be replaced as well. We have approximately nine hundred, just under, just under a thousand meters or connections for gas. Planning for progress. Majority of our gas line work is performed by consultants, as I mentioned, contractors. Um we don't have the tools or the equipment just yet. That'll be something that we're gonna probably touch in, touch and base with here in a minute. Aging, replacing the aging steel pipes, which will increase the, the, well, the increase, it says we increase the risk in leaks of the service outages. But I think it's the other way around. Uh the desired feature state is to develop and maintain a trained in-house team capable of handling regulatory compliance, performing routine maintenance and maintaining most cost, most of the construction, managing most of the construction. Repair and replacement of gas lines. The way we track it is developing accountability by adding detailed information to work orders when we do have them. Compliance with federal and gas and state to ensure the staff is well, well-qualified in accordance with the regulatory requirements. Not anybody can just go and work on a gas line. Now they have to be operated qualified. Uh public awareness is a big thing that we're trying to, to make sure. We still get calls from folks. Um just the other day, the police department called us and were letting us know about a leak. And we hadn't really had good communication, letting them know, hey, we're doing, we're doing the, the gas now, so we gotta call our own guys. And then send these, these pamphlets out to customers as inserts to let them know these things. Next slide. Service level reduction. Uh slow, it'll be a slower delay and not for non-urgent work orders and response time to gas order calls or, or service disruption, disruptions. Reduce leaked survey frequency and increasing risk of undetected leaks. Fewer resources will for standby crews and third-party contractors. It will lower the inventory of, of our board to repair our emergency lines and safety gear, if we had something like that. Enhancing the levels of, for so, for greater impact. Installation of automatic shut, shut-off valves would be really good. Some of our valves, we, we don't know if they're working or not working. So our, our new guys going through the ci- city little by little and trying to check those valves for, for accuracy. And then locate those on the line, our maps, rather. Uh expanded proactive maintenance for leak, leak detection programs using advanced technology. The remote mobile methane leak detection will be a, a good thing for us to, to get if we did have advanced, greater impact. Accelerate the pipeline replacement targeting high-risk materials, as I mentioned earlier. Upgrade customer service tools and training for faster, faster response time and better communication. Enhance emergency preparedness with drills, backups, crew and stockpiles. It'd be good for us to run through a, a MOF drill of what to do and how to do it. We haven't done that internally. But what he's saying is to, to do something like that so that we can be ready for when something does happen. Uh like I mentioned, we need to make sure to notify the customers of how, if they smell leaks and what does it smell like, that sort of thing. Lot, a lot of folks don't realize that we still, we are maintaining it now and how to, how to recognize a gas leak. These are some of the tools that I got from, from him. He says that a tool, I don't even know what's, what it is, name of it, but it's a insertable cable tool used to locate unlocatable plastic pipe. Some of them don't always put the tracer wire, so we have trouble trying to find out where these pipes run. We had that issue with Medina Valley School. They're making, they're doing expansion out there. And we thought the pipe ran this way. Well, it did a ninety and went straight, the other, turned the other, turned the opposite, yeah. So we had, we were pothole and trying to pothole that. It went crazy. Odometer device used to measure readily detectable odorants level in natural gas system. And the remote methane leak detector, leak detector capable of identifying both small and large leaks remotely. Replace odor pot at the city gate, which we had that little, little incident.
Oh, that was a little.
Few, few months back. Uh and then like I mentioned earlier, the DEMP program is replacing eight percent of the steel pipe. That's something we're gonna have to do uh every year. We've, we've done it the last couple of years.
So I want to mention a couple of things, just again, trying to keep things at, at a fairly high level, but, but to make you aware of. On gas, one, just be aware, you know, we have a much larger CCN for gas, meaning we, we have the ability to supply gas to pretty much all the new development growth, much like our water and sewer system, but even beyond where our water and sewer is. That's a tremendous opportunity for future revenue. Uh that's probably the only good thing that came out of not selling the system. That was what would have valued our system, frankly. It should have been, that should have valued, should have been recognized should we have sold the system.
And I can really quit.
Yeah.
Unless something's changed, it's the only one of the four utilities that there is no CCN.
Yeah, basically, you know, you have some west.
Basically run a gas line to downtown San Antonio i- if you can get through the city San Antonio's requirements.
Yeah, what you want.
Literally.
Yes.
Legally, legally, there is no CCN boundary for gas. So you're absolutely correct.
Our boundaries more or less, though, are defined by where we, West Texas already has their services, but you're right. Yeah, that's an excellent point.
You can go right up next to them and compete against them if you wanted to. Not that we're going to.
Right, right.
But, but I just want to clarify that. It's the only one that there is no established.
Well, so that's the good news is that we have the ability to expand the system and we generally expand it at the developer's cost. They put it in and they donate it back to us, so there's really no reason to do it. We just finished capacity study. Capacity is there to expand the system. There are some improvements need to make. That's the good news. Bad news. Bad news is you don't, we've never really had a budget for, for a lot of the aspects related to gas. Our operations costs that we were paying CPS, we are finding out was really low, really low. What we were paying them, there's no way that they were making money out of the city of Castroville. There just isn't. They were losing money. Not only were they losing money, but, but like the capital improvement, so one of the things that, and this is a big reason and a big concern. And one of the things that led to our eventual kind of separation was they were not doing the annual maintenance, the DEMP plan. That hadn't been done in like however long, ten years. We were well behind what we should have been doing. Now, at the end of the day, it would have cost us, we would have had to spend that money. We, we didn't. We had to go beg forgiveness from the rates, uh from the railroad commission, but we now are on their radar and we now need to do that. Well, that, those DEMP plans so far have cost us a hundred and, no, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars? Because it's, it's about a hundred thousand dollar one year and about seventy-five thousand dollars the other year. We can anticipate spending at least that much in capital expenditure for the DEMP plan alone um for foreseeable future, for the next twenty years. That was not budgeted. Then on top of that, you talk about.
What DEMP is?
DEMP, I can't remember. It, it's basically the, the replacement, the, the required replacement. You have to replace a certain percentage of your pipe in the ground. Uh eight percent. Eight percent that falls within the nationally recognized um criteria of needs replacement, basically. So we have about twenty percent of our, our system's in pretty good shape. There's about twenty percent of it that needs to be replaced.
Sure.
Unfortunately, that twenty percent to replace eight percent of that twenty percent is about a hundred grand a year. And that tells you how much things have increased. I think it was Helen Delavan that pointed out that the entire system, when it was installed, cost like a hundred and fifty thousand. And that was fifty years, whatever.
Nineteen sixty-two.
Yeah, long, long time ago, seventy years ago.
Nineteen sixty-two.
So that's just inflation. Right now, it, just to replace eight percent of twenty percent, it's, it's about a hundred grand. So that's a one expense. The other is personnel and equipment, as John just laid out. This is going to become a budget as big as any of the other water utility budgets. Um and we just need to be prepared for that. Now, the, the other good news is your revenue is there, and as we add customers, there'll be more revenue, but uh in the, there's gonna be some pain in the short term, and all of this comes out of a combined utility fund budget. So, you know, to Councilman Merz's observation earlier, the utility fund budget is something that, that fund balance is something we're gonna have to keep a really close eye on. And unfortunately, that's gonna come in, into play with rates. So all of that to say, uh this, this, this gas issue is a new concern that we should all be very hyper-aware of.
I just want to say, on, on the natural gas, it's, it is argumentatively the most highly regulated utility we have. Uh we're dealing not only with the state, which rail commission is the arm of the US Department of Transportation Pipeline Safety Division, which manages or the controls or the rules of the gas system. You have to do an annual DOT report to the feds. You have to do the state reports. Those inspections are literally white glove inspections and they come after you if you don't pass them. My question to you is, Simon Pena, is he, you're, is he, you guys still using him as a consultant?
Yes.
Good guy.
We just started again, so we hadn't been using him for a long time.
He will help steer you in the right way and your policies and procedures. It's also the only area of the city that you're mandated by law to have a, a drug testing program. So, you know, there's a lot of different issues for anybody, you're right, anybody, anybody, even the person that takes the phone call involved in gas.
Right.
Has to, has to be part of that. Uh so I'm, I will offer you assistance as needed if you want
Okay.
on some of the history of this gas system.
Oh.
But that's, you, you ask, I'll help you as much as I can.
We'll, we'll be tapping your knowledge, don't worry.
Okay.
DIP, by the way, means Gas Distribution Integrity Management Program.
Thank you.
That's what I was.
Thank you.
So I would, I would love to have Javier, because Javier is his name, right? I would love Javier to come brief council during a council meeting of everything he has found. Everything he's read based off all the CP, CPS documentation of what was not done, like was supposed to be done. Because I would love for the city to turn around and go back to CPS, say, hey, you didn't do your job, you need to do your job. But that's another thing. But I would love for him to brief us on what he has found since he's stepped up. Because that odorizer thing, I mean, we had people coming to the hardware store freaking out.
What happened?
I, the odorizer broke, was broken and it over, odorized. And there was people freaking out left and right.
The, at the city gate, the odorizer?
Yeah, so what, what it was, it, it got down to a low level, though, you know, you have to add odor periodically. Um and CPS had been doing that, you know, for us, adding the odorizer, but this was the first time that we went and did it. And we discovered that, yeah, the odorizer really needed, it's, it's, it's out, it's old, it needs to be replaced. And when we pressurized it, it over-pressurized and, and sent a smell throughout the city.
It wasn't. It wasn't, yeah, because the odorant is burned up in the gas, but if you overodorize, it passes right through.
Oh, yeah.
Right. That's basically what happened.
Freaking out, everything. But that's obviously something that just didn't break. So that's why I want to hear Javier's intake.
I guess I didn't smell it.
So on education and training, I know previous documentation before we got the replacement, it says reaching into other departments as his, as Javier's backup. Are we looking at what departments as primary his backup if he needs help and are we sending them to get the required training to fill those?
We are. We are sending them. They're doing some training today, I think, or yesterday.
Well, in fact, we already, this was in a prior report and we'll continue to provide them in staff and in my reports. I want to say that there was fourteen folks that were trained several months ago. So there's, as Mayor Alexander rightly pointed out, this is one of the most regulated departments we have. Training is a very large aspect to that. We are working with our consultants to get all the folks to the proper training they need on, in the timeframe frame that they needed. So yes, the short answer is yes.
I was facility manager for an Air Force hospital. Trust me, I already know. I know, I know. So that's all I have right now, because then once we get into the dollar stuff at the next meeting, I'll have even more. Okay, thank you.
Bob is down here with his hand, and so is David.
Mr. Lee, first thing. We had to have a in-house supply of gas when they took the distribution line, West Texas Gas River. They had to do a required inspection of their entire system, which means we could not get gas from them. And so, I don't know, Bruce, you may have gone in, but we had to get tanker trucks with natural, liquid natural gas over in the Lacoste area and they would swap those. It took months. And my understanding at the time was that was a required inspection over X number of years, which means that being the case, we'll have to, at some point in the future, do that same kind of thing. It was not cheap.
Right.
So are you aware of anything like that?
Yes, we're, we're scheduled to do that right now.
It isn't going to require us to truck in gas.
Yes, sir, I'm sure it did. We did.
Well, that did. I don't know why that was required at that time, but our, we're going through the so we do, there's, I think it's every four years, they do kind of lighter dispens, or every year, there's a lighter dispens for every fourth year, you have to do a full inspection. We're at the full inspection stage right now. That's what we're going through.
Well, this is the first time we've ever done it, but they shut down the line.
That same thing's gonna happen.
We had to bring, we, I mean, we've got a contractor up there, tanker truck, and it was hooked into our system to feed Casterville, which was completely cut off.
We've got our three bids already from, we've got our three bids already from someone to come in and do that for us.
Part of the past emergency response plans was include tankers.
Yes.
And up at the city gate in the event of a major.
And all that's gonna happen.
And as you mentioned, gas, when we first went to CPS to do our system inspections, because we couldn't keep we were not doing our job to find the paperwork, sixty-four thousand dollars a year. Okay, and it went up incrementally. The reason we got that great deal is we got electricity from them also. And we kind of had them over the barrel on a few things. And so I can understand, surprise, surprise, it paid what it really cost.
Yeah.
Thanks, David.
I don't know if Mr. Dixon or Mr. Gomez remembers the number. How much of the gas in our system leaks before it makes it to a a customer meter? I remember this number has been shared at least once or twice in a council meeting.
It's not, yeah, it's not super high.
No, I don't remember the exact percentage, but it wasn't much.
Okay.
It's it's within acceptable parameters when we think about it that way. Same thing with our line loss for electric. It's a system, and for water, for instance, really, as as systems, our systems are are in good shape from a, from a lease, a leak standpoint. Obviously, you want to, especially with water, we want to reduce that if we can, but they're within acceptable limits.
Yeah, and that's, that's one of the questions they asked during the audit, is the purchased, purchased gas that metered coming in versus sold or and and the loss.
If you exceed a start threshold, then they start
Right.
digging deeper.
Right.
Where is it? Find it.
Yeah.
All right. But I also just wanted to comment on the, on the dent. There, there's, again, an item in the CIP that's listed as unfunded for line replacement. I don't know if that's in addition to dent or just on its own. But I think if we're going to have an annual recurring required cost until I, God willing, have grandkids, then that probably just belongs in the budget and it deserves to have a funding stream dedicated to it as opposed to being an unfunded, hope we find some money for this because we're required to do it.
Okay.
That's all.
And doing all that too, just, John, just to, you know, kind of look at your cathodic protection and your rectifier bids and all that, because that's what's made, that's what's kept the steel system viable for the last seventy years, for the last sixty years.
Yeah.
It's a very good system. You make sure that stays tight, it'll help you lengthen the lifespan of these steel pipes.
Everyone that came to do bids, they said your system is in good shape and then it's a lot because of your, your, some of those.
Your cathodic protection. Okay, I just wanted to bring that up. It helps extend the life.
I had one other thing to say that's positively un-Texan. You don't have to tell me I'm wrong. But when the, when the dent item first came, I pointed out that it would be cheaper to move the dozen or so properties it was reaching to electric appliances than to replace the pipes that reached them. And I think that as the, as we start to know more about how much it's actually going to cost to run this system in the short to medium term, it would be worth at least doing that calculation on the system as a whole. From a certain point of view, gas and electric are redundant systems. The same sorts of purposes, they provide energy. And if it's going to be prohibitively expensive or cause too high of a rate increase to have two redundant systems, I think the taxpayers are owed that we at least consider the possibility.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are you gonna give me a new heater then for my house?
Well, I'm saying, like, when the bid came, it was like seventy-five thousand dollars
I understand, but.
for like ten to twelve houses. It might have been cheaper to buy them all electric heaters than to replace the pipes. And that's all I'm saying.
Okay, you're right. We're, we're good. Let's move on to wastewater, please. Wastewater.
Yeah.
Okay. On the wastewater, there's the budget. We have three FTEs that operate the the plant and help do some of the sewer collections here in Old Casterville and wherever else needed. The services that we provide, protection to the environment, safeguard public health, collect, treat and safely return the water that is, that is treated to the creeks and streams. Remove harmful pathogens and pollutants to ensure the water is safe for the environment, release and for non-potable uses, the reuse systems that we, we do now. Some of the gaps, we currently have a level of service which is strong, we feel is strong. And additional resources are needed to consistently create optimal conditions. One of those would be to help reduce the sludge and and with a, with a Phil, Phil? Yeah, fermenter, fermenter. Ricky knows more about that than I do. So and that will help reduce the sludge, which it wasn't originally installed. So that's something that Daniel's been asking for and will will help in the phosphorus removal. Desired service level striving to have world-class level of service to proactively buffer against any unforeseen disruptions. Not many right now have to have the phosphorus as low as we have to have. But we're one of the few, few plants that has to have phosphorus at low. I was in a class one time and even the teacher was asking our Daniel, our, our folks that work there, how to, how the best way he was able to do that. And he was looking to him rather than, than he goes, man, you should, you should teach this class. You know more about it than I do.
So I don't want to interrupt you, but in your, in your water quality permit, your TCQ permit, it specifies a parameter for phosphorus?
Yes.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah. Years ago, they used to tell us, get ready for this is coming, get ready for this is coming.
Yes, sir, I remember those.
That's here.
Okay.
It's here.
Is it because you do a discharge?
Yes.
It's attributed to discharge? You still? Do you still have two different type of parameters, one for land application, one for discharge?
We do.
Right, okay, thank you.
Desire service level is elevated standards to help ensure that we remain within the regulatory requirements, like you mentioned. And the approach is not, is not only enhances the system for resilience, but also reinforces the commitment to the environment and to the public. Our operator was able to to stay level on a lot of his costs. He's helped reduce some of his electrical costs throughout the years. And he's, he's real, he's real, he's real efficient at that. So I really want to give him a kudos when he does that. We've tracked his electrical uses and how how much he's staying flat as as much as he can. That's something that I do want to say publicly for him. He's done a real good job.
He reduced, you had a percentage before.
Yeah, you know, they took that sheet.
Well, it's in the note, I left it in the notes, but it was a pretty significant percentage that he reduced the electric consumption. If you aren't, yeah, if you aren't aware of, of most cities who operate their own wastewater treatment plants, the, they pay their own utilities for all their city facilities, even for really large cities or utilities, they have lots of buildings, et cetera. The wastewater treatment plant very often is the single largest user of electricity of a city. And that's, that's true here for for Gashville as well. So when they reduce their consumption by ten percent or twenty percent, it makes a big difference. And he's been able to to achieve those levels of of reductions through his processes. So Daniel's doing a fantastic job.
Well, let me ask you a question on that, since that's, that you guys don't pump over the hill anymore, right? That's a huge electrical drop just by not running that pump.
Oh.
By changing the treatment, the, the point of, instead of pumping over the hills or the mains was, I don't know, thirty, forty thousand dollars or more with electricity a year. Going away with that is a tremendous savings, just in that one thing. Okay.
And we said, when we, I want to be clear, when we say we don't do it anymore, we have the option to do it. We don't have a current contract. That contract and that permit is still valid in to the sense, in the sense that if we were able to meet what TCQ has said.
It's still an authorized place for discharge.
Yes, but they have some things they have to do to meet those.
Sure.
And that contract could come back, but those are the considerations that need to be thought about as a council when it does.
Yeah, but by not doing that saves substantial energy cost. I just point that out. That's, that's a big savings.
If we reduce the level by ten percent, we delay the plant improvements, which is one of the ones that I just mentioned. And it may reduce the, to defer typical everyday maintenance activities to follow, the following year. A reduction in treatment efficiency is something that we don't want to do. As you know, that we are monitored. We have currently optimized our operations, this is from him, currently optimized our operations to control cost. This is a little, little to no flexibility left in our, in our system at the plant. We absorb further reductions without impacting the service and to help meet the quality of standards. Improve service levels in the form of infrastructure and facilitate fermentation, there you go, Ricky. Fermentation of the sludge and phosphorus removal and the means to improve irrigation methods for regional park. He's saying, if, there's another thing we can do is cross-departmental. Their, their group does a real good job at helping our water folks whenever we have a leak or or something needs to be done. They're, they're also real good at jumping in the hole whenever they can, even if they're working on water, they'll, they'll cross. When I say they're cross-trained, they help with their guys, both ways, water and wastewater will do the same for each of them. Well, the INI testing is a real big thing that we have here is every time we get a rain or any, even the smallest rain, we get some INI coming through the system. It's basically our, our infrastructure is, is, is old and some of it, even in our new stuff, we find that we're having some INI problems and that we need to eventually address at some point. Even if we start it with one section and just slowly move on, just, just testing that will help us in the treatment itself. We don't want that, that, that to be the treatment. We want the actual sewer to be the treatment. And the other thing is, is a new regional park lift station. The one we have now is not big enough and it's surcharging back into the, the pipes, the outfall line pipes. We have a surcharge where we have to go back and clean, clean those lines because it builds up a big sludge silt. So clean that up before it hits the plant. I think that's it for questions.
Yeah, a couple of things really quick. The, the lift station or the regional park, that was a design flaw when they built that lift station using. I know, because when we built it, the, and it does back up, I don't know, several hundred feet on that eighteen inch line. Because it's not deep enough.
I want to say five manholes.
Yeah, it's not deep enough. And we knew that when they built it, but it was a cross-cutting measure on behalf of the city.
Okay.
And so, anyway, I don't want to go back and relive that. The eighteen inch outfall line that comes from Young's Crossing across the river properties, Mr. Lee's included. We had that, put a camera through that in two thousand and two after the flooding. And it's relatively intact, or it was then. I don't know what it is now. Have you considered possibly just relining that old clay pipe versus replacing it?
Really, it's not that much. Yeah, there's not that much we have to do. From manhole to manholes, it wouldn't be the whole, the whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a belly, barely any, pretty good sized belly. And that's where, that's from that section to that section.
Okay.
We think about just replacing that part.
I was just curious, because it's not the whole thing, it's just the sections.
That's correct.
Got it. I just wanted to ask that. And then, of course, obviously, your lift stations. The other thing on the plant operations, are y'all just having during normal working hours, you're not having twenty-four seven, are you?
We monitor and we have to come in every, on the weekends too.
Right, to check it. But I mean, but you're not having somebody, because you're not at the flow rates where you're required to have an operator on clock.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure on that. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
When they up, when we basically redid the sewer treatment plant, the lift station was supposed to be redone at the very same time to make sure it was adequate to handle that. Okay, and so I'm surprised that I'm hearing that there's a problem with that. The other one, the reason we have five-five-two-one, which is probably the most stringent you can get for a wastewater plant, I think. Was it because of river discharge as much as legal challenges from people downstream that got outside agencies to act as their agent and were given standing that had nothing to do with this part of Texas whatsoever? So over several years of negotiation, we came up with five-five-two-one. And which is, was beyond what was necessary to put into the river.
Yes.
I am surprised that you say there's some issues with the, with the lift station, other than normal stuff. We did look at sleeving once before in order to, to help some of the issues with INI. And I know when we had the O two flood, we had probably two hundred percent more increase in throughput to the plant than was possible because it all came in the manholes. But you got generators to operate, I think, all the wastewater plant and the lift stations, pretty much. Do you guys run those on a schedule basis?
Yes.
Put the, put the system online through the generator or you just run the generator?
Transfer. We just run the generator, from my knowledge.
They do run both tests from time to time. So they're, they're, they're not frequent, they're weekly, but I think it's on like a two-month schedule where you run them all over.
It runs one load, okay. How much spare fuel do you have for those generators?
It's usually a day, a day and a half.
So if we had a big time problem, how would you get diesel fuel to run the plant?
If the, if the agreement is still in place, it was with Mr. Grove.
Who's long gone.
With Golden West now.
Right, yeah.
For the fuel supplier.
We might consider having some of our own hand as well, potentially use it.
We thought about that at one point, getting our own tank there at the shop.
The, the challenge, yeah, there are some concerns with having your own tank and.
Containment areas and things like that.
Yeah, but we do need to revisit the agreement, make sure that agreement's in place. I think when we went through, anyway, I, we need to check that.
I want to address one quick thing on your INI, especially during the rainy. You, you guys, and you guys know this, but not everybody fully maybe understands it. Especially in the older part of town, the streets were made to convey the drainage. There's no true barges, there's a lot of stuff, but the gath street, for example, it's, the water is designed to go down the middle of the road. Every intersection has a manhole. Every manhole has two one-inch holes to pick holes to open it up. So every time it rains, you got every manhole has two one-inch streams of water going down in there. Years ago, we went through and put railroad spikes with tar on every one of those holes. Plugged, kind of helped control it. But over the years, those were removed. Plugged it, kind of helped control it. But over the years, those were removed as people wanted access to manholes and everything was back. So you might want to, out of consideration, just look at something to try to manage those holes in some of these drainage streets. Okay. And I didn't know if y'all were using those. I just thought I might suggest that. And it might help some of your, your INI during the rain.
That's a cheap fix, yeah.
They have security devices on everything along and back on my property. So when it flooded, it wouldn't blow the manhole cover off like it did before. So there's supposed to be a fixture that kept the cover in place and whether it's there or not.
I had, David.
I have two questions. So one is just a curiosity. If there's significant infiltration, if, if there is infiltration, not just through the manholes, but infiltration through pipes during rain. Would we expect there to be exfiltration from the pipes into the ground when the ground is drier than the pipe?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Absolutely. They're all clay pipes.
Exciting.
They're all clay pipes and, and, uh, a lot of it's the original system was put in in sixty-eight, sixty-nine. So a lot of the, uh, the joints are, are juke, whatever the old rope and tar in there and they're just, they will deteriorate over time.
It depends on how it's being infiltrated.
The pipes are solid, but the joints are always not, not the best.
Okay.
One more point is, Ben, watch real quick.
The, the CIP mentions about fifteen million in unfunded repairs, required upgrades, preventative maintenance, replacements, et cetera, over the next seven years. Do you feel like you are getting enough money to maintain this system right now at your current funding levels?
Without increasing the rates, yes.
Well, I don't see what the, like, whether we, like, what the rates are doesn't affect whether you have enough money to maintain or whether, whether you can maintain the system, right? Like, the, the rates will be what they are. I want to make sure we're not, again, operating on borrowed time here.
The, the bulk of the, I'll answer if I can, my thoughts on that. The bulk of the collection system is fifty-five plus years old. Okay? Like everything else, you have a useful life.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, at like so many other small communities, we stretch that useful life beyond the useful life. So in, in, in a perfect world, we would, in my opinion, treat the wastewater collection system the same as we do the water distribution. We'd be trying to plan for replacement of certain percentages each year or so, kind of renew that lifespan. Uh, it's, it's a lot more expensive to do that, but it's, I'm, I'm not arguing with you. It's something to really look at.
As someone who hopes to be depending on this wastewater system for another fifty, sixty years. It's definitely going to have to get done in my lifetime unless I get hit on the way home.
Well, I think. No, I agree with you.
But like, I, I want to make sure we're doing it at an appropriate time and that people have an understanding of what the actual cost of the infrastructure they rely on is.
I think there's two, two aspects. There's the infrastr- infrastructure or the distribution, the, the collection system. I think distribution. We're not distributing it.
Collection.
We're collecting it. The collection system, um, which you were spot on, Bruce. I won't elaborate on that. But then there's the plant itself and the, I think the comment on the plant, when we talk about whether we have enough funds, et cetera, that I, I, my answer would be no. Uh, we have neglected and the, we, we started off pretty good with the CIP, but we haven't funded it because of the rate issue. We can, we're stalled. I think that's what John's trying to say is that we're okay kind of for now. We're, we're limping along. We are doing some things within our operational budgets to make repairs and, and upgrades as we can afford them. But there are, the, the pipers are going to come due here pretty quickly. There are some upgrades like the, um, fermentator, fermenter, and some other things that really would help the operation of the plant.
Sure.
That would be a significant investment that we have not funded and that staff's not recommending funding immediately, but that we want to put on your radar. Because in the next two to three years, two to five years, we really need to be looking at doing those things. We can afford to put them off for another twelve, twenty-four months, but we can't, we can't do it indefinitely.
Started now. What, once again, John, with, with, I mean, I'm just going to say broad stroke.
Okay.
I'd, I'd be more than happy to just, to Scott, discuss with you guys and pick each other's brains about what has been, what's got you to the point. Maybe some ideas on how to proceed. I'd be more than happy to help with that.
Okay, thanks.
I, I, I'm glad you brought that up. Uh, what's most important to the citizens, infrastructure. And so we know that we need to do something that is critically important to the success of the city. I think, I think council may agree that maybe we need to take the first bite of that this year. Whatever comes to the forefront is, is being something to get our best thing to do. Stuff's only going to get more expensive. The other one is betting banks. I know the city's asking for that. Uh, I think our treated wastewater is going to be a goldmine for us at some point in time. So we need to be very careful about committing that into any kind of long-term commitment that it's not available to us.
Do we have a two-ten amendment?
Yes.
We do.
Yes.
So that authorizes us to use that water in other locations.
Well, I think we got first right of refusal, refusal on that water.
Okay.
That's why, that's why I understood.
Right. So, so, so it's literally.
But it hasn't been approved.
That's what I mean. We don't have an approved two-ten.
But it's, we're waiting on TCQ to.
TCQ.
That's the beneficial.
It's so long to get some of these items that, I mean.
Right.
They've had it.
I've been here four and a half, four and a half years and some of the stuff we started not long after I got here and it's still sitting on somebody's desk.
Scott, twenty years ago, they proposed TCQ gave us a draft discharge permit.
Yeah.
And the purpose behind getting a discharge was not to discharge. It was so then we could turn around and apply for beneficial reuse.
Right.
And be able to use the water in other places. So this is something that's been.
For a long time.
In process for probably twenty years. And I, I, I'm with you. It's just we, we, the wheels of government sometimes move slow.
Hurry up and wait.
Yeah. So one of the needed, one of the needed investments at the plant is the oper- is the, what would enable us to sell.
Yes.
Water to people who come in, contractors, whatever. We don't really have that. We have the authorization. We don't have the ability.
Right, okay.
All right, we need to move to water.
Yep. Anybody, anybody have a question real quick?
We want to remember that our current discharge.
Yes.
Of water for the, of treated water for the plant.
Yes, sir.
A lot of that's going to go to irrigate the park.
I understand, sir.
Okay.
That, that's why.
Not going to be a massive amount of.
A lot of, yeah, well, a lot of the current usage, as we grow as a city.
That's why I was asking if we have two different type treatment parameters.
Yep.
One for irrigation and one for discharge. Okay.
Same.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you. Move on to water, please.
All right, on the water.
How long has it been up?
Chief, up.
If it wanted, just escape and, and restart it.
You go really quick.
Yeah. So while they're doing that, Mayor.
Sir.
I'm going to, Jonah Chang had to go to a doctor's appointment in Houston, Texas.
Oh, my God.
Today. So he's not, he, he's okay. It's a, it's a, for a good reason. It's a.
Okay, okay.
It's a good thing. It's a good thing. They're at a good appointment. Uh, we were going to have Leroy, uh, kind of present his items. But what I would ask is, we'll finish up with John and you may want to take another brief recess and then I think we'll have, uh, PD. We'll continue with PD and we'll come back to parks at the end and, or, or schedule it for another day.
I'm fine. I'm, I'm fine with that.
By the way, I need to be out here at three o'clock.
Right.
So.
I'm trying to hit that target.
No, no, I didn't say try to hit it. I said you need to be out.
We will adjourn at three o'clock.
Okay, got it. Understood.
Okay. Well, here's the, uh, historic budget for the water, water system. And then I get, I believe we're going to talk about that at another time.
John, I appreciate it. I can go straight to questions.
Yeah, we can.
Do we have enough water rights to meet our needs?
Yeah, right now we do, but they're getting to where we follow.
Do you have enough water rights to sustain a, a stage five restriction?
Yeah.
This is coming this week or next week?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
We've helped reduce, in the past couple of years, we've reduced some of our, our water uses. So that, with the help of AMI.
So you're confident that if every planted lot in the city was developed, we have enough water rights?
The ones that are in place now.
Pardon me?
The ones that are in place now.
We have, okay. I just, that, that's it.
So that was one of the things that Respec kind of did for us and gave us a level of comfort with. Now granted, it's going to depend on how long that stage five lasts and all of that.
Sure.
So far, we've been every year, we got really close two years ago. And by really close, I think we got within ten or twelve acre feet of hitting our pump.
Well, last year, because EAA is prorated, last year was about thirty-six, almost thirty-seven percent. Year before was almost thirty-five percent for the year. You can probably bet on a forty percent this year. And we can meet a forty percent reduction for the entire year. Right?
Um, I have to.
Yeah, we'll have to do that math. Is that, so these are new standards being?
No, 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 no. Edward talked for authority. When they give you the stages.
Yeah.
Then at the end of the year, they total out what the total is for the year. Last year it was about a thirty-six, little over, almost thirty-seven percent. The year before was just under thirty-six percent. Those are total for the year. So if you have a thousand acre feet of water, you lost three hundred, the ability to use three hundred and sixty acre feet.
So let me.
That's my question.
Yeah, let me point you to where that report is and then let's look at it together.
Okay.
I don't know. Off the top of my head, I just know that they ran a couple of different scenarios, kind of worst case.
Yes, sir.
Stage five, trying to be somewhat realistic, but also worst case. And they, and we were good.
Okay, that's all I want to make sure of.
Um, but.
I'm going to throw this one out.
We need to continue. Yeah, we still need, we need to require the, the water rights. We need to continue the policy that the city has, and I think that's become pretty clear.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to ask that in a real short version that you, that you have. If not, uh, I will say this. Uh, the city. There's a lot of water systems that are out there actively pursuing leases to make this year. So I would encourage you guys to look at your crystal ball and be confident in those numbers. And if you're not fully confident, now is the time to lease the water for twenty twenty-five. Because it's, uh, it's out there. I'm, I've actually.
Twenty twenty-five, but do you mean next year, twenty twenty-six?
This year. This year. Because you have to, you have to have on December thirty-first, make sure you have enough.
Yeah, I think we're good for this year.
I just want to make sure.
Next year could be an issue.
Okay. I, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
We've already leased, you probably know this, we've already leased the water from the airport.
Okay.
But that report includes that lease. We, we.
I just want to make sure total wise. And that's all I wanted to bring up.
Yeah.
Is there any money left in the water acquisition plan?
Yes, you have about a million change.
That'll be buy some more water.
John, I'm sorry for interrupting you.
Oh, it's okay.
No, we spent some of it on the airport, so I have to see how much we spent.
Okay.
Well, on this slide, you, you, you know what we do on the, on the services that we provide. Uh, we'll see the, the numbers that have creased on the water customers. A lot of it's due to the growth in outstation. And you see the difference in connections versus, uh, AMI. Some of our customers do have more than one connection on one, on one line. They have, might have a house and then another mother's quarters or what have you. Um, and our, our work orders have reduced. I've asked our folks to be more prevent, preventive maintenance rather than reactive. So they've, they've done a good job on reducing some of those, uh, work orders. Planning for progress, the infrastructure gaps, it was the aging infrastructure that we mentioned earlier and possesses challenges. This increases the duration of and frequency of, of repairs during those outages. And standards of use of track performance to include the compliance reports that we provide to all the reporting agencies that we have to, we have to. Uh, water main breaks, response time and customer complaints and satisfaction levels. It's, it's, it's hard to remain proactive without replacement of old infrastructure. We, um, we have water lines that need replacement, like you mentioned, and there's some of these are right in this, this, this critical, we say critical, critical area. But right in here, along with sewer that we, we should replace. Some of them have already been in design, but they were, they were taken off the capital to do. Because we, we wanted to slow down, stop that. Next slide. Our long-term planning is the water line replacements that we mentioned. Here's Florence, Naples, from Naples to Paris, uh, to Florence. Naples, Paris to Florence, uh, mid Madrid and Amelia Highway ninety Berlin, from San Jacinto to Mexico, which are these right here. Uh, water well sites need skater, like we mentioned. Um, installation, installation of, of, of valves in the old Castroville, the old Castroville. Was that the last slide?
Can you go back to that?
I said that one.
Yeah, you did that one. That was it.
Uh, any questions on the water?
While you're waiting on the line replacement, I know there's the USDA, uh, project to replace the water lines over in my district. Is that included in your stuff that's going to be done?
It's in what streets?
It's off of Geneva. Uh, oh shit.
Is that the CDBD grant?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that's, that's included. And we're going to have a kick, we're going to have a kickoff meeting, I think, tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep.
And have you already started talking to the people for that section?
Yeah, we're initially doing the kickoff meeting. I need to hear their schedule.
Right.
And then we'll plan the, the.
Okay. And where would that cover for the water replacement lines?
I don't remember the street names, but I, I can get that to you.
John, I want to offer you the same offer on the water because I, it's some of those areas.
Okay.
Sections that have been previously.
There's a lot of, yeah.
It's sporadic.
We could use some help on.
So I really, I really like.
Water line here, there might be another water line here going that way.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay.
And now, that was a street unless everybody else.
I don't, I don't have them all, but.
Anybody else questions on the street? On the, I'm, I'm sorry, the water? Nope.
Okay. Did you want to ask a question? Yes, sir.
Yeah, if you're finishing on water, uh, what about the generator on its park, y'all, is that?
That one, that one needs some electrical work to make that connection.
Still.
Still.
Fifteen years, we still need to.
Well.
Let me ask you a question is that, since you asked about the generator, is it y'all's intention to make that fixed? Because when that generator was bought after two thousand and two, it was on the trailer intentionally to float from well to well as needed. So is it now your intent to make that a fixed generator?
The, yeah, well, it's either, if we get denied the grant that we applied for.
Okay.
Then yes, I, I would say that would go there.
Do you have generator grants supplied from?
Yeah.
Have they been approved?
No, we're waiting.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we're going to two years already.
Yeah, unlike the police department, I've been in DC, even the USDA offices pleading for those grants and they said, no.
Okay.
So, but I wish you the best of luck. And let me know if you get them.
It's been a nightmare.
Uh, you know, I make this point for about the fifteenth time. The state requires us to be able to provide water and wastewater services. This is not a, I'll wait for a grant. They require it.
I understand.
And, and it needs to be funded. It may not be the ideal answer. And that, and yeah, I'm getting upset because when, when I was here.
Yes, sir.
Had Jimmy ever said that, they never ran it. They never did a damn thing with it. And you know what? We're going to get that transfer switch installed and we're going to go for it. Still hasn't happened. My guess is it doesn't run on a regular basis. Maybe it does.
We, we exercise it.
Is it still on the trailer?
But.
Yes.
My God, why don't we get the thing wired up? Because you know what? If we lose electricity, how many, how many wells do we have in town with a generator? One? Out by the tractor place? Is that, they got a generator on it when they upgraded it?
That's on the, yes, it is.
Okay, that's the only one. That's the only water for the entire city of Castroville. That's it. Folks, this is not good. You know, this is not good.
Was there any reason?
That needs to be a priority for us to have.
I don't know the reason when you, when you were here that it didn't get installed.
They didn't want to do it.
Okay, we'll do it.
They didn't want to spend the money, but it, but now.
May be in council?
Huh?
May be in council or the.
Correct, correct. But now it's a state requirement.
Mm-hmm.
You can't ignore state requirements and the citizens expect the infrastructure to work. If you don't have electricity, but you got water.
Right.
And you got wastewater because we have the ability to treat wastewater with generators. It's already, they're already there.
But now.
We've got to have water supply.
The generator at Lyons Park. According to John, it's working.
That over twenty years, yeah.
But it's working.
But it's not.
And it will supply that well.
But it's not hooked up.
It's not automatic.
Yeah, the, the.
I feel like you had to wire.
We have to, we have to wire it. Yeah, we have to do.
Use manual wire.
Right.
If it, if you need it.
Correct.
So in other words, is it a?
Nobody knows that.
So it's sitting there, but it's not, it's not wired up to the pump.
No, it's not.
And it's not just a simple process to wire it up.
No, we have to do some work to that. All of our electricals, they need, they're needing a lot of work.
When that was acquired by the city, it was, and I don't know, a, a lot of things changed. But we went around each well, we made the rotations. We, we had, long ago, we just pull in, we plug the cables up, we run into it. So it was designed to be mobile between well sites. But if you're now saying you want to make it fixed, yeah, I'm with Mr. King, Councilman King and Councilman Lee. We, we really need to. We, we really need to make that happen because when the power's out and you don't got any water, it's too late.
Especially after Snowmageddon.
Yes.
But John, I guess it's still, so it would take you an hour to wire it up? Or it would take a week to hire an electrician to wire it up?
Right.
Right, which one?
We can do, I, I don't know how much needs to be done. I don't know.
So right now you have a generator sitting next to a well and it's not hooked up at all.
No.
Somebody has to figure out how to wire it up.
Right.
And there's been no thought about how to do that, even though the state requirement is we really need to get that up and running.
Yes.
I guess that's something you need to.
We got, we got authorization, authorization.
Yes, different rotations, different.
Yeah, so you can just wire it up and then have it ready, you have to wire it up for each individual well.
That's correct.
So if, if one's running out, you, you have some time just because the tank is, you know, full of water. We can get it out when we know there's a power outage. Maybe we have to be rewired at each individual well separately, a different way. It takes about an hour or so to do it. Yeah, depending on the electrician.
But it, but, but, and I appreciate that, but I, I guess since Councilman Martinez brought up Snowmageddon back in the year, uh, story, the year. Unfortunately, the city of Castro made a command decision. That they sacrificed the water systems to keep the power on at Walmart. Because the side of town that was cut off of power was had all the wells. Okay, so that's, this, uh, uh, so.
We don't, we don't supply like.
Dude, that side of town, excuse me, the city has two circuits. One circuit feeds outside of town, one circuit feeds this side. The city. That side of town stayed on.
But I just want to be clear, we didn't, no one asked us which side to leave on and which side to off.
Talked to people and told them how to make it work and they said they didn't want to do it. So, but I, but I know, cause I was here and I was asked that.
Okay.
Okay, but the point is, is. Individual ones, yes, but during a massive outage, you need to be able to have at least your biggest well. And I think that's what y'all are trying to do.
Yeah.
I, 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 I just, I support what the councilmen are saying. We, we really need to get that connected.
Okay.
We reached out to a couple, uh, general agencies.
Yes, sir.
That they were willing, willing to agree with us to, to have emergency standby generators.
Okay.
Uh, we haven't finalized all of that, we can discuss it with them. Uh, the wastewater side of things, we did purchase a six by six pump and install bypasses. So the wells, of course, they have an exception of regional, we have some hold time, which we can deliver that on a trailer and hump them down as needed.
Sure.
With the bypass that's installed, it's just a quick connect for the wastewater, orange holes, orange holes, on the pump. Uh, we're in a gray area, but we, we are working on some things now. It would be maybe more beneficial if we could get stationary, uh, generators or even bypass pumps, however you guys.
I'd like to finish my question.
Right, okay, well, I just want to clarify, yeah, you're right, city doesn't provide Walmart. But that circuit stayed on while this circuit stayed on.
That's true.
That is a true statement.
Yeah.
The city has the ability to.
I just don't know, well, keep in mind, so in an, in an emergency, the, my understanding is in an emergency, they, when the state is calling for power reduction.
Sure.
The city loses the ability to control who gets power and who doesn't, because we have, I, I can't remember what the term is, but as electric utility. We delegated that authority to CPS.
Got it.
I forget what that's called, but there's a term for it, but they are basically our, our NOC, our, our operations during an emergency that re, reforms the state. So when the state says, hey, CPS, you need to reduce your load by this amount, these, this many megawatts. Then they get to choose where to do it and how to do it, and that's what they did. They didn't ask us. And I know that there was a, there's a, like a connection, there's a way to kind of jimmy the system.
It's looped.
That Tom's aware of and, but we. Anyway, I, I don't.
I, I don't want to go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I said on the after actions, they did not know our Friar Department and we had assistant, assistant living.
Yeah, CPS was, yes, Seth went to that, that you're absolutely right, there are some elements that CPS wasn't aware of, like. Where are our emergency, where are the nursing homes, where, so all, all that list was shortly after that event, we delivered all that.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Let's, let's go.
Okay. I am adamant to the point of being thrown out by the police department. That we are responsible to the citizens to absolutely provide water service if we don't have electricity in this town. And we keep kicking this damn ball down the road. It's not French, but excuse me. And, uh, we need to stop that, okay? If we get a grant someday in the future, that's fine. Budgeting based on grants is idiocy, okay? You may or may not get it, you don't know. But we know that we have the funds to put generators in order to provide the necessary water to our citizens right now. And I would challenge you to take that generator.
Okay.
I love it, I get struggling.
Let's.
Take, take that generator and hook it up and run that well on it, if it's the right capacity. Go ahead and do that and come report back to us at a council meeting and Jim, that you did that.
I, I, I took this down the wrong way and I apologize, but we need to get back on our budget discussions.
It is, it's the water upgrades and how much money they want to spend, that's exactly what this is.
Okay.
Well, if you want to do it like this year, then that's a future agenda item to debate whether we want to spend it out of fund balance.
About what we want to spend money on.
But this budget doesn't start until October, September. So if you want to do it before then, let's bring another agenda item to discuss doing it sooner.
Thank you. Bill, did you have?
On, on this one issue, Bob, it would appear that the water department does have a plan.
Yes.
Those generators online to bring those wells up. It's not a simple switch, but it's something that can be done within an hour, so they have a plan to do that. So I'm not real fearful that it's gonna fall apart tomorrow, but it is something they need to upgrade as we go.
Well, we're looking at good, better, best.
I want to see it happen.
I agree.
That's what we're, what you see, the, the grant application was good, better, best. Best would be generated every location. Uh, better would be a generator and setup that would allow you to quick connect generators. And good is what we have today, which is the ability to, within an hour or, or timeframe and the right people, you can get yourself back up online.
Okay.
So, well, okay, so we got to prove that to Bob.
But we've been saying this for twenty years, we've never done it.
Thank, thank you, Bob. Is anybody else?
I'll, I'll, I'll make it like two sentences.
Yes, sir.
CIP has three point five million in unfunded water line replacements over the next six years.
Yes, sir.
Um, I think it would make, again, I think it would make sense to bring that into the budget or perhaps some scaled version of like. It's just gonna be in the budget that we replace five percent of our pipes every year.
Okay.
That's all.
John, we've kind, we've kind of really laid into this one a lot, but i- if you want to move on to the streets, we'll move on to the.
Okay. Good to do that.
Thank you for your patience.
You ready, Jim?
He's going to put his dog.
It's coming.
You want to reflect it?
Yeah.
Okay. The scope, the scope of services that we provide with, with streets is repairing potholes, cracks and damaged pavement. Uh, where we, where we find them, work, work site cleanups and for other departments as well. Minor overlays and sealing of streets, set up barriers for cities, for city special events. And we mow, we also mow and weedy, um, right of ways where needed. Um, also the work orders have gone down for, throughout the couple of years where we're trying to be more preventive. Streets department is outfitted to repair streets within right away. And, um, removing the debris whenever we have storms. Uh, planning for progress. Currently, there's, the current gaps is outdated equipment reliable and updated equipment is needed to complete rebuilds and or large maintenance projects. Uh, we shared staff, this is one area that where they share staff with our gas folks. Where if they're needed out in the gas department, this group here, as, as, as we've asked around all departments, the two of them. Decided they would, would like to help out with the gra, the gas, maybe possibly become operator qualified as well.
So your street guys who are going to work with the gas team?
Yeah.
I think, I think that's correct.
Yeah, I, I think they, I think so too. They're doing a good job too.
Yes, sir.
Um, our vision is to provide a full-service streets department to include street sweeping, full repairs. And, and rebuilds and improving the city streets and drainage infrastructure. Ensuring safe, clean and reliable transportation routes for all residents and visitors. Some of the tracking, uh, progress, we go through work orders and hopefully in response time is, is quick. Road closures, marking off road closures while we need them or have them. Schedule routine inspections of roads and infrastructure to, to put on for, for replacement. Dual responsibility is, as I mentioned, is we have one full staff person in streets. And then two of the floaters that help him in the streets department that go to gas. And that's the same thing with our gas folks, our gas person, he has that one gas and then he, whenever he can, he'll ask either, uh, streets or somebody else within water. See if they can go help him do whatever is, if it's pothole and if it's locating or whatever that might be. We have outdated equipment which slows down operations. Our, our full service department is to include street sweeping one day. A full repairs and rebuilds and focus on maintaining new built streets. One of the areas that I'd like to mention is that Alstition Oaks, that's fairly new subdivision, but we have a lot of cracks already that have been established. And, uh, that's something that they're maintaining already, they put the, those spider cracks or whatever you call them, a tar down, but even those, even those are getting bigger and bigger.
Well, are, are those streets still under warranty or?
No, we try, we try.
All our responsibility.
Yes, now our, all ours.
Okay.
Uh, service level, so adjustment by ten percent would most likely come from a decrease in staff. Which would lead us to a backlog and work orders and projects. And the citizen issues response time will be affected. Delay in resurfing cycle and extended response time for those repairs. We do not cur, currently have the ability to resurface. We only do minor overlays and can, that can be accomplished. We have an aging, aging streets and require full rebuilds. And if the direction is to have a full rebuild, and if ten percent of the resources are taken away. We will not be able to maintain the current streets that we have without maintenance or, or disruptions. Um, right now we're able to do cracking and potholes. And it'd be preferable to do that every five years with a proper maintenance program. And we can, to make it last twenty years or longer. Service, uh, level enhancements. Prioritize repairs based on the traffic volume and, and, uh, and safety risk and citizens' reports. Increasing road maintenance, increasing signals, uh, scheduled inspections and drain, and drainage systems, improve public communication. Right now we try to let them know where we're gonna be with the road closures or, or through website, our websites or Facebook. Um, next door or wherever possible to make them, our residents know that we're gonna be working somewhere. And, and, and the way there's no inconvenience to the customers. Our long-term planning, the street replacements, uh, river bluffs in bad shape. One of those is, is, is something that's high on our books. Uh, but without actually going in and doing the infrastructure out underneath, which is some of the water in the, and we just did the gas, some of the water and sewer. That might be something that is put, put, put back till we get those, those, uh, utilities repaired. Street overlays on Athens Street from Washington to Gentiles. And the northern route of Naples Street are some of the ones that he gave me for areas to focus on. There's a lot more streets to, to be done, but we're asked for the top three.
All right, we're, we're on streets real quick, and I know we're trying to wrap up, but I want to hit a couple of things. One, uh, something I've said since I've got here, uh, and this mean, I mean no disrespect to my staff, because I think we have an excellent staff. We don't have a streets department. We, we have a streets department in name only, in a very real sense. And, and I'm speaking from my personal experience. Working for cities that had street departments. Where either they rented equipment or they had equipment on hand, uh, more often not, they, they had invested in the equipment. Buying old textile equipment or whatever you, they could on auctions and other things. And, uh, they were doing streets all the time. That's a streets, in my mind, that's a streets department. And I think one of, one of my fears is, that's kind of what a streets department is in the minds of many of our, our constituents as well, our residents. Because they see what the county does. County, now, now county has the benefit of, that's all they do. You know, they don't do, they don't have utilities, they, they are streets maintenance, that's all they do basically. But a lot of people think erroneously that, they look at the county, they know what the county does, and they think, well, the city has something similar, and we just don't. Our guys spend most of their time either mowing grass or doing other unrelated streets activities. They do what they can with streets from time to time, but that's an area, this is a service area where, where you, I, I've really struggled. To, to try and identify what is it exactly that the city council and, and the city expects of the city organization when it comes to streets? And how are we gonna fund that? And what are we gonna do to, to, to really provide a higher level of service? And one of the things that we're working on right now is a partnership with the county. That is, uh, been a very, very long conversation that has borne no fruit yet, but they have expressed a willingness. They have to go through a legal process of an interlocal agreement to help us maintain our streets. But they've expressed a willingness to do that on some level. And that will help. If they can come in and use their expertise and their equipment and we just pay them for materials. Then they can do a certain percentage of streets a year, and that, that could be as, as high as ten percent. Basically, two miles of streets is a realistic number that we might be able to get them to help us, uh, maintain. And that would put us on a, on a good path forward. For our chip seal, kind of older part of Castroville, uh, area, it would be a lower cost. But things like River Bluff that was mentioned briefly, when we looked, the last time we looked at, uh, an estimate to fix the River Bluff streets, I've mentioned, uh, to Bob and David earlier, it's about seven billion dollars. To replace those roads, and they need to be rebuilt. Unfortunately, when they were put in, they, the, the standard to which they were built. Is sub, it, it just is subpar, it's not what we would have required today. And that's one reason why you see the failure. The other is because everybody knows colloquially that, that there is, or anecdotally, that there are issues, drainage issues from the canal and other issues that cause foundation problems for those houses. And that's the same thing that's happened to those streets. So that's just my two cents on streets from a, from a this level. Like, we need to think about, well, what is, what is your desired service level for streets? What, what, what do you want to try to see happen, and then how are we gonna fund that? Um, and you're just looking down the road, I, I like to compare ourselves to Honda every now and then. Understanding that they choose to, to, they put a lot of resource, a lot of money from their utility system, I think to their apparel. To the general fund, so they have twelve people in parks, for instance. They have, um, a, a very, what I would call robust streets department with a lot of equipment, some of which sits idle big parts of the year, because, you know, they invested in it, but they aren't putting it to work. Um. We, you know, we have nothing like that, right? Uh, so anyway, just food for thought.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'll be a lot calmer now, but not much. Number one issue of the years I lived here from citizens, streets. That by far and away was their number one complaint, streets. And, uh. We need to address streets, I think the people are expecting a change in direction, or we wouldn't have had the election that we had. And so I think that, I think, my interpretation is they would like us to focus on the basics to make sure that we provide for those people. Before we consider other things that are nice to do, that we'd like to do. But streets is right up there at the top. Maybe we can make an agreement with Honda to get some of their people and pay for some of their services they have, which is a street department, but to continue to kick, kick streets down the road literarily and figuratively. It's, it's a losing game, they just get worse and worse and worse. And yes, we've used the county in the past and, uh, uh, and the stuff that they did was excellent, and it's held up for well over ten years. And so, uh, we've had, we instituted another street department here, uh, that lasted about three years, I guess, did one street of going down Lower Lacoste Road. We did that and, and it disappeared again. Finding the qualified operators is particularly the problem in order to operate the gear. But I think we might need to make a priority to attacking our worst streets of the city. We, citizens are paying taxes to us for a reason. We get very little tax from that, Alstition Oaks, by the way.
David, did you have something?
Yeah, more of it. Surprise, same document. And I think this is the last time I'm gonna point into it, but, um. There's about a hundred thousand a year coming out of general reserve, general fund reserves for streets overlay and maintenance. If that's, if, if that maintenance is something we think we need to be doing every year, we should be putting it in the budget and planning to do it, not hoping we have leftover money at the end of the budget.
Yes, sir.
Um, and then. Um, and then, yeah, you already said how many millions of dollars it's going to take to actually start replacing some of our streets that haven't been substantially reworked since I was in preschool.
Thanks.
So.
This street right here, the last time it was paved, it's 1985.
Okay, this is before my parents met.
This.
Moving on.
The last time it was repaired.
We, like, for a long time, we've been kicking needed maintenance, needed repairs
Not arguing with you.
Down the road, borrowing from the future, people are noticing. It works for the first five years and it doesn't work in the 30th year.
I agree.
You have to do this.
Okay. Phil, did you have something?
Uh, yeah, just remember, we have been rebuilding streets. Um, Bob, you mentioned the river road, but we've also did, you know, Berlin almost its whole length Lafayette Street. And several over.
Lafayette.
And, yeah, and Berlin and several others in Old Casper Village, well, it's streets in River Bluff, excuse me, in the Country Village.
So we did a little over 10, we did about 15% of our 26 miles. We, we've overlaid over the last three years.
Yeah. And then that plus, so yes, there is a plan that was in place to do this. And um, but I really am optimistic about making a deal with Larry related to the county stuff because.
I think that'll help some of the streets. It just won't, it won't help River Bluff. It won't help some of the other.
Yeah, I know it's going to be a different animal, but, but because Larry, I know, bragged, he, in his district, he has rebuilt every street road in his um
District.
District. And that means he does have, he knows how to do it, plus he has now some excess time.
That, well, the other difference is now that he has to share, they, they, he did tell me the other day that, that the equipment that used to be kind of solely his, he now has to share with the other districts. And so he doesn't have as much capability as he used to. Yeah, kind of.
Okay.
Can I respond very briefly to what he said?
So which gap?
Uh, I, I do know that we've been doing some replacements, but they were funded with a one-time borrowing um, as opposed to being part of the budget. I, I would support making, replacing 5% of the streets annually part of the budget as opposed to hoping someone will muster the political will in the future to issue debt again.
Well, when you think about that, does that mean that, I mean, how are we paying for that?
Well, that's something we've talked about. Go ahead.
My, my comment, I agree with everybody in the sense that I think we give ourselves a day to prioritize streets
Okay.
in order to, you know, like, we have to look at the whole picture and see where we can take money from, but I agree, streets are important. If not, number one.
Well, and you have to tie in drainage, because if you do the street, it's going to affect the drainage. So we, we've got it, we've got to do it. I know my neighborhood, I've been telling my constituents, hey, just hold on, we got to do the stuff underground. It makes no sense to waste millions of dollars putting in a new street when we're going to have to tear it up to replace the underground. So they're, they're, they're abiding, but we, we really do have to.
That's what I was.
Maintenance.
That's what I was gonna say that.
Yeah, no, I, I've been telling my people that we got to be with the underground stuff because otherwise we're not going to waste money to replace the street.
And, and I appreciate that. Did you have something else?
Just, I just for my own.
Okay.
For context, in River Bluff, the geology is, is poor, right? And so the road base and the depth of what they actually built originally was half of what it should have been. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Where you go down to two feet of road base, et cetera, that kind of stuff.
Okay. I just happen to be the guy that likes to bring history back, so let's just bring some history back here. Prior to 2000, prior to 2000, the employees we had in the street department were former county employees. We had a maintenance, we had a street roller, we had a water truck, we built our own streets. I can point to the streets that we took down to subgrade, built back with base and, and did. Uh, many of them are still just as good today as they were then. Some of them have been oversealed and what have you. But in 2000, the leadership that was elected, I think in 2001, one of the first acts, the first budget was to dissolve the street department. So they defunded them. And those are the two people I had to lay off because they said, we're not going to do it, we're going to outsource. So we sold the equipment, outsourced, and we got to where we're at today, where we don't have a, we have a a maintenance crew that checks potholes and mows grass, and we don't have any type of road construction crew or uh or equipment to do so. That's number one. Number two, River Bluff, the same standards have built the streets in Country Village, built the streets in River Bluff. The problem is the soil was basically unstable. Public Works was directed by the city administration, stay out, there were no inspections. There were no modifications, there was no oversight, and the city got what the city got. Okay? That's a fact. Number three is the last overlay or seal code or, or whatever you want to call it was done in there, they overoiled, they understand it. Uh, we chased the problem for two years to try to get the oil to, to back up into, even get what they had. So those are some history things on the streets. I do support the fact that we need to do the streets. We need to do more. We need to be proactive. I would love to be able to fund a crew to get back and do it on ourselves so we can control it. Uh, when I mentioned this street in here, the county did it. The city had interlocal agreements with the county with previous commissioners that came in and resurfaced our roads. But I would be, I'm like Councilman King, very leery about any agreements with the county because for years we've been told the county can't work in here, or if they did, they have to get fair compensation for any work they do. So, and as far as uh the Commissioner precinct two having funding, uh, I want to make it clear that everybody may or may not know, but you're taxed an extra, I think it's four cents, it may be three and a half on your hundred specifically for a road maintenance tax in precinct two, of which the city of Castro citizens paid dearly for, but get no benefit on city streets. That's where precinct two gets a lot of extra money to be able to do the roads. Now, whether county continues with that or not, that's a county decision at budget time. But that's, that's a fact also. Excuse me. That's what I believe, or actually, it's in their tax rates. But, and as far as rebuilding streets, uh, Councilor Martinez, you're absolutely correct. Drainage goes with the streets. But also the other thing comes with your infrastructure. Why are you going to build a new street if you haven't replaced that water line? Or whatever. Uh, way back in the day when we did streets, we went down a street and the first thing we did, we put service taps into every vacant lot. So we wouldn't have to go back and tear the street up when we did. But we have a, if we have a history of, we own the street, so we'll just dig it up because we'll fix it.
Okay, I have one more.
So anyway, I just wanted to make a general where we're at and what got us to where we're at. I fully support funding a street department to be doing certain amount of streets, just like in the same way I would support replacing water lines or sewer lines or things like that. But as Mr. Dixon would bring up, and we have, it all comes down to where we get the funds for all these things. In, in many cases, in my opinion, we're behind the curve, but we've got to start somewhere.
Sorry. Uh, the airport has a crack seal machine they purchased, and so it's a manual machine, but it seals cracks. The uh, argument about, and I've heard this for 20 years now, I can't do the street because I gotta do this up under the street. We've pretty much decided in the past, it's sleeving the uh, the majority of the sewer line, which is probably the most effective way. You don't have to tear up a street to sleeve the sewer line. We already proved on Lafayette, you can put a brand new main line coming off the hill without tearing the entire street up. And so that argument has proved to be incorrect, that we don't have to tear up the street up. But the people drive on the streets every day. Okay? They drive on the streets every day, and we need to put money in where the people expect us to put it, infrastructure. That's what they see. They care about it. They don't like potholes. They want to ride their bikes with their kids. Whatever happened to be, streets are a priority, 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 more than just about anything else outside of utilities in my library. Uh, so we need to be really, really serious about, and, and I heard from the outgoing mayor, we have so much money, we're so financially secure, we got 80 bajillion dollars. Okay, that's terrific. What's important to the citizens? Let's put the money there instead of just kicking the can down the road again.
Sure. I just wanted to throw one more thing. When you talk about track, no, I want to take tracks, track seal in the airport.
The presenters change out while we continue?
While we can. Are you, are you, is there anything else to, on the streets? Anybody else have anything else?
What did David ask?
He's asking to change out.
I asked if we should let them change their computers and stuff.
That's saying on the street.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, one thing on the street, because we're throwing it out here and they want is, since I've been on council, one person has asked me to improve this street out here.
Okay.
Nobody else has ever brought streets up as an issue. I'm just making a statement of fact.
Yes, sir.
Second thing is, is that um, we, we live in these little bitty streets that were built for carts. So yes, they're not modern streets, but 90% of the streets we have now are sufficient to drive down 25 miles an hour roads. But I bet on a lot of it, people are saying, well, instead of streets, I want a new animal controls facility. Instead of streets, I want new upgrades community center at the park, all these other things. So yes, streets are important, but it's not the highest thing.
I understand.
Uh, police protection actually is the highest thing. So we just need to, you know, again, it's not just streets here.
It's wraparound, we have priorities.
And I agree with you. I have two comments to make on all of it. One is a bombshell, the other is just a comment about the break. So I, you're absolutely right. You're 100% right. When we replace the lines, one of the things I know, one of the things we look at when we replace lines, et cetera, is looking at uh pipe breaking, as to other things that don't involve the sort of street. Problem comes when you resurface a street, and unfortunately, we saw this to our screen on Burmud, that sometimes you have a break. Well, you're not going to go replace the line for one break. You know what you're gonna do? You're gonna go dig up a hole and fix it. And then you're gonna have the same problem where you disturb. So that's really, it's not about, you know, can you replace it? Yes, but can you keep from breaking between when you're going to replace it and when you fix the street? And that's the issue.
Right.
The other thing I'm gonna mention, this is a bombshell for John and for y'all. John knows about this, we know about this, but we're still hammering out what the net effect of the city will be. Texel has informed us that they are going to make major improvements tonight.
Right.
Great. We have utilities in the right of way in Texel.
Yes.
When Texel makes these, these announcements, if you have utilities in the right of way, it is your responsibility to move those utilities out of the right of way.
Oh, my God.
Make it move.
So that their project can happen at your expense.
Yes, sir.
Oh, my God.
There will be an unfunded mandate of some unknown magnitude that will be in, could be in the millions of dollars for the city to go and move our utilities out of the right of way related to Highway 90. I don't know what the scope is yet. I don't know how much we'll have to move, how much it'll cost us, but that's something we're dealing with, like this week, right now.
So.
So when we talk about budget, that's a, that's something that could throw a wrench into all of your planning as far as how you're spending money, because you have to do that.
Talk, talk to me also, there's, there's some couple areas, the, the Highway 90 in its current state was widened in 1980. And there's crossings that were not widened.
They are widened.
Sleeves. In some areas, not all of them. So you're aware of that, and we can talk more on that.
There are the 30% of time now, they are putting some storm breaks, especially at 471 and 90. So we are going to have some.
Yes, sir.
Adjustments.
The project that they're working on goes from 1343 to 471 South that they're working on right now. Yes, sir.
So we, I don't know what that'll be, but I'll, we'll keep you informed of what that looks like. Those such things could blow up your.
Yes, sir.
Chief Culler, before you say anything. My, my first education outside of the military was, we're telling Rich Row Management, if you leave tuna fish out for a few hours, you'll have an emergency. It'll probably be later today or tomorrow. But I recommend we put that food in refrigerator.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
Before you start, I just want to tell you I support your presentation.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Thank you. I just want to get out of the way. I know that Mr. Dixon will probably say it, that we are the largest budget, so uh, I want to get that out of the way and under the table. And John, thank you for taking all those punches, so uh.
That's what I.
Here we go.
I'm good. What do you want?
Um, you want me to start?
Yes, sir, please.
Uh, looking at it, uh, as far as the uh, the current level of staffing 24/7, as we all know, however, when I first got here, we were down, I think, five police officers. Uh, we were averaging basically only on one shift did we have two police officers. Uh, now we have, when we're optimal levels, you have two police officers on plus a supervisor.
Yes, sir.
So essentially, we've increased that by putting those people, we've moved some people around. Uh, Mr. Dixon, let me take the, they had a warrant sergeant. Moved him to patrol and took care of that, so.
So you literally, let, just, I don't even have to, so during a, during a normal day.
Yes, sir.
You, you, four, four personnel on?
Counting myself, yes. Yes, sir.
That's great.
Yes, sir. And, and that's a total change around. Basically, right now, uh, I put the numbers to it, and we have four officers that have been here two years, four that have been here one, and we have two or three that are fixing it at their one-year mark, which hasn't been the case. Average experience is about 14 years, excluding myself. We have 14 years of experience on the streets. Uh, so it's, it's a, in my opinion, a 180 change. Um, you're looking at patrol investigations, some community outreach stuff. I looked at it the other day and ran some numbers. Now, I'm taking citations and warnings together. You're looking at about 180% increase from 23 to 24, as well as a 35% increase in calls. Um, Sergeant Detective back here has done an outstanding job, outstanding job putting that football across the line and getting those cases to the DA's office, and that's been a 60% increase from 23 to 24. Um, really, it's, it's, I'm blessed. I'm blessed. So, looking at it, what, what I would like to see, the, the target service level is another detective. Uh, with that detective, that is one full-time employee addition, and then creating a lieutenant's position from within, which was some discussions I had when I first got here with the council, as far as what are your plans? My plans were to stay five to seven years and create some type of mentorship and getting that next person ready for taking that position. Uh, I feel very confident that we have people in our department right now that can do that. Uh, when I first got here and he said that, I was like, ooh, this is gonna be tough, but we've done an outstanding job, really have. Um.
So would you fill another slot with the detective and then a patrol officer?
Basically, what I would do is that the, the full-time detective would be a additional position. That lieutenant would oversee patrol and investigations and also assist investigations uh when needed.
So you're, you're really, you're asking for one FTE?
Yes, sir. One FTE. No, sir. No, sir. And looking at it from, I also put down here on the accreditation process, I'm one of, I think, 23 or 24 lead assessors for the Texas Police Chief's Best Practices Accreditation, which is about 173 standards you have to meet. Um, so looking at that, the, the only thing that's really problematic with that is our property room, uh, because you have to have your, your guns and drugs double-secure, and our property room's a closet. Um, so that, that's of concern. Uh, there is some things that I might be able to pull off uh, and still go through that accreditation process. I'm actually changing shifts up right now, where I'm having a gentleman that used to do accreditation. He's going to come in and be the program manager. I'll oversee that, and we'll work together to get, push this football across the goal line there. Um, the budget considerations, um, 84% of our budget is personnel, and that's not out of the norm for police departments and probably across the city that you're seeing that, that your employees are your number one asset, and that's your highest cost. It always is. And that's a recurring cost. So, looking at it from the risk of losing positions, because I looked at the budget, and I will tell you that it's a very lean budget, in my opinion. I have to watch what I spend it on and when I spend it. Um, we actually have two grant positions uh, that are to, I think, 2027, Scott, is what we discussed, as far as we're bound by that. So removing that position would uh, the bad word that everybody doesn't like to hear is supplanting, and um, I don't want to be a part of that. So, um, I think maintenance and training are our next two highs at 25,000 and 12,000, um, as far as cuts. Um, we have to stay, you know, like I said, the grant positions, as mentioned there. Um, I'd also like to see in this next year's budget a market salary adjustment for the police officers. Um, and that would not include sergeants. This is just for police officers um, and that are currently here. Um, I've looked at it, probably about seven or eight departments to get kind of a, what that adjustment would look like. Um, at a cost of about 40,000 to the city. Um, I know that Ms. Martinez has brought up the K-9 many years in a row. Excuse me. That costs us about $35,000. That's for the kennel inside the unit. That's where kennel at a officer's home, as well as the dog and the training.
Have you, uh, K-9, real quick, the city had one years past. Have you looked at any history about any of the issues that caused the city not to have it anymore?
Typically, what happens, I didn't, I knew that they had one at one time. Typically, those dogs and trainers go in tandem.
Yes, sir.
Uh, a lot of the officers that are K-9 officers, when that dog is retired, that dog stays with them. Um, and it's, it's, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work because that's 24/7 caring for that dog.
Well, the history on that one is the handler
Right.
was married to an active duty uh, PT. Well, the history on that one is the handler was married to an active-duty, uh, PT doctor.
Yes.
And she got orders they PCS.
Okay.
So we lost the handler. So since we didn't have a handler, we lost the dog.
Well, I think, I think it, personally on my part, I think it's a great thing.
Yes.
Because, uh, not only do they have function, a purpose, but they're also a great PR tool.
Extremely good PR tool.
Okay, so I, I, I would fully support it, I just wanted to ask you, uh, what your thoughts are on that.
Right. I've already put it out to the officers to see if anyone would volunteer, and I do have a volunteer, um, and he, he's committed to that. I sat down with him and discussed all the duties that he would have to do, uh, and that's part of it, because it is, it's a lot of work. There is a small, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but there is a certain, uh, overtime that you have to pay them by law, as far as caring for those animals, uh, be minimal cost to the city. Looking at, you know, as we move forward, that increased budget for training, uh, some crime scene tools, technology, uh, Mr. Dixon has been, uh, helping us out with the speeds of the internet, because everything we have at the PD is all internet-based, and we were having really low speeds, so we need to stay on top of that.
Yes, sir.
Um, but I think, I'll back up a little bit. Before I got here, I did a, a, um, presentation to the council, and they really budgeted for us and gave us all of the needs, uh, that we had. Uh, you're looking at new laptops, uh, in the car, which are iPads, you're looking at a new software records management system, new tasers, we have new handguns, I've slowly but surely sprinkled some shotguns in there. Uh, so really, everything that, that's been done, I mean, the city's done a phenomenal job of funding what we needed to do our jobs, and now it's incumbent on us to do it, and I think we are doing it. You know, the, the staff, as I tell them all the time, they make me look good, they really do. And, and that goes a long ways. So, looking at, um, capital long terms, speaking of, I've heard a lot of kicking it down the road, twenty-twenty-five CIP, unfunded was a police station. I've actually obtained, uh, a quote-unquote for a needs assessment, uh, in the amount of a little under twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, which I talked to like probably three or four architects when I was at the last chief's conference, and they said, well, it's probably about a thirty or forty thousand dollar investment. Oh, sorry. So looking at that, I, I do have that already, um, and I know that, that city administrator and city manager is kind of cringe when you mention Brinkley Sergeant, uh, because they've got a big price tag. Uh, I did have a contact that's a retired police chief that helped me through this process, and I think lower under twenty-five thousand dollars is a pretty good price, uh, for what they were gonna do. Really looking at, um, the other part, um, I think really that, that's what we need to decide. Are we gonna do it, or are we just gonna wait, are we gonna kick it down the road for a police station? I didn't want to be the guy coming in new and say, okay, I need this, I need this, I need that, uh, but it is in the CIP.
Hey, what do you think about the location, the two acres near the Walmart?
Outstanding.
That's a, you think that's a good location if you were to?
Well, my question to you is, just, just for argument's sakes, how big a facility do you need? Two thousand, three thousand, four thousand square foot, how big?
I'm thinking probably somewhere, probably around four thousand square feet, but I'm not the expert.
No, I'm just a swag.
Right.
All I'm asking.
And I've actually got a, I've actually got a folder already with, okay, this is what we need in the PD, I've got an inside drawing or rendition of the PD as far as the flow of it and everything else. Really, I want to get that prepared, so when we do, if we do decide to do this, they have an idea of what we need.
Okay. Well, okay, we, we'll talk more on that, because I, I, I think it was brought up earlier with one other department about a use of some property the city owns, and I can go back twenty years ago when there was discussions about a multi-purpose facility.
Right.
That the city owns, so those are for future discussions, but yes, we're going.
I'm happy with anywhere they go.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lee?
Are you, are you thinking of a, a new primary facility and then its growth, having substation?
You know, substations are a different animal, and I really don't, I think that, that in the city of this size and, and the growth potential and everything else, I think one facility is fine. We're mobile, basically, we have a mobile office that they're going with. Yes, sir, that's what I want. Yes, sir.
Because we're gonna, quite, quite groupable or more in size.
Correct. I'm happy wherever it goes, I'm just saying that, that, I want to back up off that, so I'd have to really look at it, but I really think the Walmart is a good location. You've got Highway ninety right there. Uh, I actually think when any Walmart comes to any city, they need to supply one police officer, uh, for the amount of work that we do up there. They did give us a grant for a bike this year, so.
Fifty percent of our calls are more at, are at Walmart, and that's pretty typical for communities our size that have a Walmart, that have a big box like that. Uh, the bigger you get, the more big-box retailers you are, they start to split that, but when you're one of these towns that has, kind of, it's a one-horse, one Walmart town, um, it's not uncommon at all that, that half your calls, half your police calls will be at the Walmart. And you think about what our cost to the, the PD is, because they are the most expensive service that you have.
I knew you would, I knew you would say that.
I wasn't planning on doing that, since you, since you already said it, I thought I'd reiterate it. Right, if you get a fire department, then we'll, we can compete. That's right. Uh, he would love for me to, for us to have a fire department, so that way he wouldn't have the, the spotlight on him all the time, being the case. They, when you look at our total budget for PD and then you look at our revenue from Walmart, they just about pay their way.
Sure.
They're about fifty percent of our calls and they pay about fifty percent of the cost of the, of the police department, so, just so you know, it's about a, it's kind of a fair trade.
Also, that, that technology, and then I'll go to emergency management, we're also in the, um, essentially the final stages, you'll see very soon, of the grant that I mentioned, I think, uh, Councilman Marchman mentioned it about the ALPRs, um, that there'd be, we're requesting nine with three static cameras, uh, at a cost to the city of about seventy-two hundred dollars on an annual basis. We're not bound, if that grant goes away, that we have to pay the whole full month. So, we discussed that with the, uh, with the guy, we've had probably about four phone calls with him already, so. Uh, we're in the process right now, um, DPS and Tech Stop basically putting spots where the cameras are gonna go, uh, so it's, it's pretty, it's pretty exciting.
Are you talking emergency management?
Sir?
You're talking emergency, oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, no, now I'm going to emergency management.
I'm sorry.
Emergency management, you see in there, um.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
You might explain that, I think you assume the acronym after, but that's the?
Automatic license plate reader.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
You guys have a, a grant in process for that, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, we had a, we had a, a thing going forward, um, a ninety-day free trial for, but the city would have to approve that after that, and for those four cameras, it was twelve grand. So.
A year.
Yes, sir.
A year.
And if it's, if they ever break or anything else like that, you don't pay for the camera, they replace it.
And what company, uh, it was?
Flock.
Flock.
Flock. And if you look at it, um, around the San Antonio area, if you put, put around it, people always say, well, you know, it's Big Brother watching, I'm telling you, Big Brother's already watching, because there's literally thousands of cameras in the San Antonio area.
Are we, are you moving forward with that, or that?
That has to be approved to y'all next council meeting.
Okay, yes, sir.
So that's gonna be brought back forward to you. Yes, sir.
On Tuesday.
Yes, sir, we are doing the test. Yeah. Hopefully, this grant will run into the time period where they award the grant, August, September, so we should be good, good on that.
Okay, emergency management.
Emergency management, you see in there, the, the first page is the budget and what those items take care of, um, the emergencies are in, and then the, um, emergency generator maintenance, uh, hopefully that maintenance will come down and I'll sell the old generator to John.
If you had an issue right now, what would you be, you guys in command?
Probably. Yeah, I mean, looking at it from the standpoint of our facility, no.
In two thousand two, when we had the floods, we used the airport conference room.
Correct.
As as a command. Just, just, just for grades.
Well, I'm hoping that, I'm gonna talk to, uh, the Fire Chief Cook, because they were remodeling this, this, uh.
Sure.
Firehouse down here with a very large room for training and everything like that, uh, so I need to meet with him. I've had several discussions with him, but they're just now, um, starting that process.
I did put a slide in there about incident command, it's one of the last.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump.
No, you're right. Well, let's jump, let's, we can keep going.
Command Control Center.
I just wanted to ask, not everybody understands the, the E S R command system, but.
Right.
Some folks do, I know she did, I know I did.
So airport was one of the options, E S D facility, the, they're, they're, the one here by us.
Okay.
Potentially.
I didn't mean to jump ahead.
No, you're good.
You're good.
Okay.
And so, some of that depends on, you know.
Part of emergency management.
Some, some part of that is, is really, you know, in the future, we have to look at where it's gonna be and, 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 you know, actually look at doing that.
Well, you can look at it based on situations.
Correct, correct, yes, sir. And I know that, that, uh, actually I had breakfast with Chief Cook the other day and we're talking about trying to get him to buy us some stuff, because he's got all the money, you know, but having some serious discussions on, on emergency management and, and actually locations and stuff like that, and, uh, Chief Cook's wonderful to work with, he really is.
Yes.
Um, so I don't think there's ever gonna be a problem, you know, working together at all with him.
No, I've had a lot of conversations.
Yes, sir, he's, he's good.
Rural areas too.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Chief, is our communication's good with the rest of the people we have to talk to?
Radios.
Yes, sir.
Radio.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that was part of the, and I missed out on that when the, when the council, they actually, when I first got here, we had radios that were basically non-law enforcement that I looked at, I'm like, okay, I couldn't find anywhere where these things were ever used in law enforcement, they were used more for marine-type stuff, and, uh, the city stepped up and bought all mo, all new mobile radios and all new portable radios. Um, I know that there's some, ACOG will not approve a grant anymore or anything else like that when you're asking for radios unless it's dual-band. And dual-band means dollars, a lot.
These are not dual-band, they're VHF?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so just be aware, I know, what is the county looking at right now?
Actually, what happened was, uh, Councilman Gonzalez, um, they had some money earmarked.
Congressman Gonzalez.
Congressman Gonzalez, sorry, uh, hacked, actually, uh, had, had that earmarked money, and apparently, uh, Elon, shoo, cut it, and, but he said that that may come back. Uh, we had a meeting about two months ago, I think, in San Antonio with him, and he laid it all out there, and, uh, hopefully that money will come back, and the county basically was earmarked for all new radios, uh, including us, as well as tower sites and everything else. Same thing with, with our cell phones or the radios, we're in a bowl and the coverage sometimes is horrible.
So it's a dual, those would be dual-band?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just so, so you're aware, the county is kind of pursuing that separately, they've got what they think is a plan to try and get that. Now, if we, as far as interoperability with the county, are they on VHF today?
Yes.
Okay.
And basically what they, that with Gonzalez was all law enforcement, all emergency services, it was, I can't remember what the total dollar amount, but I know that, uh, Judge Luce actually reached out to me, asking for numbers, um, so I got with him, and then, of course, the election happened and.
It was millions of dollars.
Yeah.
There was something else I was gonna ask about that, uh, you know, when we talk about agency interoperability with, with the radios, and I'm just trying to hit things you were curious about, Bob, I'm pretty certain, so, so are there any agencies we can't communicate with, let's put it that way? As far as other cities that are in our region and, uh, the county, I think where we start to have issues is, is when we go east towards Bear, right?
Correct.
But everybody west, from us west, south, north, we can communicate with, is that true?
Correct, and they can actually patch, basically dispatch what they call a patch.
Right.
And they, they can talk, I know that from previous discussions, I can assure you that unless they've changed their mind, you could not, as an officer-to-officer, talk to a San Antonio PD officer. The chief didn't want that, uh, so.
So when we had that, that convict, the, the person that, that escaped, um, and, and there was, Bear County came over and helped us, what, what?
Oh, my neighbor.
What communication challenges took place, were you able to communicate at this point?
Yeah, it was basically through dispatch, it was basically third-party.
Okay.
Going back and forth. And that's not always the optimum.
That's when Divine put out the alert.
Yes.
Right, I know, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, anything else for PD?
Yes, so I agree with everything you have on there, and yes, I feel we do need the K nine, it's, it's much needed, because that incident you were just talking about, they brought in a K nine and it helped, because that K nine went in first to get the individual that was hiding in the building before an officer did, because he was supposedly armed, correct?
Yes. I've actually seen it in the past where, when the dog starts barking, uh, usually you get a little bit of attention from the suspect.
Yeah.
And they're, they're very, very good at, at bringing them to their senses.
Correct.
They truly are.
It's, it's, it's a grand thing. Um, in regards to emergency management, I agree with the Command Control Center, we need something, we need to get it set up, because when Snowmageddon happened, we were hosed. We didn't have a shelter, a, an, an agreement with the school or anybody to set up a shelter for people to go to, we were scrambling, trying to find something. So Command Control Center would help, as well as, I've been fighting since I've been on council, getting an MOU with the school, high school, that way if something happens, we can set up a shelter there with cots and everything, and two things have happened since I've been on, we had a Snowmageddon and then the fire near the lake that kept growing towards us, and so that's something we really, the city needs to work on, is getting us that MOU, because then we could get by cots and store them and we'd be ready for disaster.
I know that, uh, Chief Cook does have on his radar, uh, incident command vehicle, so I saw the pictures of it too, so, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me?
Are we going down this way?
I don't know.
He seems to go second no matter where.
Okay, so go second.
So not to go first.
It's a neural network.
Nice. Nice. Go ahead, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Age before beauty, I guess.
Oh.
More likely scenario is a hurricane. And, uh, and so, you know, it'd need to be ready for that. But, uh, there was a point we could even talk to the EMS in Castroville.
Yes, sir.
Uh, which is not good. But, uh, they're great.
Sirens.
See, I see, oh, siren, the siren. We used to be, we could set the sirens off here. We had a yellow, a yellow radio. We could turn the sirens off because we would know maybe more likely what's happening up on the hill that's coming our way than they might know in Hondo. And we used to have weekly, maybe once, once a month.
Drills.
Drills of the sirens that turn them on. They really liked that. It's sonic. And, uh.
We keyed the microphone, keyed the mic on handheld and they all went off.
Yeah. And so that all kind of went away.
And.
I don't even know where we are on sirens anymore, but you've asked for a siren. So where would that go?
Well, let me expand on that.
Good.
Those are our sirens or those are the county sirens?
The county.
County.
We bought them.
Well, wait a minute. We paid a bunch of bucks for that upgrades and everything else.
That's before my time.
I know.
Don't kill me.
As far as I understand, we have a maintenance agreement with the county. That's it.
Okay.
So.
It doesn't matter just today.
It, it don't matter as long as they're working. We have, we have.
Well, but that's a question because there's a couple of things. One, I'm, I'm, with particularly to the siren that is, uh, over between us, me, Sheena. Um, we talked about moving that one.
Washington Street?
You what?
The one by you?
Yeah.
The one on Washington. Yes.
Yes.
We talked about moving that siren to, and that's, is there another one besides that one?
Yeah, it's real.
Oh, my God. I'm aware of that one. So that one, we were talking about moving to Lions Park. Keeping in mind that, that outdoor sirens really are intended not for people living in their houses to alert them, but they're for people who may be outdoors. So it makes sense to have them where you're going to be most likely to have people outdoors doing something. So that would be at your baseball fields by the airport, your Lions Park, where your parks are. Right? Um, so we talked about moving it and when I engaged that with the county to see if we can get that done, they were having all kinds of issues because they couldn't get the contractor out there and then they found out, then anyway. I don't know where that stands. I don't know if we have an operable, operational, um, siren. I need to get right, I need to get back on that because the county was supposed to be maintaining it and they started to have issues. So we need to get, we need to get back with them and find out what is the status of the sirens? Did they go with a new contractor to do that maintenance?
I remember having that conversation, but I, I'm old, uh, with Mr. Chadwick and talking about the, I think they did solidify that contractor as I recall it.
Yeah, I just need to know what's the story with our siren then? Because he was supposed to come out and test it, do all these other things. And one of our concerns was, well, when, when and how are we going to set these off and?
They went up in like 2000. Our airport manager was also our emergency magic coordinator and, uh, got all that worked out. Correct.
But they were going to retrofit them with, according to Chadwick, you know, he's new. He wants to do new things. They were going to retrofit them with some kind of, um, so he could do this across the county.
Sure.
On his cellphone. He wanted to be able to do it from his cellphone, which then give us the ability to do it. But then again, as we're going through Mark, Chadwick, you know, I don't know if he wants locals, the local control. He wants to be able, because he's merged the entire county to be able to have that, which is, we just need to sort through all that.
Do we want to report on the current state as a future agenda?
Yeah. We just need to make it work.
Yeah, that's very important. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, one thing on the side of regular life. They blow every day at noon to tell you to go eat dinner.
Yeah.
Before those were there, there was a siren right at Lions Park at the corner, Houston and right there at the school thing. And it went off. And that was one there and one at Public Works at noon every day, at noon every day.
Yeah. One of the cities I worked in was the same way. We went away from it for that reason.
It was a lunch hour.
It became to a point where, what if you had bad weather at noon?
At noon, yeah, you're sure.
Now Oklahoma, you hear them go off, you better run for the hills.
So anyway, did you spill?
Before we leave this topic, Bob and Bruce, can you tell us kind of where the other two?
Well, there, there's supposed to be one by Bush's Chicken.
There's one by Sonic.
That, that's a Sonic or Bush's Chicken or whatever, another eight.
There's one on Washington Street.
Yes.
My recollection was around the old, or the retirement community.
There was one, there was, I knew there was the one at Washington Streets at Athens, the old up rounds. I knew the one at, at the east end.
Right. So please include the positions of them in the report.
Okay. I still haven't heard a third one. Where's the third one? Washington Sonic. Is, is there one on Athens or?
Back to where they are.
We'll have to, we'll have to.
Yes, sir.
We'll get some information.
We, we had a department head briefing due.
I'm happy that y'all don't know either.
Yeah, we'll see. Okay. What else you got, Chief?
Uh, code compliance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, yes.
But you said on your internet speaks currently that those aren't good enough.
No, and they were actually there at noon today.
Yeah, it, it's not something we need to delve into. Rise broadband is getting it fixed. There were some rise broadband issues. We've, we're getting them addressed.
Right.
Who's the provider?
Rise broadband.
Rise.
Yeah.
That's, okay.
Okay.
But that's getting resolved.
Yes.
Yeah, I got one more question.
Sir?
Sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
It's finally my turn. Question.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Um, if, just curious, if you guys stop a carload full of cash, do we need to keep it?
A certain percentage. I think it's, uh, seventy-five, twenty-five with the, with the county.
Doesn't it depend on which county?
Yes, basically we would have the, but typically that's what your standard is, seventy-five, twenty-five. Uh, some, sometimes I've seen as, 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 uh, much as sixty, forty, uh, to the DA's office. With the DA's office, yes, sir. Each of them are different.
That's what I was going to tell you. It depends on which DA's handling the case and, and whether it's out of Bear County or Medida County. Medida County is more generous to us than Bear County.
That's amazing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Habey's very, very easy to work with.
I was about to say.
He's outstanding. He's outstanding.
Chief, I just wanted to say that sometimes your department gets a bad rap as far as the speed trap and casual as this. But if people followed the law, there wouldn't be those issues.
You know, uh, Mayor, I actually approve a lot of those citations. The people need to slow down. Absolutely slow down.
I agree.
It's crazy.
Years ago, just for example, as, when I worked for the city, there was a speeder, wanted a jury trial. Thought that I would be sympathetic as a public works employee. And I said, look, I work on that highway. I can pick and choose the ones that are doing it. Don't think the police officers can.
Right. Real quick, I, I actually, right, I actually put the radar trailer up there the other day and told the officer on ninety, go sit behind it. His first citation was fifty-eight and a forty.
Yeah. I understand. So I, I support what you guys are doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Wasn't me.
Yours is a stop sign. So. Self-admission. So.
That's true.
Allegedly.
You're supposed to not be recording this.
Thank you. Did you want to, did you want to go to animal control or was that?
Yeah, animal services and code.
Or code compliance?
Yeah. Let's do a code compliance. Essentially, right now, you're looking at enforcing all the zoning and everything else like that. And I'm telling you, this is a, a process. It's, I know the council before proactive, reactive. Uh, we're kind of basically doing the reactive now. Um, and a lot of people aren't real happy. Um, I know that we had one, I can't remember the lady's name. She just sent an email the other day in the last two weeks about all these abandoned vehicles. Um, so I actually went around and I think I had about thirty on my list, uh, code compliance and then went around and I think they had about another fifteen. Here's a problem that we just discovered though. Basically the unregistered vehicle, um, used to, you had to take it in, get it inspected and everything else. Now guess what? You just do it all online. So what they're doing is getting online, hopping online, slapping it on there and going. So we're going to have to relook at that, uh, maybe go ahead in a different direction. Uh, that's just something that I had a meeting with them this week and discussed that. Uh, so I need to come up with some solutions on that.
Well, I want to give you a couple of my insights to code enforcement because I was a licensed code enforcement officer when I worked for the city. I didn't bring my badge because I was going to show you. I do have one. But anyhow, uh, I fully believe and, and actually I talked to a lot of folks that the rules are the rules. And, and, and with all due respect, I really don't care who it is. These are the rules we all agree to follow and we abide by. Now, as far as code enforcement, I don't agree it should be simply complaint based. I believe we have a responsibility if we see something to address it. But I'm not saying you go out and, and specifically target a certain thing. Uh, I believe that as you come across an issue and it ju, and it warrants attention, then you attend to it at that point in time and follow the process. But, but, uh, so it's a combination of everything. And, uh, one of the things that also I was brought to my attention as far as cases that seem to drag on and drag on and drag on. I understand due process. I don't want everybody to have it, but we need to put closure on things. And code enforcement, it is what it is. And just as a personal thing, uh, there's, uh, some things that, I will say this, as a, as a code enforcement officer, there's things that I didn't necessarily agree with, but it was my job. And I would always try to tell people, that's what it is. Don't shoot the messenger. These are the rules. And, uh, if you don't like the rule, there's a process to get the rules changed. But, so you'll always have my support on that. And I just want to, I want to let you know that. And, uh, we go forth and conquer. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, looking at it from, they've actually mentioned to me, you know, looking at the, the target service is basically looking at their salaries as well. Um, and looking at, at body cams, which I think I may be able to somehow or another work that with the body cams that we utilize. Um, I just need to talk to our vendor on that. So that may be a, a low cost hanging fruit. Uh, I do recommend recording, uh, because, um, sometimes it can get heated and it's a he said, she said type of situation. So, and we do work with people. I had one of them where the vehicle had been there for probably ten years and she said, give us a month. And sure enough, a month and like a week, they had it gone.
One of the most important parts of code enforcement is education. You're not there to hammer somebody.
Correct.
Or to get compliance.
Correct.
And if you can get compliance through education.
Correct.
Then you succeed.
And that's what basically animal services are doing now. I mean, Josh with animal services is doing an outstanding job. Uh, I've heard nothing at all in a negative sense. And he's working with a lot of different people and we know animal lovers can be difficult sometimes. Uh, but he does a great, he does a great job. I've seen it before. I, it's, I mean, you can assault a person, but if you assault a dog, man, they want to throw you under the jail, um, looking at that. So moving forward, um, again, um, budget remain flat. You're still going to get, you're still going to get the service. That, that's the same thing with policing. Um, we're operating, I think, again, like I said, a lean budget. Uh, but I do think we need to, to look towards the future and quit kicking the can down the road. Um, you know, looking at, at some of the stuff that, like you mentioned, you know, the complaint base, that, that's a struggle that they've had. You know, because the council pulls them one way, pull them one way. Uh, but I think really the education, get compliance. Uh, some people, they don't want to be helped. It's just like homelessness. They don't want to be helped.
Get back me in a corner. You've pushed me into enforcement.
Correct.
Yes.
Looking at, Jeff, I saw it hold the handle up. I didn't want to miss you, so.
Oh, I was scratching.
Okay. Okay. We do have some, uh, what they're looking at as far as the long-term, as far as the updated vehicle, possibly office space, looking at it from, um, the standpoints of anti-dumping enforcement. We did put in for a grant, uh, for a camera that can be mobile and move it around. And in case we have problematic areas, we put it at the park, um, and everything else. So looking at that standpoint, I think we're, we're pretty good in, in this area. It's just really getting the compliance.
Yes, sir.
That, that's exactly what, what it is. Um, any questions on that? Or move to animal services?
If you have to make your job easier with this, what would that be for?
I think probably, um, actually two things. Number one, and I've had the discussion with the judge because it's just like Mayor said, they've been sitting idle. I do know that, uh, I think in August, they've designated some jury, uh, times. Um, but that has not been the case in the past. And really it's kind of like us when we develop a case, we send it to the DA. In my humble opinion, when we send it to the DA, when we send it to the municipal court, we're out.
You've done your job.
We've done our job. And so what I want is, is more of that going, but we have another offender that we're working on. They're fined two hundred and eighty dollars. And guess what? Ten days later, fourteen days later, they got another citation because they won't move certain items. Um, we, we've tried to work with people. Some of them are easy to work with. Some of them aren't. Um, it takes a lot of work. Um.
Or they run.
And then actually looking at the other, the other part of that would be, um, we need to decide as a city, if you're going to start looking at the, um, mitigating a property, which can be quite expensive. And once we've established that, that threshold saying, look, we're not playing anymore, we're going to move forward. And a commitment from the council saying, we're going to X amount of money and this is what it's going to take.
I think, I think the success of code enforcement starts right here.
You're correct.
That, that's, and another way to say it is there's something we could do with code ordinance that would make it easier.
Yes, sir. And that, that's, that's really looking at it from, you know, we've got good, dedicated employees. Um, but it's that pulling one way, pulling the other way.
Yes, sir.
That, that becomes stressful for them. Always tell them, let me deal with the stress in council. Y'all go do your job. Uh, not that y'all give me any stress, but maybe John, but not me.
We want to give you support to succeed.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, I do have a few code questions. First, the council does know this. You may know Greg Pons though.
Yep, I know.
Greg Pons is a pastor in Castroville. He lives over near Lions Park.
Yes, he calls me.
Okay, yeah. And so he sent me, he called me on the phone and said, there's a cow in the backyard across the street. We didn't determine what the tree, what the tree was. And the thing is it's moaning and groaning and making all kinds of noise and so forth and so on. And, uh, I didn't know if he was in my district or Mr. Marchand's district, but it's right on the edge. And so I read our ordinance, which was completely redone not too long, you know, five, six, seven years ago. It's a very good ordinance. Previously, there were some restrictions on what size of animals you could have on how big of a piece of ground.
Right.
That, I don't see that in our ordinance anymore. We're big on dogs and cats, how many. But I didn't see anything about sheep and goats and cows and horses and donkeys and, and so forth. And I, I may have missed it. But, uh, uh, we used to do that and there are places in town that, that that was perfectly okay. And, I mean, I live on the river and there's always been donkeys and horses and houses and people like me that all lived out there, uh, that were sometime inherited and sometimes not. But it seemed odd to me that we didn't have something specific in our ordinance about larger animals. And the other one is, you do multiple ones. You said in here that you're also historic district code enforcement. They're already on the books, things about, uh, willful destruction of historic properties. There's two doctors associated with this town, Dr. Best and Dr. Bell. They both own historic properties. Out the back door and across in front of that house, there are pieces and parts that have been falling off that house for ten years. And Dr. Bell's house, or Best's house on the other side of town, off Naples.
You don't own that house anymore, Bob.
Hang on, hang on. I know. You're, you're dealing with a code enforcement, right?
I know. This is code enforcement.
Okay.
This is, it says that here he does historic preservation.
Okay, okay.
He didn't own that property anymore.
But, but I, I didn't want to go on a particular, I don't think, I don't think we're, we're, no disrespect. I understand code enforcement. But I don't want to get specific to a particular location. We want to kind of keep this general in the form of this, high level on this report.
That's a great point. And I draw my statement, but you heard it at least.
Yes, sir. Thank, thank you very much.
Mr. Lee, look at the attachment that I sent you, uh, that a couple of days ago on the email and it'll address.
Is anybody else got anything specific at, at a higher level when we talk about code enforcement? We think we're doing great. Move on, Chief, please.
Yes, sir.
All right, animal services.
Current services for the animal services, you're looking at, at two of the officers, uh, Mr. Dixon had actually had them trained dual purposely. Um, essentially you got a seventeen dog facility. The problem of it is, is the location, location, location.
Are your officers actual animal control officers licensed, certified?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You have two, we have two animal services slash code compliance.
Okay.
And then Terry, is she getting her animal services?
Yes, sir. She, she actually has to go through and, and I don't know about animal service, but I know code compliance, you have to have a, like a, I think it's one year before you can start going through that. Is that correct?
I was going to ask you back, I'm reverting back, said you brought up it. Are your code enforcement officers certified, licensed, code enforcement officers?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So again, Josh and Pearl are both dual trained, both dual licensed, fully trained. Uh, Terry is new.
Right.
So she's going through training.
She's in the training.
And I wasn't clear whether she'd be trained in animal or not. Uh, what I, one of the things we're going to talk about when we talk about the budget in this level.
Right.
Thinking about services and service levels, um, the reason I had them dual trained, animal services.
Yes, sir.
We had one of each and there really wasn't a full-time job at the time when I got here four and a half years ago for, for.
Right, right.
One of each. But you could justify having, actually having dual trained and helping each other out and doing that sort of thing. So that's what they started out doing. But as we grow, I think what you're going to see is we may want to end up eventually either, in one city I worked in, we, we still had everybody dual trained, but we sectioned off the city. We had four or six, I can't remember. And they covered different areas of the city. Um, and in another area, we just said, no, we're going to go back to animal services and code compliance. And they each covered, those two divisions covered the whole city because there was enough, it was now a full-time job to do animal services or a full-time job.
Just as a general statement, I think it's imperative that we have people in these type positions, fully licensed.
Correct.
Certified because it, it adds credibility to what they're doing.
Yep.
And I, and I appreciate that being done. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, looking at it from what they're really, um, the target service, they really, really want a shelter tech. Uh, basically that person will be taking care of the animals, feeding, watering them, everything else. Currently, it's just like anything else. You have, um, on Saturday and Sunday, guess what? They still need help. So they have to go up there. They actually rotate weekends, uh, to come up to the shelter, feed and water the dogs, make sure everything's okay. Um, I know from that standpoint, um, they've been talking to a nonprofit on this one that they have here, public facing facility. Um, in fact, she stopped by my office the other day again, um, and discussed that. And, and I think that's the idea that, that we need to, as we move forward, I think it's on one of these slides as far as that type of facility. I know it's all money, but at the same time, at some point in time, we got to either say, yes, we're going to do it or no, take it out of the CIP. But I really think that, um, animal lovers, they want to see those animals. Um, and I think the, the location that we have now is, is, you know, not sufficient.
I, I think, uh, in my personal opinion, this I put on the same list as others, facility needs. Uh, there have been discussions of facility needs for at least twenty years that I'm aware of. This is one of them. There's been locations discussed and for whatever reason, pushed. And so I, I think overall, a review of some of the past thoughts on some may be valid today to try to look at some facility locations. So I think, I, I agree with you. Animal control is in a tough spot where it's at.
Right.
It's kind of fits in with everything else, trying to look for a, a new home.
Prior to coming here, I was actually at a meeting with the sheriff and the Hondo police chief and they were trying to give each other animal services, but they didn't. You know, we're talking, give me animal services. You take the jail, vice versa. So there, there, there's back and forth. I know that Mr. Dixon and I, I can't remember how long ago it was, but it was, I think when I first got here, had a meeting with the judge and, and the sheriff, but we've had nerthing after that. So.
It takes, in my opinion, it takes special people to do the animal services. Uh, I know when I came here, I said, I'll do anything you ask me to do, but please don't ask me to do that. So it, yeah. But I, I give, I give a lot.
Josh's temperament, and I can't say enough about Josh. I'm telling you, he's got the right temperament. He is solid.
Good.
When we talk about animal services, facility is a big part of it and there's several options. We have looked at the department, the county. The county is pretty, pretty candidly said they're not, that it's just not something you're going to do. So if we do it, it's whether we're going to do it on our own and then invite other organizations within the city, these volunteer organizations to have space in, in our facility or not, or vice versa, whether they're going to do a facility and provide services to us and give us space in their facility. I have, I, there are issues and concerns with both of those arrangements. Um, I, I can just tell you from experience, when you get, inevitably when cities and counties partner with a group that is a no-kill group, uh, their, the costs end up being very, very high because you're trying to save every animal, which is a noble and worthy thing to do.
Right.
Um, but the values and the goals and objectives of the two organizations are different.
They don't always match.
It comes down to money.
Right.
And it also ends up coming into a facility issue. Facility, facility gets overbooked, overrun. And this is what I've seen multiple times in multiple counties where, where I've lived and worked. So I would, I would caution us heavily that if we're going to partner with nonprofits, that we do, their eyes wide open and really think, um, really get to think about. really get to think about long-term, what does this look like? And ensure that you've got the right, the right contract in place to protect.
Right, your animal services, animal control is a, a public health and safety issue that is just a financial burden, but it's a necessary thing.
And with our group, we got to.
Okay. Did you have a question?
I did, sir. Something to think about is these new developments that do not want to be part of our ETJ come in and are built. Guess who they're going to call for animal services? And so there is another issue you might, you know, throw on the table as we work with those people.
They also call for.
Say, no, sorry, can't help you. And the other one is, do you post pictures online of the animals that are up there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, terrific.
On Facebook and everything, yes.
Chief, do you have anything else?
The last thing is, like I said, the capital long-term was the, they're talking about a mobile adoption trailer. And talking to Josh, it's really kind of like a transport trailer, not a mobile adoption that want to make it dual purpose.
Sure.
In there, when they take animals and help them out with other nonprofits. And then again, the facility, that's, that's the long-term facility. We just need to know, do we need to start researching this or what? Just really decision-making from this level and let the, the workers.
That's something that I'm sure we'll be talking about, sir. Thank you, chief, very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
The nonprofit that, with that one location. Yeah, I've sent information to Scott on my input. So just if you want to share that with him.
Yeah, yeah, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Did, did we want to go, Darren, did, we would do that with him?
Yeah, yes, Darren, Darren Ham's patiently waiting to go, there'll be tourism.
Yes.
Yeah, it's already up. There you go. Good job. He has handouts for us today.
Good afternoon.
Hi there.
All right, so do you?
Here's some information I just compiled. I had a meeting this morning.
Thank you.
With the small businesses, focusing on the downtown, it's where it district comes. But these are numbers that I've shared with them, just to let them know what we've been doing. It's about marketing. And so that, that's just kind of, that shows you kind of our targets, what we're targeting. The first sheet just goes over, we're using Meta, Facebook for a lot of our local promotion. The red circle there is kind of our key market. We're targeting those people for a general business, trying to get them to see Castroville as their home market to come shop here. So we can benefit from their tax dollars from those people. And then, and then we move out into the greater San Antonio area as well. So that's kind of our key market. We also have been using YouTube and Paramount Plus. And we've been going across the state of Texas now, we're hitting Dallas, Fort Worth, Austin, Houston, and a little bit into Corpus Christi as well. And then we've also started to advertise in Alsace, the region of France, hoping to get people who would do their trips to here. It's actually been performing very well. There's a lot of people who are seeking additional information. It's probably doing twice as good as typical advertising. So obviously I think that in the, in the, that region, there's interest. And I think it also helps us as we try to protect our history and make sure that we are keeping Castroville Castroville. So I just wanted to give you those numbers. We have the budget numbers. Then we go into this discussion, what are we supposed to do?
What is our discussion supposed to be?
Demand right there.
So real high level, talk about your service, what you provide. And really, we want to give most of the time for the council to ask questions. But just at a high level, kind of what do you provide? What, how would you look to enhance that service? And we talked about some of those things in different ways that seek to broaden the economic development, tourism and marketing that those multiple hatch you wear. If we were to do it a little differently or do a little more of it, do a little bit better, what would that look like?
Okay.
And then we'll.
Well, currently, as tourism and business development director, my time is spent, obviously a big chunk of that is spent on tourism. And that is, and those two different markets for tourism, one of those are people in the region. That's probably our number one market to bring them in to visit Castroville, to spend their money at our shops. And a lot of that promotion is focused on our historic downtown. And as I try to tell all business people, while your business may not be in the video promoting Castroville, you are benefiting from the video because when people come to Castroville to experience kind of what makes Castroville unique, they're going to shop and spend money in other locations, they're not just going to be here. And then the second group that we're, as I mentioned earlier, we're targeting is the people up here in the zip codes, the San Antonio zip codes that are right up the road and trying to get them to come and see Castro as a place to shop. We don't want them to be their home, their home market. And so that's another big part of what we do. And then working with local businesses, small business people and trying to help develop that. In fact.
Sorry, just backing up.
Well, you know.
This is where you're.
All right. Yes.
And you were talking about that.
Yeah, well, thanks. Anyway, so, and then helping local small businesses and event coordination, helping with local events. And really the focus is to increase our sales tax revenue. Some numbers that I can give you, right now Fredericksburg is negative 0.23% currently. Bernie is at a plus 3.61. They're kind of places that I kind of look at at times. We are at, today I checked 404, 4.04 increase in our sales tax revenue. And then some of the other cities in the area are actually negative. And so I feel like that's a good number. So part of it is trying to drive tax revenue. It's a big part of what I'm trying to do, get people to come visit and spend money. And a big story that we try to tell is to protect our history, protect our, our, our identity. And then also to market ourselves in that way so that we can get the, those resources and those funds. Okay?
Can you talk a little about kind of those target service levels? So what's the toolkit, what is the network look like?
And so as we move forward into next year, as we're getting in the next direction, I feel like what I've been trying to do. So we have three years, we're ending up my third year here. And we started that first year with identity, trying to get that going, trying to get a brand that celebrates the character and history of Castroville. And then we've began to target, our first target was San Antonio because that's the low hanging fruit. Let's get them, let's get those people shopping, let's get those, that revenue coming from those people more. And then this last year, we were trying to get more, helping out more of our local small businesses. We were trying to work on some signage and other ways that can help us with our historic downtown. So a real focus on doing that, we set up a small business group, like I said, we met earlier today. And then, so that's kind of where we're going. Where I would say that we're headed now is going to be even strengthening our small business even more. And so a part of what I've been doing this year is being trained in economic development. I'm getting my certification, I'm working with OU EDI. And about halfway through my course, I will be finished in the next several months with that. And a part of that is how can we better service our small businesses? What can we do to strengthen them and help them to offer more, even greater assistance to them as we grow as a community? And a part of that is some of the feedback you get from talking to small businesses, there's some concern about development coming. Is that, how is that going to impact us as small businesses? And so looking at the next step, year number four, that's where we go, target service levels. We're going to work on some better education for our small businesses, better working with the small business, the SBC and other organizations in the area. And be, and have a training program. And we're looking at possibly doing a passport or some way that people can come and encourage them to, if they stop at one shop, to stop at another shop and try to do all of those. We're also working with developers to try to help bring businesses that would be unique and special to Castroville and trying to encourage that kind of development here so that what we have to offer is not just what they can get anywhere, but something that can be special just for us. And so also working with different developers and business owners to try to network into San Antonio so that we can bring a more unique brand to our businesses. And I'm also working with people within our city to try to say how, how can we help them? And so I'm also focusing on grant programs. How can we get resources to help our small businesses? And so talk with some of them about the PACE program that they came and did a presentation at our EDC. And how can we help the small businesses? And just recently reached out to Sammy's because there's grant money for historic restaurants that's available. And I think that they would be a great target for that. So I'm trying to get, working with Sammy's, there's about a $50,000 grant that they could receive to help refurbish their business. And that's something that we can, I'm trying to also work on, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Just, okay. I'm, I'm going to ask you the question that I really want to ask and I don't want you to take this the wrong way.
Okay.
I'm, I want to know how, I appreciate what you're doing. I want to know how what you're doing interacts with Chamber of Commerce, the Castro Economic Development Council and the Gomadina folks.
Okay.
How does that interact with it and as far as that? Because I, I don't know what everybody's role is, so, and I want to talk to everybody, so I just wanted, curious.
That's a great question.
How you interact, it's, it's, I think the question is, how is your mission and what are your, what you're doing? How does it differ and contrast with what their missions are and what they're doing?
That's rephrasing it, but yes, this is basically how it works, how, how everybody works together. And are we, this is where I don't want to say, are we duplicating services or activities or are we complementing each other or what?
I would say we're definitely complementing each other.
Okay.
I work closely with the chamber.
Okay.
So if you look at their beer and wine festival, it just happened, we did all the graphic design work for them. We all also did targeted marketing for them. And I, I don't have that number in front of me, but I know that they sold a lot more tickets this year.
Sure.
Than they sold the year before. And I've also been working with them, trying to give them advice. And it's their own, they can take that advice or they can ignore it, but I do try to give them, we do try to give them marketing assistance and, and help with them. And then any kind of event that they do, we are very active in helping them. And same with the, with the Arnie's group, we work with them and we do a lot of promotions. If you look at like the tour to Castroville, we've helped them with their marketing of that event. And I have that number, I think that the number is, they've had 170% increase in registrations. And so those are kind of things that. Yes, this last year, they basically had to cap it. We had, they had us cap it, we can't handle more than these, this number of runner. And we're at a cap now, which, and that's a growth over the past three years. And so a lot of it is, I'm able to work with every business in town. And so that's where, but I can help the chamber and they're usually going to be member focused.
Right.
And the other thing that happens with, with the chamber is they're very, also very event focused. And they're working a lot with events and helping generate revenue. And they are helping businesses with marketing, but what you're going to get with us is like the branding that we do for the city of Castroville. That's something that they just don't have the resources to do.
Okay.
And so we can take that, and I think we're very efficient with our resources because of the skills that I bring to the table.
Sure.
And so we're able, and so then you're talking about, that would be, so I work with Arnie a lot. We work with the Fierrola Friday group and try to help them, we market that event and work, and, and we sit down with them. And so that's why I would say, I would say it's, they're complementary or even like we're assisting the chamber a lot.
Okay.
Now, the Gomadina question, I would say that we don't, we, we, we go to Gomadina, we're a part of Gomadina, we communicate together. But their, their goal and what they're doing, I think is very different than what my goal and what I've been charged with here in Castroville. Because I'm trying to see if I can help, I want to see our, our businesses grow. And I want to see our sales tax and our sales revenue grow and event participation grow. And what Gomadina is, they're trying to bring in large, larger businesses. They're, they're working right now with, with some of the data centers, they're working with, and so there's other places. And I don't feel like that Castroville, what we're trying to do fits in with what they're maybe, they're, what they're working on.
They're working in a different way. Yeah, I, I, I support what you're doing, I really do. I just wanted to find, just kind of ask how everybody interacts because y'all generally working for economic development of our, of our community and everyone. So how it all interacts and how it plays together. Again, old school guy, chamber, I don't want to criticize them because they do a great job with what they do. But the city, years ago, they did all the tourism, they did all of this. And the city separated from them because they didn't feel like they were getting enough attention. And that was way before you were even created with this. So it's, it's, it's just been a continual push towards what you're doing, which more targets for the city of Castro.
Yes.
Against anybody else, but it's a different thing. So I just wanted to ask how it all.
It's a great question.
Thank you.
And I think, I think we work well together.
Yes, sir.
And I think if you were to ask, I hope that they would, they would agree.
I think they would. Because they, they can concentrate on other things, I would think, but I don't know.
Well, we can help, we can like, so with the Christmas, with Old Fashioned Christmas or anything, because of what we have, the resources, what we can do for targeted marketing, it can help their event be more successful. I mean, that is a prime example.
Yes, sir.
Because Old Fashioned Christmas was just around the square.
Right.
And because of my involvement with the Fierrola Friday group and with the chamber, I said, hey, why don't we have, why don't we open up Fierrola Friday to all of the vendors? Why don't you book vendors for Fierrola Friday as well? They're going to pay, and it's one of the, it's, Fierrola Friday's most money comes from, because they basically partnered with them. They book all of the vendors, put them all down here, which increases that event, increases the attractiveness of the event. And then Fierrola Friday gets all that revenue from that night. And then they can use them, then the next day, that's just a bonus, that's, that the, the chamber gets to use those resources that they make. So they can sell a lot more booths because we said, I worked with both groups saying, hey, why don't we work together and open this, both these streets up for, for our Old Fashioned Christmas?
And I think.
I would just, is an example that came to mind.
I fully support what you're doing, I just want to wrap my.
No, no, I, I didn't, I'm not defensive at all. I feel like.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to comment on, because you talked to me about that one, your idea as far as driving you with a program, actually driving foot traffic, especially on weekends with ghost tours, QR codes, the history by building, you know, there's a gunfight in here, there's a gunfight across the street. And it's a pretty cool idea. And we think that's just him.
What you talking about that?
Oh, do you know about that?
No.
Well, so I'm working on like a ghost tour for the October.
That's cool. I think it's great.
And bringing people in to experience all of the great stories, like the ones that are in, from this building.
Yeah, well, you take, I mean, you guys are more historic than I am, but like this is the old highway that went through here and went through down.
He did. But, but so it's really, it's pretty old investment.
I am too.
But there would be a QR code on each building.
Okay.
And there.
A story to tell.
Yeah, and, and you can either go with a guide or you can.
Okay.
I'm only saying something back.
Okay, okay, thanks. Darren, please.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's kind of where we're headed. I think the, the question was reduction of services. If we had to make a reduction, I think one of the nice things about it would be, it would probably come in our, my education budget, like our, like going to that, that budget to go to events and to go to different conferences and all that stuff. This year, I've used it a great deal to get education to help benefit the city of Castroville. But that would be the, probably the, the place. And then the other one that's one of my biggest expenses is video content creation. That's just a, it's a huge investment. And that would probably be the next place that there would be a cut.
With, with, not an open ticket, but within common sense years, I'd fully support the education qualifications for our staff because that's what makes us successful. So I just want to tell you, I would, that's probably one of the, one of the few things I want to take away from people. Because I think it's important to us as a whole to have well-qualified people.
Okay.
Make my comment. David, do you have anything?
No, he doesn't have any infrastructure that's been.
CIP, CIP.
No CIP questions about this one.
I do.
Of course you do. Bob, do you have a question?
I'm wondering about the future of the store that we solve.
No, you're good.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
I got one simple one. What's your number one, if you had to ask for money?
If I had to ask for money?
Yeah. Number one thing you want to do next year?
Either capital or budget.
So there's two. You want, we're talking about budget or like its operations?
He wants to.
Give me capital, give me operation.
Well, I think that from, we increased advertising. I mean, we're, we're going to have to get out farther into the market. I mean, it's always when you had that, that first wave, it's all new, but at some point it becomes, you have to stay with it. And so, and then there's also, there's, there's additional market to, to get in. So we've, I think we've done a good job in the regular market. And anecdotal, in my meeting this morning, all locals said, hey, they had someone, that's why they came, they saw the video, they came to Castroville. I mean, so I know, I believe it is performing, but we're going to have to continue that to get, to cut through the noise. And the other, because the other problem that we're running into is if you're on social media, it's, just gets more and more cluttered with junk. Because they're trying to make more and more, they're trying to make more and more money. And so I've tried to diversify our social media and to be in other areas. And so I, I've tried to diversify our social media, and to be in other areas, and some of those are gonna be pricier. They're gonna cost more, so.
I think of the, when I was, I'm updating myself as well, we had an Apple IIc, and it was really cool, cause you know, it had these awesome games on it, uh, like Lemonade, which wasn't, my parents tricked me into thinking it was a game, it was where you had a lemonade stand, and it, it taught you the value of marketing, and how many people were, and it just, it is one of those things, it, it's dollars invested, so your budget goes up, your revenue also goes up, and there's a direct correlation, to your, your marketing budget and your revenue on the other side.
Excuse me, young man, we have no idea what you're talking about.
No, no, it's very in there, I caught it.
Okay, okay, lemonade.
You gotta have marketing budgets if you're gonna have.
What would be your ROI to, to, for, this is your capital, extra hundred grand, to market with, what would expect, X back?
I see.
What would be your measure?
Well, and I think I have that number, that we did, I did a, that, we just got our numbers from, last year, and I haven't crunched those, other than to note that we are, our tourism, we were up four percent, this is from the state, and it's just a reference point, uh, San Antonio was at three percent, so I, I always like to outperform San Antonio.
That's true.
And this is tourism.
That's from a tourism standpoint, numbers.
We can try to correlate sales tax and, and, and advertising, and we know that, that the correlation is not correct. There is inflation, there's other aspects, but when we compare, where, where it's really telling is when we compare, uh, ourselves to other cities around, that's where we see a delta, we, we, we feel like we have a right to say, the extent that we are this much higher than, uh, say, uh, Banderas, Banderas, or any other touristy area, when we show that we're, uh, we, all other things being equal, we're outperforming by this percentage, in sales tax, we feel like we can lay claim and, and plant a flag and say, we can, that was our efforts that, that made that difference, and we can definitely do that.
Sheena, do you have anything?
Uh, Bob had his up first. Okay, um, on long-term needs improvements, you put improvements at Houston and or September Square.
So, I would say that my, what I think long-term we need to do is what's already, we're already work, we already have, you know, a downtown master plan, that to me, as long as we, keep moving forward on that master plan, that would be, to me, that's the biggest investment, to not, again, lose the character of our community, but to improve, that was the largest investment that I think is the, would be the, that would be what I would push for. When someone asked me, I said, that's to me, what I think is the most important.
Well, if somebody was to ask me, and I, I, I'd have to defer to Scott, I don't wanna get weeds on this one, but, the things you're asking about there could be, in my thought, my initial thought, part of the tiers funding that we, have for the downtown area.
You, you're very welcome.
So, 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 so there may be funding for some of those things, that we can work through, but, on, on your particular stuff, in that particular areas. There's already a funding mechanism in place, potentially.
Yeah, so I offered that, that part of the slide.
Okay, would you agree to that, the potential?
Yeah, what I was gonna say is, to, to the downtown, yes, so tourism is one funding mechanism, absolutely, uh, we have to look at what it's producing, what's kicking out.
I understand.
Your ability to issue debt against what is kicking out.
I understand.
Or just use that money as a one-time.
Right.
Um, no, but I was gonna mention is, yeah, the downtown master plan is a pretty broad stroke plan, it doesn't have specific details in it, and I think what staff is looking for is, further development, which would be involve community input on September and Houston Square, but acknowledging that we need to do something. What that something is, to remain to be seen from the public, like, what do they wanna see be done there, but it's important to make those.
Yes, I do, but, okay, Mr. Lee, do you have a statement?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hamm, when, when the city brought you on board, I was thinking, is this a like-to-do, have-to-do, uh, must-do, and I've always had that question in my mind. After your presentation and the material that you've given us, the things that you've told us, the things you've accomplished, I'm a believer. That's saying something, and uh, I think you're doing a great job, and you have great enthusiasm for the job.
That's why I asked what I asked.
Which is a big, big plus, I think you're very competent, and I think, uh, if I had to rank you, rank you along with, infrastructure stuff, you'd be right, you'd be right up there with it, okay? So I'm gonna give you a pencil as your increase for the next fiscal year.
Okay.
You did a great job.
David, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks, thanks.
What are you, Russian?
I gotta tell you about Bob.
We have, we are good, while he's taking his five-minute break, we are going, that's at two ten.
We're, we're, we're turning at two ten for revenue per week.
So, at three PM, um, we will adjourn, just so you know, so, uh, we don't have time to go over everything, obviously.
So we're gonna have to remeet.
Well, we'll talk about that between the next fifty minutes, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about something else, before Leroy goes, I'm gonna go, so I'm gonna cover, I'm gonna, not, not everyone. Listen, listen, I'm just gonna cover a few items.
Wait, before he goes to the bathroom, you can do a clarification?
And then you're gonna cover your own.
Wait, seven.
Go to the bathroom.
I'm just trying to have a laugh.
He was laughing so loud.
No, it doesn't matter.
Lightning round.
That's for, that's for you.
Lightning is venturing, is the worst on everything.
I always have a feeling in question, the budget is a different matter on what I think we need to spend. And I, I would rather concentrate on what we have to do, and then look to see what it takes to do it.
Right.
I have plenty of have-to-dos that I am sick and tired of, kicking down the road.
Well, I'm hoping, the, the difficult part about this, this is typically part of my question to back you all, is, how do we take what we talked about today, and then shape the budget with, in this conversation, and, and what outcomes are we looking for from these conversations, and how do I take those? You get different, I made a list of those, we've gone along and I'm gonna repeat those, what those are. As long as I never see the words lever, leverage and transparency ever again, I'll be good. Uh, leverage and what?
Transparency.
Houston, Houston stepped out, and Phil stepped out, so you don't have a.
No, I don't have a core. We, uh, we, uh, Leroy, we're gonna go pretty dang quick.
Very quick, he's gonna go first, and I'm gonna go last.
Okay, okay, because you are the money guy that just say, okay, whatever y'all want, we'll try to make it work. Big, big words, try.
It's a pretty small word, actually.
Yeah, it's a big meaning, though.
What we have got to do service by the, is those chairs, they've been here at least twenty-something years.
Absolutely.
We just need to build all of our infrastructure out of these chairs.
They have been here a long time.
And you know, one of the things that I always love is, we look at equipment, it's just got a hundred thousand miles on, a hundred thousand miles is nothing anymore.
Right.
You know, it's two hundred and fifty, it's three hundred.
If they're properly maintained.
And like, if police car, police car is cheap, it's the equipment that costs you a fortune.
Absolutely.
All right.
We ready?
Yep.
We're back at two thirty.
Yep, let's go, who's next?
It's at YouTube and Facebook.
Mr. Dixon?
Yep.
All right, Scott.
So, I wanted to cover a couple of things, um, before Leroy gets started, he's gonna hit the highlights, um, I wanna read back, you know what, let me think about this. Nevermind, hold on, Leroy go, and then I'll, I'll, we will finish, I just, you just have to keep it twenty minutes or under.
Yeah, fifteen.
Okay, so now we're, we're back to Leroy?
I guess.
Yes. Go ahead, sir, finance department.
Going, 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 going.
Okay, so I'm gonna go over three, uh, presentations, the finance, the municipal court, and the information technology budget. And so, I'm Leroy Vidalas, I'm the finance director here for the city of Castroville, and I'm gonna go probably focus on the core services that we provide. Uh, we provide, uh, basically the financial management and accounting, uh, for, for the entire city. Um, we, anywhere from like payroll administration to audit and compliance, debt service, uh, just to name a few. So, um, just right quick, as far as payroll, we, uh, run twenty-six, uh, pay periods for the entire year, and as far as accounts payable, we process anywhere, uh, probably close to two thousand vendor payments, uh, this past year, so, um, and Sheena and Phil, y'all can attest to that, we now come and sign the checks, there's always a big old stack of checks to sign.
I was gonna ask you about that really quick, do, do I need to say something to be a signature?
We're working with the bank, so we're gonna figure out who wants to be on the signature cards, so we can update those.
Yeah, two council members or four?
Uh, right now we have, uh, well, it's actually just two right now, yeah.
But whoever's on it is signatures, okay, so who signs your checks?
Uh, typically it's Sheena and Phil, and then, uh, prior, was the prior mayor, and then either myself or Deborah from the, uh, city staff.
One and one.
Yes, sir.
One elected official, one staff.
Or, or it can be two, uh, elected officials.
Yeah, depending on what it is.
Yep.
Okay, okay, I just curious, cause it used to be one and one, so I didn't know.
But.
We'd prefer to have as many people who are able to sign as possible, uh, on council, cause we're not limited on how many.
No, I understand, I understand, I, I'm, I'm, I'm way back in time, it had two elected officials and, uh, basically the city administrator and city secretary at that time before we.
I don't sign any of them.
Before, we had a finance director, so it was two, two, and it was a staff and an elected, had to sign everything, I was just curious.
Yep. Everything has to be two signatures, but, but it, it can be two council people.
The bank doesn't require two, that's a, that's a self-inflicted requirement.
I believe so, that's correct.
But also, it's voluntarily, if you'll put your name on the thing, to be one of the city council signatures.
Okay, I, I didn't know.
They would prefer, everybody, for everybody to have, but if someone can't because of work, whatever, then.
Sure, yeah, okay, so whenever you work that out, I'd like to be on the signature.
Yes, sir, uh, just right quick, I'm gonna talk about our vision, um, our vision is to lead Castroville towards long-term financial sustainability, through strategic planning and innovation and public engagement, and so, um, right quick, gaps in service. Uh, one of the things is, you know, limited, uh, financial outreach and training, um, limited staffing capacity, I, I, would like to have maybe, at some point in the future, not now, but in the future, is maybe having somebody like part-time work with us on a, like a budget analyst or financial analyst to do like long-term, uh, forecasting for us, and so that's just kinda my request at this point in time. But, um, other than that, we, we have a really good, hardworking staff, I, I wanna say thank you to the staff, because they work very, very hard every day, and, uh, they enjoy working here for, for the city, so I wanna thank them publicly.
Do the, do the folks that collect payments up here, do they assign to you?
Uh, they're actually, uh, Public Works pays them, but as far as day-to-day, they are assigned to me, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, cause I, I, I gotta, I asked that the other day, and one said you, and I said, oh, okay, I was just curious, thank you.
Yes, sir, uh, as far as reduction in service, our, our current budget's about two hundred and thirteen thousand, so if we were to do like a ten percent reduction, it'd be about twenty-one thousand dollars, and so services areas that could be effective are, are, um, maybe reduce overtime possibly, um, even as far as the audit prep, uh, support that could be reduced, um, just to name a few.
How much overtime's typically in finance?
It, it just depends on the, like, it, it, we had one of our staff members out, she was out for probably about six months, because she had a, she broke her, her.
But, but it's not a, it's a non-normal thing.
No, 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 it's only just varies every once in a while, yeah, so, um, next one, any service level enhancements. Uh, as I mentioned, hiring the additional staff, maybe upgrade our financial software, right now we're on Inco nine, and there's an Inco ten, we're on nine, and definitely would like it to be maybe cloud-based, because right now, everything has to be done internally, uh, here at the office, um, so, you know, uh, we can't do, we can't go in through virtually the VPN, uh, we would have to log in that way to, get onto the actual system, if we wanted to, from outside the network, but if we had something cloud-based, you know, our directors could log in from home and check, you know, real-time balances if they needed, or, or whatnot.
So you're not cloud-based, you're all server-based?
Correct.
Okay.
So, um, and I'm not sure with Inco ten, if it's the same thing, if it's server-based, or if it's cloud-based.
You have options, you can either do.
We, we, we just converted all of ours to cloud-based, so I was just, yeah, I was just asking.
Um, and again, maybe develop a multi-year financial model that has like a three to five-year financial forecast, um, so, um, I'm gonna keep going, cause we have a couple more to do, as far as CIP projects, uh, between Scott and I, we worked on this, maybe like, the city hall remodel to address the space issues.
What?
There's about nine employees here total, and we're kinda already like, jam-packed in this office, we're sharing offices, so, if we were to hire someone in the future, we figure out, we would just figure out a place where to put them at, and so maybe, you know, in long-term, maybe upgrade the, uh, the city hall, and maybe an additional payment kiosk, I know Mr. Lee, you mentioned the kiosks, like, no, but I do wanna say though, we process anywhere from like three fifty to four hundred transactions every month at the kiosk, and so, uh, anywhere from three hundred and fifty to four hundred. So people are using, they're taking advantage of the kiosk, and so I know it's convenient, at first, they were just like, I wanna go there, but, they, they do take advantage of it, so.
Some of your employees driving through there for three hours, putting something in the machine, and coming back to the office.
Uh, that's not true.
And then the last thing would be, like, maybe to go like, uh, did, uh, digitalize all of our records, go paperless. Scott always has, ever since he got here, he's like, I'll print way too much, and so I'm a paper person, I like to print everything, just because I have to, but we, we want to go paperless, I mean.
You can thank him for your notebooks, I would not have printed it, I know, I would not have printed it.
So anyway, but, uh, those are just our feature project for the finance department, uh, we do lots more, but I know this is very high level, so I'm gonna kinda, go ahead and go on to the, uh, court, if, if you don't mind, cause I know we're stuck on time, of course, now this won't work. All right, uh, oh, actually IT.
Yeah, let's do IT.
Okay, so is this some of the core services, um, that we provide, uh, we know, we contract that with VC three, this is what, the, third year with VC three, second or third year?
I feel like it's the second, but do you know what our total contract cost is, by any chance?
With VC three, it's about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-five thousand a year.
And that compared to what we were spending with HTS, uh, I, I wanna say HTS was a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty, in that range.
How much is your contract?
So HTS was a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty, um, VC three is a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-five.
How many servers do you have?
Well, we have two at the PD, one at, uh, probably Works, one here, plus they will.
So, how many, how many, how many guests, how many, the reason I'm asking you this, I'm trying to compare apples and apples. Uh, also, they're out of Midland, right?
No, no, that's just where that, that one guy, Joshua, who's now our account manager. No, they are national, and I don't know where their home office is, but I wanna say it's on the east coast.
Well, I asked you yesterday about an issue with this computer, and I was in another meeting, and I said, it's sitting on my desk, hooked up the internet, it's on, y'all go ahead and remote in and do what you gotta do, and they looked, they, they told me, says, we don't remote in. So they don't remote in to work on your system?
They do, they, cause, uh, we submit a ticket, they get online with this, we chat, and then they say, can I have access to your system, we tell them yes, and then they're.
So you have to actually be at your computer and say, here, you have access, you can't, you can't leave your computer, and they just.
So they can't, even though it's on the computer as an admin, they can't remote in and log in under the admin?
You have to be there in front of the computer to say, yes, I give you permission.
Cause they always want your.
It's a security thing, I guess.
They're out of Columbia, South Carolina.
I got it, and I, so I was just curious, do they, they, uh, they push updates and all this other stuff, and, and backup your system and everything with that?
Yes, sir, the only things that they, they don't provide is our, they don't do our phone service, that's HTS, that's how manages phone service, but anything IT related, it's VC three.
Okay, thank you.
So our wonderful streaming.
Not the streaming, that's.
Well, they've been helping, they have been helping us with it, or at least try, trying to, uh, but, I, I, anyway, we'll talk.
That's a whole different issue, thank you.
That's fine. Um, as far as any gaps in service for the IT, there's no dedicated internal IT staff, so if anything comes up, we gotta call VC three. We try to work it out ourselves, but most of the time, they want, you, you need to get a, you need a password to get on to, if you wanna install any softwares, or if you wanna do anything, on the computer.
One more question with the contract, do you have, uh, every time you call them, does the meter start, or do you have a certain amount of hours?
No, it's, it's all embedded into the contract, and so we can call them, uh, they're not twenty-four seven, but we can call them, we can submit a ticket online, and then they'll respond, say, hey, we'll get it going, and most of the time, they'll actually call, they'll call you back and say, hey, I'm so-and-so, what's the issue, what's the problem?
But at no additional cost, it's part of the service agreement.
Correct, now, if they need to come on-site, that's a different story.
I understand.
They actually are, they are twenty-four seven.
Okay.
They are?
Yeah, yeah, because I, it called me at three AM, so we have a power outage.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Uh, but that would be the biggest thing, is there, we have nobody on staff that is, that can, you know, remote into printers, or connect printers, or what, or whatnot, so, that'd be, the biggest one, um, as far as tracking measures of success, you know, they, they help us take our resolutions, they do provide, uh, a report, uh, when we ask for it, or that can, they can provide it monthly, as far as how many tickets were open, what they closed, what the resolution was, and so forth, so, that's helpful to us.
Real quick, when you see an email from Know Before, that, that's not spam, that is from them, that, the Know Before, K-N-O-W-B-four, it's part of the cyber training, you all as, uh, folks who have, anybody with a city email account gets that training notification, and I think once, it's quarterly, and they have different training that they, they require you to do, so just be aware, that's come before, people think that it's, uh, some kinda spam. Know, Know Before is legitimate training, that they're trying to get you to. People think that it's, uh, some kind of spam. No, Know Before is legitimate training that they're trying to get you to do to protect the city. All the employees, everybody with a, an email address is asked to take that training.
I think well.
Does, does.
And every year we, we do the cybersecurity training as well.
Access is, if anybody uses a computer.
Correct.
Stuff, it's according by law, that's.
Correct. And then every year we do the cybersecurity training as well.
Who can call and take it in? Anybody or is it only designated people can authorize it?
Usually it's anybody, any employee.
No, it's anybody, but if there's gonna be, because our, again, our contract covers the, the individual use. They are in effect our IT office, so we want people to be able to call IT if they need to help, but if it, if they want to order a new laptop or something like that.
Different issue.
That's different, uh, which they can also do and they do, they do, but that is, uh, it used to all come through me and I was like, I, I can't, I don't, I need this to go to the department heads. So now the department heads are able to, to do.
Well, I don't have a problem doing that, but I told you before and I will honor that. I will go everything through you, but I just wanted to ask if anybody who just got.
Yeah, anybody, including y'all. So if you have an IT-related issue, you can call VC three and say, hey, I'm not, I can't get this to work on my server.
I bring it to Deborah.
Uh, yeah, I'll go to y'all.
And then really the.
The, young lady named Amy, the services are.
No.
When I got my machine, there was a woman that came to this building.
Oh, okay.
Figured stuff. It was a couple of months ago, so I thought her name was Amy.
We have a gentleman by the name Malik who works for VC three that comes out typically, he's, he's the most local person, but they have.
You got hacked by Amy.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Okay, go ahead.
So, okay, and then the last one for this, for, uh, CIP would be just the server upgrades is what we need, so, I mean, it's important. So other than that, speaking of, speaking of service, server upgrades, there's two things. P, Public Works, full public works and the city servers are past when they, they, they really should have been in the budget to, to fix this year. Um, I'm working with VC three, they delivered a quote to us today. Did, did you see what that amount was yet or not?
No, not yet.
Okay, yeah, I don't look at it either. Um, but I think, I can't risk thirty or forty thousand dollars, split between the two. We do have budgeted line items for, um, IT, I just need to look and see how much we budgeted, but those are things that I'll, I, I may be pulling the trigger on to get done, we need to get those.
You said fulcrum with the public works, you use them?
Fulcrum? No, no, I just said, Public Works, their server needs to be replaced and our server needs to replace. One of them is like from two thousand and, I don't know, they're both very old, sixteen years old.
I misunderstood you.
Yeah.
The last thing on IT is we need to develop like an IT master plan that includes the, uh, who's up as far as recycle and, and retention and so forth. And so that we don't have, but we definitely need to work on something like that.
As far the, the replacement.
Replacing schedule.
Hardware and software, so we are, that, that's something that HTS was really good about. I met with our new, we just got assigned a new guy out of Midland, Joshua is our account rep. We met, Leroy and I, we met with him yesterday, right? They explained together yesterday, um, and that was one of the things I told him is like, when you, when we hired you, this was something we had a spreadsheet, we talked about all the, the plans and what we're gonna do and we haven't revisited that and it's been two years. And that's something we should be revisiting at least annually, but probably semi-annually.
Yes.
And I know that some of you have asked, like, what, where are we at on, on hardware replacements, or it might probably Bob, because he has all the questions, but, um, so I am working with them to get me that list. I can, I can share that with you all. Uh, sufficient to say that there is, or suffice to say that there is, uh, a Windows eleven, we, we need to upgrade all our machines to Windows eleven, we are working with VC three to do that. We do have the sufficient funds in our budget to do that. We have to replace a certain number of machines, I don't remember how many, that are non-compliant, they won't work with Windows eleven. One of them ironically is the laptop I use, which is a, that laptop is perfectly good laptop, but it won't support Windows eleven.
Right.
We're gonna have to get a new laptop for that. Um, and then we're, they're upgrading the others. Uh, the, the ones that are compatible, they will upgrade to Windows eleven, so that's gonna be budgeted and taken care of. And like I said, I'm also gonna look at the server quote. If it's something I need to bring in council, I will, but.
Do these folks also manage your, uh, your, uh, email systems?
Yes.
Yes.
They do?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep, yes, sir.
If I'm allowed.
Sir.
Getting longer to do here, but, uh, he's, he's already covered some of my points, but I am, uh, one of those people that's very leery of sending, getting our critical information and giving it somewhere else for somebody else to take care of. Because.
We do local backup.
Okay, and I would always say that we needed to have local backup, because if things go to pot and you're counting all of the cloud to make your stuff work, and it's only a matter of time till the class happens.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're backed up five different ways. So we've got hardware, we've got local servers, and then we've got.
Remote.
And I'm saying, there are incredible things you need to be able to handle it within your office. Something that I had said to, uh, Mr. Dixon was, my wife is now on the school board for the Bonita Valley Independent School District. I've been on a bond committee out there, she's been on a couple, and those people are.
Can we swap?
What's that?
Nothing.
Sorry. Uh, I asked her if she could come today, same major address. Anyway, uh, she's smarter than that, but, uh, they are, they are so in tune with what's happening within their district and the surrounding areas that they could tell you anything and everything about the development and so forth. But the thing I keyed in on their last meeting was, they were looking at the house bills, uh, or the senate bills, our legislature, how they would impact the city's revenue and.
The school district's revenue.
They had a bunch of bond money that there were ideal times in order to commit that, so the new laws coming down did not negatively impact the way they spent the money. And I, and when we talk about long-range forecasting, maybe think of possibly we could be a little more attuned to making the right financial decisions at the right time based upon the laws and other kinds of research we did about what's happening with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. My last one is, I'm gonna go for court right quick, uh, as far as the major core services that they provide. They handle all the Class C misdemeanor and ordinance violations. And so as you notice, for the past probably three months, I've been starting to include a, a court report in the monthly financial reports, and you can see the number of tickets that have increased tremendously. But, um, again, they, uh, are, they handle all Class C and any ordinance violations. And so, um, I'm gonna go ahead and stop there. Is there any questions?
Wait, wait, I gotta ask a question of the court. I just want to ask a question. The other day, when I was here, when they were having court, they were lined up and down the hallway. Does that mean this room was full?
Yes.
That's overflow.
Yes, that's over.
Busy dockets.
We have two dockets, uh, twice a month, one at ten o'clock, one at one o'clock.
Twice a month?
We went to, yes, sir. We had, we had to because we, uh,
Okay.
The highest dock we had in a couple of months ago was over five hundred.
Who's the municipal judge?
Judge, uh, Tom Kate from.
Tom Kate, I got him, I know, Tom, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, any.
Leroy, how much do the, uh, fines do the city get to keep? How much percentage?
It's about sixty, forty maybe. I mean, we keep a little bit more than what the, the state does, but I mean, every month we do have a report that shows that a lot of it does go to the state. And so, uh, but I do want to say that we've already exceeded our projected revenue for the year on the court side, so.
And that basically is helping pay for the.
Okay, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, one more thing, says, do you guys see an uptick or anything in, in people asking for jury trials?
Um, we do, we have, we have pre-jury coming up in August, and so we haven't had that in a long time.
Right.
Uh, but they do talk to the prosecutor, they talk to the judge, and so I know we have one coming up in August.
That's an added expense on the city, but people have a right to do that.
Correct, yes, sir. That's correct.
One of those is the code compliance one, right?
Yeah.
And the other two are traffic ticket?
I believe so. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're good. All right, thank you. All right, Scott, so you.
Great, all right. So what I want to do, a couple of things, um, we only have, uh, thirty minutes.
Five minutes.
I'm gonna, I, I want to do a little bit of justice to, to parks and what they're handling. Uh, I'm not gonna even try to present what he put together. You have it in your handouts. I, I will just go back to what I said earlier about Honda versus us. They have twelve people in their parks. Now granted, they also have a lot, they have a, some really big park areas.
Yeah.
Uh, they own thousands of acres, uh, so it's a little different. Yeah, they, they have, their airport was much, 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 much larger than ours. Uh, so they had like a two-thousand acre airport versus our four-hundred-and-fifty or whatever acre airport. Um, and then they have, the city has land, another two-thousand wherever around it, and they have that rail park and they have the golf course and they have all this, just a lot of land on what is their north-west side of town. Um, but that's another service area. Again, thinking about it at the high level, it parks, um, what level of service do we want? Because I will tell you, they struggle, they really struggle to have the trails in a great shape. And I know Phil, for the longest time, I would get weekly calls, sometimes daily calls about, hey, I'm just went through on this walk and this hasn't been done and that haven't done, this hasn't been done. And that's gotten better. I hope, Phil, you've seen it get better. But there's, part of that has been, uh, they were doing facilities, so Parks was helping all the other departments with their facility issues. And I, I kind of had a, a come-to-Jesus meeting with, with Jonah and said, look, you have got to stop doing that, it's making you look bad. You're helping others and I want them to collaborate, so I want to encourage collaboration and teamwork. That's the good thing, but not when it comes at the sacrifice of, of one of our, our service areas. And that's really what was happening, is what I saw happening. So, um, that has changed some, but they, because they're such a small department, if anybody goes out, so they've had a couple of folks who've had, whether it's deaths in the family or surgeries or other, other reasons, uh, medical issues, who've had to been out for, had to be out for extended periods of time. And, um, that leaves just, you know, a couple of people to do everything. And it isn't realistic. So that's one of the areas I really want us to think about as a city is where, where do we see parks and what service, what service level do we really want to try to attain? And then what are you prepared to do to, to get to that level? Because in my mind, it boils down to people. And I, I think you could, you could add three more people to parks and you would notice a difference, but you wouldn't, that's with not adding a single park. Your trails would look a lot better all the time, your parking lots would be clean, you know, you'd have uh, just a, a much better level of service. You'd probably have your downtown areas more, more attentively taken care of and trash being emptied on a regular basis and different things that a parks crew would normally do in all of the public areas in town. So, uh, that's just food for thought. I have a list of things that I want to make sure we cover before we leave, and then I'm gonna go to my summary of items that I've written down, um, as we've gone through, throughout today. Um, so first, this is no particular order, uh, bonds. Councilman Lee just mentioned bonds and, uh, that reminded me that our financial advisor did have a message for me to share with you all, um, today. The, uh, there was legislation that looked very, very negative for cities and he was urging that we, we, you know, for the water rail project and if we're willing to go do general fund borrowing of some kind, that we, he still thinks that we ought to do that sooner than later, but he was really concerned because the legislation was going through. The legislation was going through was basically limiting the capacity of cities to issue debt without going to, to voters. And in some cases, regardless of whether voters approved or not, like they, they were capping, the state was saying, nope, you can't have more than twenty percent or some, some arbitrary number.
Yeah, they were capping your ability to issue debt.
Well, we're already over that cap. We're already over that cap when you look at their percentage, what their, their percentage target was. So that would, that would limit our ability to issue debt like for, until the rest of the debt was paid off. Um, so that would have been a, a real issue for us. We would have wanted to issue quickly. Now that did not pass, however, um, the sponsors of that bill are still trying to tie it to other bills that are going through, so it's not like it's completely dead. That bill's dead, but, but there could always be some element of it that comes forward. So he wanted to just pass along that, um, you know, if there are projects that you want to do that are going to be bond-funded, then, uh, we need to, doing those sooner than later would be better. Um, I believe the next, I took a look at your calendar, I know it's in June, I don't know if it's first meeting or second meeting, is when you'll start taking action on the water rail project, because you basically have already, uh, you'll be issuing a, a notice of intent or you've already issued it, that to, uh, to issue debt for that project. That would be a good time to do the, um, if you're gonna do general fund debt, that'd be a good time to do the same thing. Say, hey, we're gonna issue some debt. You don't have to be specific with what you're gonna use it for, you can, you can say, we want to use it for these projects and then pick one of those projects to do, and it could be streets and parks and it can be fairly generic. Um, the amount of borrowing that's available to you is between three and a half and four and a half billion in the general fund. And that would be assuming you leave the rate at point five-two-three-three, is that where we're at? If you left the rate flat. Now, we all know that, that when you leave the rate flat, it's not actually leaving it flat. I mean, it leaves the rate flat, but if a valuation goes up, if my house value goes up, my taxes are gonna go up, even though my rate, my rate didn't change. It's gonna go up by the difference in my value, right? And I, I, I only say that because people kind of accuse me of saying, well, you're not, because I say we aren't raising the rate, which is true. Yeah, but I'm paying more. Yeah, you're right. If you're, if your value went up, you're paying more. Now that said, there are other taxes that will be coming down, as, uh, Councilman Lee pointed out with, uh, the, the new laws for this school district taxes. Those are being cut, uh, pretty drastically. That was one item.
Question on that.
Yes.
Aren't they proposing, uh, to increase your deduction?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Only for school districts?
Yeah, that's school districts, not cities. Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying. So people's taxes, you know, to the extent that our, one, we're already a much smaller portion of the bill. Two, it really depends on their individual situation, whether their appraisal went up or down or stayed the same. Uh, because believe it or not, not everybody's houses are going up in value. There are, when I talked to Jeanette, um, that, there are, uh, values that are going down in some areas in the same flat in others, so.
It's amazing because the, the, what's projected here in the core, the, the values per lot went down.
Yeah.
Mine went up over ninety-one thousand dollars.
And that's pretty interesting, the values, the praise values of the lots went down.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine went up ninety-one thousand dollars.
The house went up, but the lots went down.
Yeah, so, um, that's bond, that answered your question on bond? Okay, that's bonds. Uh, June thirteenth, this is in no particular order, y'all. June thirteenth, Fiesta Texas, that's our, uh. That's a Friday, so, uh, Fiesta doesn't open till like eleven on Friday. Um, so what we're planning on doing is a breakfast on, at some point in time before that. I'm still trying to figure out the location and where, whether we're doing it at Fiesta. They, anyway, it's a whole thing. Um, but I need to know if y'all are planning on coming. Um, and if so, if you're planning on bringing guests, the city pays for the employees and the council members. If you bring guests, you're responsible to pay for the cost of the guests.
How long too, then? How long, how long is it?
No.
How long?
We're not doing that for them either. Uh, it's as long as you want. So the, the idea is we will, at the breakfast, we're gonna recognize our tenured employees. So if you just, if you don't want to go to Fiesta, but you want to go to the breakfast, I'll make sure you get a way to get to the breakfast. But the breakfast will, will recognize our tenured employees, will do all the employee appreciation. And then the idea is let them go and they're gonna go have fun at Fiesta for as long as they want. They can stay till the park closes.
You're funding the entry fee.
Yes.
Okay.
They get a meal, they get, uh, a souvenir cup, a meal, it's a package, right?
Okay.
So they get their parking and, and whatnot.
And where's the breakfast at Fiesta?
I'm gonna figure that out. It's either gonna be at Fiesta if they're gonna cater it, or, did you find an answer to that yet, Patty? Yeah, okay. Or, or it'll be at a restaurant like across the street.
You sent it to us in an email already, right?
I sent you the, the, just the information about the.
The date?
The day, the day, but not really the details, because I'm still working on the details.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the timing of the breakfast. Like I said, I think the breakfast will be no more than an hour to an hour and a half before eleven AM, so somewhere around.
Rest of the work.
Yeah, nine-thirty or ten on Friday is when we would try to have that breakfast. Okay.
So one last, but I'm just asked, does city council mayor go to these functions like this?
It's hit and miss. The mayor has gone to almost all of them, um, but usually only for a brief, not, but like literally for, for thirty minutes to an hour at most. Like you might sit and have lunch with us and then leave, or you might just be there for the, the awards and then leave. Um, but y'all, again, y'all are invited to do what you like, yeah.
Is this the annual recognize the employee thing you're talking about?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Because we used to have it, we had it across the street, you go provide the food and, and, and say some things to the employees, I'm sure appreciate that kind of stuff. And all of council would invite them to come. Of course, the mayor would give the rest of stuff and then everything was paid for, but I, I like the part of giving them the dig, cook this and stuff, but.
Yeah.
There had always been a thing where annually we would recognize people. And then there are usually a couple of other times a year that have, they would cook stuff, you know, barbecue down at Public Works and there'd be a big spread put out here down at the park. That usually about, a couple of times a year that would happen.
And so we still do that. I sent an email about that, but we still do a, a cowboy breakfast, we do a Christmas event, we do a Thanksgiving event. And those, council gets invited to those, and generally council, because they're local, y'all come out to those and, and, uh, say hi and shake hands and stuff. All right. Um, May twenty-eighth, um, I'm, the more I think about it.
Look what happened.
What's that?
Make it five, but, excuse me, I shouldn't say that.
Well, what I'm gonna suggest is that we just move, we'd not try to hold a separate special meeting.
Five-twenty-seven.
Let's have, what? No, 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 please don't. I've already recreated that attempt twice. Um, no, what I was gonna suggest is, I've got a, honestly, I don't know that I can get everything lined up by next Wednesday anyway. And there's nothing pressing that says we have to go to executive session, executive session now. I'd rather give my, give ourselves some more time. So what I was going to suggest is let's just move that to June eight, to the next regular council meeting, the first meeting in June.
I'm fine.
June ten?
What, June tenth?
June ten.
I can't remember. That first meeting in June and, and by then, because we will have talked. That first meeting in June and and by then, because we will have talked on the 27th about what time we're starting meetings. I think the intention is to move the meetings to start at 6:00, the regular meeting.
Yep.
And then we can talk about mayor, what time to set that executive session, whether it's at 5:00 or 4:00.
If if people are available, I'd like to start at 4:00. If not, we can go to 5:00, but that's availability based on everybody.
You'd prefer 5:00?
I prefer 5:00 or later.
Okay, 5:00.
It, you want to give yourself an hour for executive session, minute, minimum kind of, but usually we are done in an hour. And if we only have an hour, we'll be done in an hour.
Sure, no, I understand.
But if you give yourself less time than that, you're going to probably run into.
I would, I would appreciate that if everyone was just so we can all have a meeting with attorney to go over or whatever we need to go over. Kind of bring the news up, up to speed and we can discuss things a little bit.
I I'm sorry, I've walked through a doorway since we talked about this last. What what is the 28th?
The 28th is nothing.
Okay, what 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 was the 28th?
I was, I was asking for an executive session on the 28th, a special meeting.
Just as a general catch up.
Because, because on the 27th, we have a regular meeting and I did not want to push, I don't want to push meetings late if I want. So I was trying to separate it out into two different meetings, but I'm saying no to the 28th, let's push it on the other.
Okay.
So the 28th was an attempt to try to separate those out to minimize staying late.
Yeah, so see, what we'll do is get an update from on the CPSC dispute and then we'll talk about our, uh, our development agreements. And there's some developments in the development agreements that we need to talk about. So, um, again, this is in a particular order. I just kind of wrote these down as I, as it came to me. Uh, great staff. I hope, I hope one of the things that that you witnessed today is just, you really have some really top notch folks in the different departments. Um, I was very proud of how they performed. As I mentioned, this was not, this was not easy. It was, it was hard for me. I know what it was, I I know what it felt like because I made myself go through the same process. And it was difficult to think outside of the realm of like numbers and say, okay, but I'm an administrator. What what services do I, how do citizens perceive my services? And how do I translate that into value for the council? And then how do I take that and translate it into like a policy decision, a policy decision? So this was a big ask. I hope it was helpful. Um, I was pleased, you know, pleased with the conversation y'all had, the questions you were asking, the level that you were at, y'all pretty much, you stayed up here the whole time. But now the next step, and this is my next steps, uh, comment on my sheet, is how do we take the conversation that we had today and turn it into a policy discussion related to the budget? And essentially what what you should be go home and think about and what what I need, I need you to ask yourselves is, okay, I heard about services today. Was there anything that made my, made me go, aha, I wonder what, wonder if we should do this? Or here's something I hadn't thought about with respect to that service area, that thing that we're doing? Um, and am I generally happy with the services that that I'm receiving? If not, what would I, would I like to see changed? And how do I make the budget? How do I, what can I do to the budget to make that change? And that can either be a cut, you know, I I just think we're wasting too much time and effort on this thing. And that's what we should think about, not money, like time and effort for what's coming out of it. Just this doesn't, it seems to be.
You know, the way of saying it, we do, we have to individually then collectively decide what we believe is a need versus a want. Take care of the needs and then address as many as wants as we can.
Yeah.
And prioritize.
Yeah.
And prioritize the one question. Huh?
Rack and stack.
Yeah, that's my opinion.
Bob has a question.
Sir, uh, excellent point. What about if you basically made a little list of those things that were presented to us today and asked those three questions? So we'll all have a similar set of references to talk to when we come about, you know, are you happy with this? Do you think we need to make some improvements, whatever they are? And we could kind of fill in the blanks, but we got a, we got a skeleton to fill out that addresses specifically what was addressed and asked for.
It it's in preparation for further discussion.
Be kind of an outline, you like it, don't like it, what would you like to see done?
Yeah.
And then we all got the same document.
So Mr. Lee, for context, when you're saying like Prince's wastewater, you talked about a fermentator, right?
Then he might, you know, the big items on there, but just.
We had, I got a list.
Ring your bells. Yeah, but all of them, make those.
Yeah, I'm going to, what I thought I'd do is I'm going to read through to you, see if you have some to add. And then I was going to take that and send it out as a document to you all following this meeting. It's not exactly what Bob just asked for though, so we'll have to do that. The other thing I wrote down is, uh, PD internet, just so you know, update while we were sitting here. They now have close to one gig of of download. That's, uh, and I don't know if that's upload to, they were having issues with upload, yeah, with rise.
Is it consistent?
Well, that's the thing is they.
I got one terabyte.
They had some hardware issues, it turned out. So all, we had all our locations checked, including this one. And the only, the only real broadband related issue was at the PD. And it was obvious they were having some kind of issue because it just wasn't, it it was way too, it was way lower than it should have been. Anyway, that's all been fixed today. The the chief's very, very happy. Hopefully it stays that way. We'll see if it stays fixed. Um, he also got an update to me about sirens. Um, there's 17 sirens in the county. I still don't know how many are here, but apparently they need, they need new batteries and are going to be tested. And, uh, Mark Chabwick is on top of that. Um, but I I will, there's more digging we have to do there. Um, and the other thing I was going to mention is despite an error code on here that says your camera's not working, you need to give something, do something with the camera. I've been independently verified that the sound and video have been working this entire time.
Oh, boy.
So.
Which system is that, current one we have?
This is the current one. This is Vimeo, but it isn't, I mean, it's, so in other words, it's on, it's live streaming the way it should.
Sure.
But the interface that I'm looking at, y'all can come around and look at it in a minute if you like. It shows a little exclamation mark above the camera and the camera is crossed out. And if I click on that, it says it's not working. I sent all that to Bob Peterson while we were here earlier. So, uh, let me go through this list with the, uh, five minutes that remain. Under community development, add, uh, posting requirement for, these are some notes that may or may not be budget related, just things that that. So add posting requirement for permits. This would be a policy change, it'd probably require ordinance, right?
Okay.
Uh, because she said that wasn't in our current ordinances. Automatically notify code compliance when permit is issued, uh, so we can change our processes to improve that. Focus on time, so this is, I think, your comment, mayor, focus on time and responses and quality service.
Right.
In other words, getting your permits, like that should be our measure for success. How are we serving?
Are we meeting the needs of the, of our customers?
Right. Airport, uh, look, well, first off, anything else from community development? From your notes, Houston or anybody else?
No, you got one.
No, I don't sense no.
Okay. Uh, airport, look for airport engineering studies, uh, RE drainage. So I'm going to look and see what's there. Uh, add STEM building to CIP. Um, that's it that I have for airport. Was there more or something different related?
I think that's pretty much it. I mean, there's some things about that. I mean, I, like everyone else, I'd like to, when there was a mention the other day about the, uh, airport, uh, land lease contracts coming up. I like to look at them because there might be, there might be some potential ways to increase revenue by just making some tweaks.
Yeah, so we didn't, it didn't come up during our discussion, but one of the things.
Come out, but I just thought I'd.
Yeah, one of the things that I I've expressed before, when when David was here, the count, the staff made a pretty strong argument that, look, when these leases come due, if they come due during the middle of the year.
Right.
The market changes.
Yes.
During the year and we should give the the airport manager the freedom to raise the rate or lower the rate if needed. I see the double thumbs.
I'll get a vote on that to council.
Yeah, so that's, that's the direction we leaned when he was here and that's what he was doing. Because he had lived through the experience as an employee of an, of a hanger that remained unleased for like an entire year because the the pricing was wrong on it. And when he finally got control or do it, that we had at least within a month, right? Um, and you know, it's the idea of, you know, like you're throwing money away, uh, by not having someone in that, in that space. So, but that said, staff is is here to serve, you know, what council wants to do. So if y'all want to have a greater say in whatever the rates are out there or the individual leases as they come forward.
Sure.
We just need to probably have that on a, a council agenda to have some input on on what you, that procedure needs to look like.
I thought that wasn't part of this discussion, this was different.
It's a budget discussion. A lot of these items I'm bringing up came up.
But we can talk.
Because I have a whole bit on that and I didn't feel as appropriate here.
Good, well, I'm, I'm, I'm very proud of you for actually thinking about what is appropriate, isn't it? It didn't always work for you today, but I'm glad that you're having those thoughts.
Yeah, maybe I'll order for you right now.
Library, um, seek grants, that's the, that's the note I made and I think it was kind of your closing. Yeah, it was kind of your closing comment.
Yes.
Um, I need to know, we do need direction on facility. I didn't write it down, but you know, what do you want to do? Do you want to expand the library rates at or build a new one at some point?
Yeah.
Or both.
That's, that's, that's another discussion.
I think expanding the library is, makes a lot of sense, but maybe that's where the secret grants comes in too. Because as you pointed out, that's what Honda did, they were able to get a grant to expand their library. Electric, move annual, um, oh, shoot. Man, uh, maintenance, I can't remember my handwriting. Uh, move annual maintenance to CIP, CIP to budgets. In other words, and this was kind of a recurring theme, that where there's annualized items, ma, routine items that showed up in the CIP, make sure they're in the budget as well.
Right.
Um, prior assessment, uh, included training for future self-assessments, that's something you mentioned prior. So I'm going to look into that. I want to understand who did that prior, if that was Snyder, who we're using now.
Oh, he's our assistant.
Yeah, 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 so I'm going to look into that.
Well, yeah, yeah, the, we, we, we should have from the past, and I know it needs to be updated on a regular basis, but we should have a poll inventory. About what's on each poll and who's on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, it just needs, it needs to be updated.
Yes, sir.
But there are things that maybe policy wise, we talked about, you know, we we should be having these, these companies, they should identify themselves when they attach their.
Right.
Okay, make it easier for us. Uh, is there anything else for electric or library?
Nope.
No.
Uh, gas, um, quest was to have Javier brief council. Um, I'm going to weigh in just a little bit. We're past the point of blaming CPS or there's nothing fruitful that's going to come from that discussion. And I will tell you what the legal outcome would be is simply, hey, we were the owner. They were just a contract employee. And if we didn't tell them to do it, they're under no obligation to do it.
That's correct.
And it's shame on us for not having someone like Simon looking over our shoulder, which is really what should have happened. We should have had someone looking over his shoulder to make sure that CPS was doing what they were supposed to do. And the city was aware of what its responsibilities were as an owner and we just, we weren't doing that.
I agree with you.
I would, I'd love Javier, though, to brief us on, give us a briefing on the real current state of our, of our system.
Yeah, well, I want to.
We can plan.
I'd like to talk to him about him and John first because like I was in his office, asking for things, I was like, what I'm doing? And he was, he's doing a lot of training. So I don't, I, I'd like to talk to John before we do that because.
This won't be soon.
To see if they have a full understanding of what it is because they're still way involved in the learning curve.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. They're still, they're still, he's still catching up.
Yeah.
Um, but having him brief council at some point, move the temp to the annual budget. Uh, consider temp cost versus all electric. So when we're, when we're looking at temp, let's not just say, hey, we're going to do this because we have a gas system and we have to do it. I will tell you this, that is the, that's his, as long as we own the gas system, we have to do the temp. There, we don't have, they don't give us the luxury of saying, hey, what if you went all electric on that block?
Yeah.
They're going to say, no, you have to replace that line, hell or high water.
Some other.
Yes.
I think what's more important is hearing from Javier. I think it's more important to hear it from our consultant that's advising us on the system to make sure we, we're meeting the requirements of the operations on system. I think that's more critical than Javier's. So Simon and things like that, and I know Simon, we worked together. So again, I, I wouldn't have a problem through you talking to all of the board with that. So, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Same thing with the temp. I mean, I agree with what he's talking about, budgeted items, but I, from our consultant, we need to really get a good handle on what we're required to do and what we're not required to do.
I I understood. Um, wastewater, uh, check diesel fuel agreement, manage, uh, manhole, INI issue with inserts potentially, uh, embed in banks. I just wrote down bed and banks. I think my note there was just to follow up where that is.
Fermenter. The fermenter.
Oh, yeah, fermenter.
The bed and branch is an interesting concept because basically it's a, you have a discharge permit and you, when I brought up a type 210 amendment, 210 amendment is a beneficial reuse. So it allows you to capture that water and do what you want to do with it.
So 210 amendment is what I need to follow up.
The type 210.
I wrote it down, okay.
That the, that the city is applied for.